Do I call this meeting to order? It's our governance training with the Volburn Group on March 1st, 2023. So, welcome everyone. Thank you all for being here. And Ms. Tanner, can you please call the roll?
Basin.
Here.
Buffalo.
Here.
Campson.
Here.
Clanton.
Present.
Gabriel.
President.
Jordan.
Here.
Martin.
Present.
Okay, so we have our governance training and we'll just go ahead and jump right in.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. It's good to see you all. We are here today to again continue the governance training that we have been facilitating. We appreciate the opportunity to be thought partners with you. I'm Dr. Inger Swimson and today we have another co-colleague here with us.
Hi, I know all of y'all. I think I just met Ms. Buffalo. So, happy to be back with you all after the good work that y'all did on the strategic plan. I think it's been almost a year since I've been here, so happy to be back.
So, time really passes, I tell you. I did send that to you, Ms. Tanner, so if you could check your email to see if that comes up. In the meantime, I just want to share a couple of things with you. Today, what we're going to be focusing on is really trying to dig into the strategic plan and the objectives that you all have outlined in the strategic plan and how those objectives can be fleshed out in a logic model. So, we're going to do some talking about that. We're also going to go back and do a quick check-in of the action items that you all had generated from the February 1st meeting and hopefully be able to use those to guide additional work and to just hear some of the things that you all have been able to accomplish. And also, I think we've learned that the value of building community is important, especially when you have a diverse group of individuals coming together to really focus on one goal. So, we will be engaging with that as well. We want to start first, though, by just acknowledging the month. It's March 1st and March 1st, as you all know, is what?
National Women's Month?
Yay! Women's History Month. So, in acknowledging that it's Women's History Month, how wonderful it is that nobody need wait a single moment before starting to improve the world. And that quote is from a woman who really changed the face of what it looks like to tell a story, tell a story of survival and resilience and tell a story of history that we cannot deny. And that quote is from Annalise Marie Frank. Most of you may know her as Anne Frank. So, yeah, when you hear that quote, and I'll share it again, how wonderful it is that nobody need wait a single moment before starting to improve the world. I want you to think about what you've done this week or recently to improve the world or to improve the experience for a student here in Norfolk Public Schools. So, what have you done collectively or individually to improve the experience for a student here in Norfolk Public Schools? Reflect on that and I'd love to hear what some of your responses are to that. I see yours.
Yeah. It's been about a week. So, I live right in the community where I have students and I was a victim of the ding-dong ditch, whatever, on the door. So...
What? The what?
The kids ring the doorbell and then they run away.
Oh, oh, oh. It's a TikTok.
So, one of the, but many of the kids know who I am and so one of the students who go to Norview Elementary School, he was like, "Sorry, Mr. Clanton, I told him not to do it." And so, I was like, "All right." So, I came out and all the kids were on the side in Bland Street and they were out playing. And so, I'm coming out to go and just greet the students, you know, and say, "Hey, you know, don't, you know, it's my door, but it might be somebody else. You don't want to do that." So, got to talking to them. It's funny because they wanted to run at first and I was like, then it was like, they all came back and then we got to talking. And they realized, because I'd been in their school, I mentioned their principal's name and then they were like, "Okay." And then they went, "Well, what's my assistant principal's name?" And I knew the assistant principal. And then I said, "And I even know your snake's linky too." And so, the kids were just like, "Oh," at that particular point, because I made that connection and that been in the schools and so I could... And so, I asked them, I said, "So, what color house are you all in?" Because I know in this particular school, we use, they use PBIS and they use color houses. And so, they were so excited that I knew about the color houses, they were like, "Well, we're having our assembly tomorrow." And so, they're like, "Will you come, will you come, will you come?" And so, I rearranged my schedule and emailed the principal, Principal Cable, and said, "Hey, you know, a couple of students that live in my neighborhood want me to come out." And so, I did. I came out to see what they were doing and what the whole color house day was like. And so, to be able for the students to see me there and what I always say in the respect that you don't know what I'm doing for you when I come here and serve on the school board, but you don't have to. But just to see that connection, that there's a caring adult who's honoring their word and coming out. And so, when the students did get a chance to see me through, it was a lot of fun because they were out having a great time, but it was rewarding them for good behavior. And then they got to do some other different activities and so forth. So, I take it that that made some type of impact on the students that were there. So, now, when I come out, they've made that recognition. So, even when I'm driving out the driveway, the kids in the morning waving. And so, that's a good feeling to know that children can see that there is a positive adult and that there are positive things there that are helping them to make a positive impact on their life.
Just a single moment, a single moment where they were probably like, "Hey, let's go and ring this doorbell and take off running." Who knew that they were going to be coming to a board member's door? But how you change that for them and how they are probably thinking, "I've never," you know, how they're probably now thinking, "I never would have imagined that."
Yeah.
Yeah. Others. Feel like you've made that commitment. Yeah. Ms. Buffalo, and then we'll come to you, Dr. Birdsong.
I can get really very familiar with the strategic plan, to live it, to live it out and really understand how our work impacts this in children, student improvement and really being intentional about knowing what's in here and supporting this work for the district. So, yeah.
Priority. And this afternoon, that's what we're going to be doing. We're going to be digging into the strategic plan and using a specific framework to help you all really delve into it, but also add volume to it, add voice to it, add meaning to it. So, thank you for that. And that strategic plan is going to be driving what happens here for the next few years. So, yeah. Dr. Birdsong?
So, I think it would be safe to say that throughout the district, probably throughout the state and the nation, educators are on edge about what's going on within our communities that ends up in our schools. And so, safety and security, of course, is number one, is our number one priority. So, we're constantly reminding the children that if they see something, they need to say something. And so, recently, we had an incident whereby a child saw something and they said something. And so, we wanted to make sure that that child was acknowledged, but privately, because we are also aware that there's this subculture of not snitching. I mean, it's whether we like it or not, it's what is the culture that we live within. So, I made it a point to acknowledge a child for saying something after they saw something and the classroom teachers and it just went a long way. And so, we're going to have a private little ceremony with the child's parents to let them know that we appreciate you reinforcing what we're telling the kids in our classrooms at home. Because of that, the child came forward and let us know something that we needed to know and we were able to respond right away. So, that made a significant difference within that school and within our school division because the word does get out.
And what probably seemed to them like something maybe seemingly challenging for them, but also so important for them to be able to do that because, you know, kids now get so much pressure.
Right.
Not to say anything.
That's right.
And for them to be brave enough and resilient enough and concerned enough to want to do that is, I mean, that speaks volumes. That definitely speaks volumes. Yeah. Dr. Gabriel?
Well, I had a very interesting case when I was in clinic this past week and it really sometimes some cases kind of touch your heart. And it was just a routine wellness check for one of the children that I was seeing. But I tend to ask a lot more questions about the educational items only because I'm just very caring about their school performance. And the parent really felt a connection there. I've never, you know, she's like, "No one's ever asked about, you know, how they're doing in school." And then they followed up with, "Well, is it As, is it Bs, is it Cs? What is it?" And then I always ask about, you know, 504, IEP, things like that. But then when I dove a little bit deeper into the family situation, we really uncovered quite a few struggles that many of the children were having and that the parent was having. And so, you know, I asked the parent in a very compassionate way, "Would you be okay if I try to get you some help?" Not in a penalty type of situation, but really because I see that you care and you're trying to do a lot, but this seems overwhelming for anybody. And the parent just really appreciated it. And not everybody goes that extra distance. Usually, it's quick in, quick out, but took the time, even though I know it was going to extend into a couple of other folks' visits, to do that. And I hope that it makes a difference for them to know that somebody cares and cares for them and cares about them. And that's all.
That connection is going to go...
And I don't know if anything's going to come of it, but I took the step to get them some help.
Just taking the time to acknowledge that there are some other things. And also, what I appreciate about that is it's not just the physical well-being of kids, you know, it's the emotional, it's the psychological and not just of kids, but of families and caregivers. Because oftentimes, you know, when we're in those situations, as you said, it can be very transactional, almost mechanical versus taking the time to hear the voice of a student and hear the voice of a family or caregiver and interject how you can support that. I think that is... And again, speaks volumes and it goes a long way. Kids don't forget that. What is the saying Maya Angelou has? "People may forget what you said or forget what you did, but they never forget how you made it feel."
That's right.
Other voices.
I'll just say what's coming to mind, other than the interactions I've had with my children's classmates, you know, friends and classmates, is kind of in line with what Dr. Birdsong was saying, a lot of people in our community are afraid of our children. And, you know, they see them walking down the streets in groups, which is what kids do. And they think the worst about them. And so, I'm always reminding them, "They're kids just like you were kids."
That's right.
But, you know, the news doesn't help and some of the things that are hap, that are really happening in our community, it's scary. And so, one of the things that I always do is I make it, I make an effort to talk to the kids. And, I mean, just this week, I was, because I run and around neighborhoods, stuff like that, and there were these girls, it was so cute, they were on the sidewalk doing, practicing their cheerleading. So, I'm, you know, so nothing to be afraid of, but so I just stopped and talked to them. And I don't think a lot of adults do that. And you could tell their demeanor changed because they're kind of like, "Who's this lady coming up to us?" That we need to, instead of fearing the children, engage with them and, you know, like Mr. Clanton did and let them know, because they're also afraid of us, right, of adults as well. So, if we can come together in that way at any opportunity, I think that we could kind of get over some of these apprehensions that are going on.
Yeah, and oftentimes, we don't think that kids are afraid of us. I think we've been socialized now to kind of feel like we should fear the kids, but they have some apprehensions about us as well. And how we break down those barriers and change the, change the interaction and the engagement is so important and stopping to talk, you know?
Yeah. Actually, I'm remembering, I knew, I asked him where they went to school and I said, "Oh, my son went to school there." And they're like, just like Mr. Clanton, same thing. It was like, "What?" So, it was really, it was a nice relatable moment.
Yeah, yeah. And I wonder how many of them went back to school to say, "Guess who I met?" Or told, even told their family or caregivers, "Guess who we saw today? Guess who we talked to today?"
No.
Are there any others?
Well, I'm, I mean, I'll say, I'm excited I'll be reading for Read Across America in the next few days. So, that's, you know, that's always a reminder to me and for them too of why we are here. So, I always love, love doing that.
Have you picked out your book?
Not yet, but I have plenty, plenty to choose from, so I'll figure that out tonight.
And they, kids, kids really get into the Read Across America, especially when you wear the hat, so. Thank you all. Thank you so much for sharing that and thank you so much for the impact that you are having on not all of the kids, but each child, each child there in Norfolk. So, thank you all so much for that. So, today, there are some things that we absolutely want to make sure that we attend to. First, continuing to build that culture, continuing to build, continuing to cultivate that culture and building those trust and relationships is essential to what we hope to accomplish today. And then the norms and the protocols that we've talked about, we're going to continue working as we advance, continue working on those, building those as we advance the work of the board. Making sure that we go back to the action items that were generated at the last meeting and talk about what has come out of those, the status of those, as well as ensuring that we go back and take a look at that PELP framework because we're going to be using that to guide the discussion today and to kind of deepen our learning there. Making sure that we go to the logic model, which is a framework that some of you may be familiar with, but if you're not, don't worry about it. We're going to talk about that and give you some insights into what that logic model is. To take a look, as I said, and Ms. Buffalo brought it up, digging into that strategic plan is going to be the work, the bulk of the work today. And then also, going back to the mission, vision and core values of Norfolk Public Schools. So, that's where we're going to spend our time this afternoon. What the agenda looks like today is building community and we've already started doing that with just the reflections and impact that you all have had on students this week or recently. Going back to the feedback on feedback, this is an example of how you might frame your agendas moving forward. Feedback on feedback is what did you say worked at our last meeting? What are some areas and opportunities for growth? And then updating and getting a status check on the action items. Going back to the logic module, model, as I said, and using the strategic plan goals and the PELP framework. We'll take a formal break, but you can see we're spending a large chunk of time, two hours, working on that strategic plan and that logic model. But built within that, you'll have an opportunity to self-break, but you'll also have an opportunity to have a working lunch. So, we're going to have you all spread out in the room, gather together in a circle and within your individual groups that you will be in and continue that work. Then we want to go back and take a look at the mission, vision and values. And finally, we'll do a meeting evaluation and talk about what do we need to do next? What's up next for us? Any questions on the agenda for today? All right. So, overarching questions, same ones that we have been focusing on. How will you, as board members, live and advance the mission statement? And then elevating your responsibility professionally and personally to take apart, reimagine and rebuild the policies and practices that meet the needs of each Norfolk Public Schools student. Our norms, these are the ones that you all generated, so I want you all to really engage and own these. Volunteers to read the first one, second one, third one and fourth one. So, first one, volunteer. Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Ms. Buffalo, you got the second one. Dr. Birdsong, you got the third one. Mr. Clanton, you got the fourth one.
We will value student excellence and will ensure that our governance efforts focus on student outcomes and center on that which benefits the needs of each Norfolk Public Schools student.
And we're elevating student excellence in each Norfolk Public Schools student. Thank you. Ms. Buffalo?
We value the Norfolk Public Schools workforce and ensure that our efforts prioritize attracting, retaining, developing and fairly compensating highly effective employees for a positive organizational culture.
That workforce and positive organizational culture go hand in hand. Yep. Dr. Birdsong?
We value our Norfolk Public Schools families, stakeholders and community partners and ensure that our governance efforts prioritize meaningful engagement and collaboration in the service of Norfolk Public Schools students.
Collaboration and engagement and though that group of stakeholders that we've outlined, families, stake, families and community partners, that's the way we have to provide that service. So, thank you. Mr. Clanton?
We will value one another and will ensure that we hold ourselves and one another accountable to the efficient operations of the Norfolk Public Schools Board of Education.
That one, I think, really stands out for me because it's that, it's that personal, personal, personal commitment that we value one another and that we are going to ensure that we hold ourselves and one another accountable. So, thank you all. All right. Community of practice, we've talked about that. We've talked about that at each of our gatherings to say that this is a group. This is a group who shares a common concern and that common concern certainly is each of the students in Norfolk Public Schools and that part of our work as a community of practice is to focus on sharing what we know. We all know a lot individually, together we know even more and creating some new knowledge and advancing our professional practices through interaction that it's ongoing and important to the work that we're doing. All right? Our community builder, it's that time where we not only take the opportunity to get to know each other differently, but we also take the opportunity to focus on how we're going to work towards our goal. So, this community builder is...
I think the...
I see a little icon there in the corner. Yeah. I'm not sure if that's impacting it. There we go. All right. So, with the person sitting next to you, elbow partner, it's an and/or. What's one similarity between the two of you that you like? And/or what's one difference between the two of you that you like? So, a similarity or a difference? Take a few minutes, talk to each other.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Things to be positive, we want people to be positive.
Yeah.
We're always looking for the positive in every situation. That's what I know that we, how we are similar.
I'm a fixer.
Yes.
Let me think about this.
That we like.
Definitely.
I have to think about our differences.
What's the big difference?
I wish I had a camera so I could take you all's expressions as you all are thinking about this.
The stump to look.
Yeah. Like, what are those similarities between you or what are those differences? Differences are what make us unique and give us that different perspective. So, take another minute to come up with your similarity or difference.
I have always found, like, cultures, differences in culture. It's not really about you personally. There's, I do believe in diversity, not others. What they believe, what they value, but yet there's still a lot of, you know, commonality.
All right.
Different is still common, so.
So, this one, just again, based on your all's facial expressions, I think I got y'all. I think you all were stumped, like, I don't know. I never, maybe, maybe it's because you never kind of explored the dynamics of your colleagues and how you all are similar and thinking, "Well, that's one thing that I really like about us." Or, you know, those differences and expressing how those differences are things that you like about each other as well. So, again, that was interesting. That was interesting watching your faces. So, who, anybody want to start and tell us? Yeah.
They didn't take us any time to come over there. What was it like with us? We've been just chatting after that.
Okay.
We like to get things done. We're very laser-like focused on outcomes. Get it done.
Get it done. Set a time limit on it.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else want to share? You all still had those expressions. I'm sorry.
What were your differences that you liked?
It was an and/or. It was an and/or. You could do and/or.
But we had enough time that we actually did talk about that.
And it was an and/or.
And we, and our difference was the fact that Ms. Campson grew up kind of in the country and I grew up as an urban, you know, an urban, and then how we still are differences where we grew up, but we're still focused on something very similar today.
Focused on children.
On children.
Our narrow focus on students.
Thank you all.
Well, y'all overachievers and y'all did both?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, that was the reason, okay.
That's why it took us so long here. We're like, "What's taking so long?" That's okay.
It's okay because it was an and/or. You could do and, both of those, and/or. All right.
Okay, so I'll start with our differences that we like about each other. So, one thing that I really admire about Dr. Martin is it appears that she has a great balance of life, like between family, home, fun, you know, all of this, you know? I love hearing about her adventures here, there and everywhere. And meanwhile, I can't get out of Norfolk and Chesapeake, so... So, she, she has it together in that sense and that's something that I really need to work on. I need to do better. And I shared with her, if I had to do things over again, I would change some things that I did, especially as it relates to making sacrifices with my family.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we always go back to our similarities as like cheerleaders at heart.
But that speaks to how well you all know each other, too.
Cheerleaders, then you were really cheerleaders?
Yeah.
There was some cheerleaders.
But we still are, like, it's like once a cheerleader, always.
Ah, see?
But like that we really want things to be positive. We want to look at things positively. We're, you know, focused on, you know, we're going to work, work to get there, right? Like, we're very more optimistic about things, the glass is half full, so that we talked about how that helps us and that we're fixers. We want to, you know, fix things and get it done and make it work out and...
Keep it moving.
I hear that, keep it moving. I hear that, keep it moving, resounding over there, yeah. So, that's interesting because I was a cheerleader too and I don't know if it's that eternal optimist attitude that you have to have that even though the score is like...
Seventy-three to nothing. The go team.
That's right. We still got 10 minutes. We still got, we could do this. We could do this.
That's right.
But also, that's kind of how we have to cheer on kids too, you know? We can still do this. It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. So, let's still get that laser-like focus and we're going to make some good stuff happen. Yeah. Thank you. Yep. How about Team Jordan and Buffalo?
I like that she orders me around. Well, one of the things that we talked about, you know, we have similar, we are, we'll read and research and study and prepare. I know one day I had sent an email to the board about some video from 2014 and Ms. Buffalo responds back to me, "I already looked at it." Like, so she had already looked, something that had come up in the meeting, but because she, I guess, studies...
I do marathon school board meetings. I watch them in detail. I, I watch them in detail. I can share with you a meeting from 2014, a specific item, and that's just a researcher in me. And so in my pastime, I just watch school board meetings.
So, that was, that was pretty fascinating that, uh...
We need to get you out.
She's, we, we both need to get some life balance, like, uh...
Right.
And the, the difference we just talked about was, so we both, um, consider ourselves, uh, individually, uh, how do I say this properly? Have, have beliefs in faith, uh, but we have differences in how we approach it and view it in, in conversation. So, we, we talk about those, there's a different perspective, but, but nevertheless, we like the fact that we have that difference and can talk about, talk about that difference.
Wow, that's powerful. And, and imagine how that, how you sharing that sort of frames things for families who are, you know, who have those same kinds of spaces. So, even within a family or caregiver group, you could still have those same types of faith differences or you can still have those same types of, um, you know, that yearning to learn more. And then you could have some who are like, ah, that's not who I am, but it's still part of what makes them, you know, connect and stay together as family. So, yeah, thank you all. Thank you for sharing it.
Do they mind sharing a little more? Are you comfortable sharing a little more about the faith piece?
You wanna tell, you want me to tell?
Specifically, um, the New Testament. We talk about Paul and him, his writings and the New Testament and Rodney doesn't...
So, I, I think that generally speaking, that what we receive in church is often the message of Paul, not the message of Jesus.
Through Paul.
And so, so as a, matter of fact, I think I share with you, when you read Jesus and the disinherited, you'll see where that's rooted.
Balance. I need to work on the balance and I can do some readings. I have forgotten. It's on my bed stand. It really is.
Wow. Thank you all. Thank you for sharing. Yep?
Um, well, we, we thought that it was, um, our similarities is that we're both in healthcare. So, Tanya has a background in public health and I am in medicine. So, we both have that similarity and, um, that, that was something that we both, um, like, for both of us, we can kinda get the data, get the numbers. And we were kinda stumped on the difference one, um, to be quite accurate, um, but we, we said that, um, you know, Tanya is not from here, I am from here, so that was a difference, but wasn't, I don't know if it was something that we like truly like, you know, found that it was like, you know, we admired, um, but definitely, um...
I would say, I would say appreciate it.
Appreciate, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, I appreciate, I think, not even just with, with you, but other, I think there are some of us who know, it's something that we appreciate, have demonstrated that we appreciate in one another.
And I think that's a good way to capture it, appreciating those, because they change the perspective, but also appreciating how that might...
We're representative of our student, because our student isn't made up of everyone born and raised in Norfolk, so, um, so that was one piece of it.
Excellent. So, our similarities bring us to common ground and our differences allow us to be fascinated by each other. So, I hope that that's what you found in that community builder. Let's take a look at, uh, our last meeting together back on February first, and one of the things that I encourage you to do is to really assess and evaluate your, your time together. There are a lot of different ways. We went with the feedback on feedback, you, or plus deltas. So, pluses are those things that you feel worked well in your time together and deltas are upgrades, things that you see as opportunities for growth and improvement. So, we're gonna start with the pluses. Is there anything up there that you're like, wow, we are really winning at this?
I think thinking about it, we're, we're really winning and we want to continue to do that.
Focusing on continuous improvement?
I'm gonna say good, good interaction. I think it's improved. Better focus on students during discussion.
Have things moving and, um, well, I think that we've provided room for all voices.
So, continuing, as, as Shauna said, it's, these are the things that are working well, making sure that we, these things are ingrained in our interactions and that we continue to do those today. Opportunities for growth and, and I just wanna put a pin here just to say, one of the things that's important is that when you provide the deltas, is make sure that they start with a verb because that way it's an action that can be taken. We can say, this is what we're gonna do. And for the most part, you all did a lot of that. So, anything here that you wanna make sure that you do today? And let me also just throw this caveat out with deltas. These are things that you hope that we will be able to do. When you're in a meeting, sometimes depending upon who you're, you know, you're meeting with, there are things that you might be able to control and there are some things that you might not be able to control. If you're in a building that's safe, for example, and people are saying, wow, it is so hot outside, um, I can't control how hot it is outside. We can control what it might, maybe we can control what it feels like in here, but there are some things that you're not going to be able to control, but you do wanna acknowledge them. You want to acknowledge that this is an area that we're working on. I don't know how you're gonna control the temperature outside, but again, bringing it back, there are things that we can do to control the temperature inside, using that as an example. So, anything here that you wanna make sure you focus on today? Yeah?
Yes, in the, in the previous slide, we talked about, um, continuing to, you know, we were talking about students, but, um, here I would say, um, you know, to be more student outcomes focused, which to me is a different statement, um, so...
So, keeping that in mind as you all work together today, be more student outcomes.
Right, and then the other bullet of we need, uh, strengthen our ability to be more student-centered.
Yep, Mr. Jordan?
There's, uh, the bullet that says, um, we have room for improvement in how we respond to one another in person and in written correspondence. What I personally would like to better understand is, so it's, to me, it's, it's something that I agree we need to do, that I need to do. But when we did the exercise, um, yeah, the one when you had us do the, uh, the survey and the strategic thinkers and, and all of that, whatever that was called, uh...
The Strength Finder?
The Strength, The Strength Finder. I like to see us go deeper in knowing what it is that each individual needs. So, in the exercise, you all asked us to share what we needed. I like to get a better understanding of what each individual needs in terms of response so that I can get better at meeting that need. It may not be a collective need. It may be each individual may receive things differently.
Right.
And I like to have a better understanding of what each individual needs so that if I am in an interaction or if I am responding, I can be mindful of, kinda like what Tiffany and I were just talking, you know, in the earlier exercise, I, um, you know, just, just having a better understanding of what that means for each individual and not just assume that I know.
And there are opportunities where you all come together outside of this work, right? There are opportunities where you are, where you're meeting without and not focusing on governance, right?
Oh, yeah. Like our school board meetings.
Yeah, just a school board meeting. So, those are opportunities for you all to ask those questions of each other. When we do those types of, you know, community builders, it's a way for you all to get to know each other so that you can have those conversations. So, absolutely, when there's an opportunity, when you come together, start the conversation or start the meeting with, hey, let's go a little bit deeper. I wanna know more about your strengths. And I love the way that you framed that, Mr. Jordan. It's about, you, you're saying, I need, it's my account, I wanna be accountable for how I am doing this work and how I'm interacting and engaging. So, that is something that I think is a perfect opportunity for you all to go back at your meetings and say, let's, let's put it, let's spend a little bit of time on this, right? And I encourage you to do that because one of the things that I've found when I'm working with, within a team is that we do take the time to engage in those types of activities. We do wanna know, you know, how am I coming across to you? Am I coming across in a way that is meaningful and that speaks to you or do you have some questions or concerns about that? So, let's figure that out so that we can be accountable to each other. All right? Great, any, any others? Any other thoughts? So, we have the toolkit available for you there going, there's information in there that we've updated. You'll also see some information in there from our previous session because we did not have an opportunity to engage in all of those activities that we had planned for the last session in February. So, you'll find in there some updated information as well as information that's transferred from our February session. So, the action items, we wanna go back to these, find out what the status is, where you are with these. So, I'll give you a second to kinda think through your action items and be able to just share a couple of updates. Give you a minute because there were several action items that we had. Most of them were, were due February, I'm sorry, March first. There were some that were due in February, so we just wanna, again, get a status check on, on those.
Since we were all, um, chose different ones to do...
We have, we have those, too.
Oh, oh, okay.
Are you ready for an update right now?
Yeah. Whenever you all are ready.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we're gonna start with this one, determine the process and timeline for making requests for information, data, et cetera. It's not mine. So, who wants to take a lead on that? And again, it's just a status update.
Was that one assigned yet? Oh, wait a minute.
Oh, you're...
You're talking about the first one? I don't think we...
No, the third one, I'm sorry. Determine the process and timeline for making requests. The other ones, we had not determined who was gonna focus on those because we're not ready yet for those. Maybe after our session today, we might be ready. You wanna just take a stab at it, Dr. Birdsong?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, I would think that we, we'd likely need a little more time on this one. I think a lot of work has been done, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with how we've come together on this. I, I think, um, that, um, of course, there, varying opinions and ideas about how this, this needs to be tackled, um, and I, I just think we need to better come together, the three of us, around this one. There is work that's been done, clearly, a lot of work, but I think we need to get on the same page and I'm happy to hear back from my colleagues around their thoughts.
I guess thinking in that with the getting back, what's the new deadline? Like, what's the new timeframe for y'all to...
We wanna establish, 'cause this, this is a part of the process piece that we want to integrate into the meetings. And so, when we step away, we're here to, to really engage and say, okay, where are we now? What's the status? So, if additional time is needed, that's fine, but additional time with a deadline is also necessary.
Would, would the next governance training be appropriate or would that not be appropriate?
I, I'm, I'm leaning, I think...
That's what I would suggest.
My, my hope is we would do it sooner.
Okay.
I don't, I, I agree with, uh, Dr. Birdsong, um, but it also goes back to the, um, the item that I was talking about earlier. So, my, um, you know, you all talk about, uh, you know, different frameworks. So, um, in my world, you get, you do peer reviews, you get feedback and so forth. So, um, there's some things that I have shared, uh, with Dr. Birdsong and Mr. Clanton and I like to get their feedback on. And so, I think that if we can come together on how we are gonna process the feedback, I think we can, uh, nail it down. I don't, for me, I don't think that there's wide, from my perspective, I don't think there's wide disagreement. I think there's some technical disagreements over how many days for this or that type of thing. But, um, I've, I've, I would like to get some feedback on thoughts and ideas that I have shared and just not have them go, I just like to get some feedback on it.
Okay. So, why don't we, I'll, I'll propose this, by the next board meeting, by the next board meeting, by the next, I'm sorry, by the next governance training, you all will be able to report out your results. So, that means between that time, whatever you all need to do, however you need to meet, that's what you all can do, whatever you need to kinda flesh out, that will work. Yep?
And I totally agree with that. But I also wanna kinda framework and remind that even though we're individually in these smaller groups doing work to come up with ideas and suggestions, that they're just that. Ultimately, it's the final decision of this board collectively to buy in. So, if we say two weeks, three weeks, whatever, that's only a recommendation to bring forth to this body to have a larger discussion and to, to, to buy into. So, I think that there is a whole large piece and yes, you did, you know, write back, you know, with some suggestions on that. But I think we should get around what we think collectively out of the group, and that's just for everybody, what we wanna present back to the full board for consideration and that we don't get hung up on.
Something that you all would work through within your team as well, so that by the, by, and again, it could be by the next governance board meeting or the next board meeting. It's, it's totally up to you all how you want, what deadline you wanna set for it.
And to that point, that was my assumption of the assignment, that we were just working in groups and that ultimately we're gonna bring back some recommendations. I'm just saying that what is helpful to me is, is get individual feedback so that we can determine where we have agreement and as, as you said, be done with it and move on and where we may have some disagreements, being able to work through those disagreements so that ultimately we can come out with a final product.
And then do y'all believe that all of that can be done? Y'all figuring out what to do, coming back to the board, having some type of this is what it is by the next government?
Yeah, I think we can do that, but I think the other piece gets in there that we've talked about is sometimes the, um, I think in-person is probably when we kinda work that out is the best. I know that we send, we've sent a lot of emails and stuff, but I think a lot of stuff gets lost in translation, um, when things are just sent, you know, it's great to send information, but I think that to have that discussion and to hear perspectives, we really need to pick a time and you sit down and have that conversation.
Yep, and we are, we are putting that on you all to, to decide when you wanna come together.
I have one request. Let's not leave here today without having scheduled the, that in-person conversation.
So, I'm gonna say this. We're gonna have to do it before six fifteen because I've already notified Madam Chair that I'm leaving 'cause I got rehearsals, but I'm all with you on it, but we can do it before then, okay? Whatever it takes.
Sounds good. Sounds good. So, by the next board meet, governance board meeting. All right. Thank you all.
What is it, April fifth? Is that what you're saying?
I could've been ready for that.
Yes.
Is it April fifth? What, that's our next governance training?
Yes.
Wednesday, April fifth?
Okay.
Yes.
And we here, right? That's not spring break.
Is that spring break?
Is that spring break?
No.
That's my spring break.
We wouldn't have anything on spring break, I hope.
Is that spring break?
It's the week of the ninth.
Somebody reminded me that Easter was in April this year. I was like, what?
Is it before or after Easter?
It's before Easter.
Okay.
Easter's late this year.
It's early.
No, it's early.
It's not like...
It's in April.
It's April. Okay, coming back.
Let's not get on a calendar discussion.
Our next governance training. Oh, no more, no more.
I got it. April fifth. All right.
May I ask you a clarifying question? So, on April fifth, then, are we going to discuss it or should our deadline actually be prior to April fifth? to April 5th, that we've come up with our recommendations, shared it with the board so that on April 5th, we can discuss it collectively?
That is what it should be. So that's why it says by the next governance board meeting, you all will have done all of this. Okay? All right, great. Here we are with additional items. So this one is identify, clarify the process, being informed, update on that.
Oh, this is ours. Oh, this one was, this one was basically an outline of kind of what we've started doing anyway in the last few years. Don't look at the, the left numbering. It's, oh, look at the right numbering. Because what happened is we were just throwing ideas out and then we wanted to put them in the right sequence. So if you look to the left, I mean, to the right, you'll see the sequence. So we simply said, glasses on.
So let me, my, my question is, did you all do this? You all have finished this and?
I think we're done with this one, are we?
Yes.
We did a great job.
Okay. Now, we have not shared it with.
No, we've only, we haven't shared it with anyone.
Shared it with the group.
But we, we are set together for what we have.
Okay.
And so you'll see parts of what we're already doing and then you'll see a great idea or something she's already done, which is number two. But number one would be a first to commit to school visits because we should all be doing that. And then we come to our great, I can't even take any credit for this one that Tiffany has, create a booklet of school profiles. So every, so you have a booklet, alphabetical, I guess, where you then give a sheet where we can look and see, you know, who the principal is, what's the school, you know, what, what's their move, what, or anything about it.
Right. It's like a schools at a glance. So you know.
Right. It's a direct created day and status. Page for each one. So that you know some things when you go in already. And then, and then once we, and so once we've got the booklet made and we're up and going, then we inform the superintendent, we already are doing this of our visit ahead of going. Sometimes I remember it as I pulled into the school and, and made a quick text message going, oh, and I, right now I'm here. And then from, and then we, and, oh, wait a minute, that might have been off.
Like within a day or something. Yeah.
Yeah, she needs to know ahead. At least.
But I'm saying maybe that might need to be part of her.
Oh, it's, it, right. Inform the superintendent prior. Okay. So maybe we need to add a time, like.
Like two days, three, I mean, decide on it. So, so here's the thing, this base, based on the, based on what I'm hearing, we wanted to know, you know, get an overview of that so that you're, you know, sharing it with the board now and getting feedback. But also you've completed it. So part of what you want to do is flesh it out with the group, not necessarily fleshing it out here, but fleshing it out with the group so that you go back and get some considerations. But the overview that you're providing, Ms. Campson, is helpful so that the, the kinds of questions and what we're sharing as possible upgrades, you take it back and work with the committee and making sure that you have, or working with the, the team to make sure that you have a date, you know, you have a number, a specific number of days that you're going to inform the superintendent, for example.
Well, that's one, I've made a mark.
Yep.
That's number three. And it just says when.
Okay.
When we do that. So that one's, and then four would be already contact principal by email or phone schedule to visit. And then that would, then we would finish up with spend 30 to 60 minutes on your visit.
So when you contact the principal, again, is that contacting them when you're in the parking lot or contacting?
All right, another one.
And who is contacting?
Well, the, the board member who's going. What, I mean.
So if there are multiple board members going, does one board member say, I'm going to take the lead?
Well, there never be more than two.
Right. That's what I'm saying. So.
Yeah, and that's right. Because we went, we did, we went one day.
So then you all will agree on who's going to contact the principal to let them know.
All right. So we need to add that. We do it without thinking that it's a step.
I think when you think about the process, like thinking about all of the who, what, when, where, how, like when you're, when you're creating your process. So to Inger's point, like who is going to do this, by, when is it going to happen? How is, are you calling? Are you emailing? Are you doing both? So just thinking, adding that level of detail to it.
Okay. Because that's, that's basic, I mean, that's what we, what we did on the visit we just did. We just did all these things except we didn't have the cool profile thing done yet. Okay.
One other suggestion I would have is to make sure when you schedule with the principal, this is the feedback that I'm getting from principals, make sure you indicate like the date and the time.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just saying, just that, that needs to be, well, spelled out so that they know when you're, you're coming.
So we don't say.
I can't, well, people are showing up.
Right.
I just assumed that everyone on our board would automatically do that. How can you just walk into a school?
But that's the thing, we don't want to make any assumptions, especially because you're make, you're putting, you're creating processes for future board members as well, not just for what you're doing now, but you're establishing processes. So moving forward, this is already a part of the culture of the board, that this is how we do things.
Well, if we say commit, contact principal by email or phone to schedule a visit, wouldn't that say that?
Date and time. Yeah, date and time. Date and time. Just date and time. That's all.
Date and the time.
Because you're scheduling, so you're scheduling.
Put your principal hat on, you know, if you sound, we're coming tomorrow, you know, building principals, they want to be available for you. I mean.
Oh, yes, they do. But you come in, they definitely do.
A meeting with their leadership team to look at data at 3:00, you know, they need to know the time that you're coming so they can plan accordingly because they want, they want to be there and support you through the business.
Absolutely. And they always do. I mean, but it, it just never occurred to me that when I called to talk to them, that I wouldn't tell them the day or time I was coming. But I'm putting it down now. But it would have never occurred to me to, that I wouldn't tell them the date and time, that I would just stroll in.
They're making it for the entire, this is a process for everybody.
Oh, I know. I'm not disagreeing and I'm very happy to put it in. I just, it never occurred to me that people would, that any board member would just walk into a school.
Yeah, I have a question just for consideration. Are there different things that y'all go to schools for that also need to be included for that principle? So am I going to just, do I want to just tour the school? Do I want to go to a kindergarten classroom? Like just thinking through what a principal, yes.
Okay. So I'll make another.
I always, I mean, whenever I'm reaching out to the principal, I, either they usually respond back to me and say, is there anything in particular? Or I'm always ahead of the game and say, I am interested in seeing this, 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 and this. And then I give myself a timeline, I'm only going to be there between such time and such time. So that way they know they can plan the rest of their day.
Exactly.
When you think about processes, it is very important to think about it. Do y'all remember, or maybe this is just me, when you were in school and they, and your teacher was like, let's make a peanut butter and jelly sandwich. And everybody always forgot, go get the knife. And so like, how are you actually spreading the peanut butter and jelly, right? So thinking through all of this stuff that you have to do so that it is crystal clear, the expectations and the process for if you're going to do a school visit, this is what, like lay it out elementary for any process.
These are good, good ideas for us because I guess I've been doing it so long and, and I was the recipient, recipient of getting people coming in. It just never occurred to me about this much detail. But probably back then, I maybe was in my mind more because I was so excited when some, because back, earlier on, the board didn't used to come visit us, I can tell you that.
But a lot of this just comes second nature to us. And, you know, we just, we just do it, do it without thinking. But that's part of, when you were establishing clear processes, as, as Shawna said, you got to outline everything.
That's all, these are really good recommendations. We'll get it right back together. We still know what we're putting down, we're just expanding the thoughts.
Thanks for that update. The next one, develop a board engagement strategy that we will all follow. Are we ready for a status update on that one?
Okay. That was Carlos.
What, you want that one?
Yeah.
So I'm going to publicly apologize to Tanya because she sent me an email and actually sent me a text on it. I read the email, but that one is so close, I thought you were giving me.
Yeah, that's why I included her too.
I thought you were giving me insight on the other one that we were working on. So I was like, well, so we didn't meet, but I did see it and did read your information.
Yeah.
So do you all need additional time?
I mean, it was.
I mean, so this one, this one, I mean, I think I said it in the works in, in our last governance training that there was overlap. Like I, I was trying to remember what, because, because this was like a footnote, you know, in, in that what it was actually pertaining to. And I think the bullet underneath it was, was really the point of this one around gathering input from, you know, we were talking about students, we were talking about staff and other stakeholders, community. And I think Noel and Carlos were working on that piece. And so, so I had, so what I had said, you all is, were my thoughts around engagement of our workforce and to incorporate that with what you were putting together with community. And if you wanted to get together to kind of put an engagement strategy together with both of those, you know, that I could work with you on that.
So I'm going to propose then by the next board meeting, because it sounds like you've got some great ideas to merge or no?
We can't meet the three of us.
You can't meet, you just have to, you just have to notice it.
And I think that when Dr. Gable talks about the other component in there, it'll make sense in there. But that's, I just wanted to acknowledge that we didn't have a physical meeting, but we did get the information and input to share.
I shared with them.
Maybe I need to change it and say, the next time you all communicate. How about that? Because that way, it doesn't have to be a meeting.
If you're, if you're receiving what I'm sharing and it makes sense, then I think that's okay. If it doesn't, then one of you, you know.
Yeah, we can.
You can look at it and incorporate and share back with me what you agree, just, you know, give the feedback like we were talking about earlier.
Right, right. And I'm aware that there are some limitations about how you all meet. You can't, you know, there, there are some restrictions around people coming, you know, the number of board members coming together. So that's why I suggest I'm going to reframe that and just say the way that you all communicate. So when you all are able to communicate how you want to do this. So for the April meeting, that means that you all will be ready to share. Or?
Okay. So this kind of incorporates into the items that Carlos and I are working on. So I'm not going to put my name on this for right now, but if it ends up incorporating into the part that I'm, that we're responsible for, then I'm fine with that.
She gave us input for that other stakeholder group. We're on the same page.
So by April?
We'll have it by April, including that particular piece.
How you all work it out?
Right.
Yeah, because Carlos is the common link between the.
So I'm just going to add for the notes.
Try not to put anything more on my plate.
No, you're good. This is actually, when we talk about internal, external stakeholders, this is our internal stakeholders.
Okay. We're just extending the deadline to April 5th. All right. The next one is ensure, okay, we got TBD on that one. Then communication.
Yes, that was Dr. Martin and I. So Dr. Martin and I are aware, we have an existing policy around this. And so the policy definitely needs to be updated. It has not been updated since 2004. And so there are names of staff that don't exist and we have new staff titles. And so we'd like to take this through the policy review team, update it with appropriate names, and then present it back to the larger group.
When you say names, is it?
Titles.
Okay.
Job titles. I shouldn't have said names. Job titles.
And so that's a longer process, the policy review.
Right. Because we do have an existing policy and a regulation. So we're not really updating the policy. It would just be the regulation, which I own as the superintendent.
So what's the timeframe to do all of that?
So the policy review committee meets, when do y'all meet next?
It's usually the Friday after the business meeting. So that would be the 17th. And then we usually vote, you know, we discuss it at the following work, work session and then vote on it at the following business meeting. So that'd be April's business meet.
So then really by the, May governance training would be?
All right.
Yeah.
Excuse me. Okay. Thank you all. And develop a template. Oh, good, we did that. Excuse me, I think that is in your toolkit. All right. The next one, we had a lot of things for, for this one. We had a lot. So I'm just going to ask in terms of time, if you all could say, we need more time or we're ready to share. Ready to share means that you're ready to get comments and move forward on a decision. And that's, and if you're not there, that's okay because we're building this process and, and, and starting to incorporate it. Great?
Okay. Well, speaking for the items that Ms. Campson and I, we did meet and, and did all the action items that were assigned to us, but because we did not share with the entire board, we asked that we maybe have that opportunity to share what we have on our chart. We just kind of filled in where, where we were assigned the items. And so with that said, just allow us to share, get feedback from the, from the entire board and then share at the, I guess, April.
Okay. Sounds good. Were you saying, Ms. Buffalo, you want to share now or you're going to share?
Yeah, for these two. For these two, because it is, for what we felt, we felt this was what we needed.
And you want to move forward with the decision in April?
Correct.
Okay.
Having time to share. But Lauren, you want to go ahead and share what we said about that?
Well, the first, we have these two back to back ones that are a lot alike. Identify and clarify the process for being informed or invited to community's events. And I think this was down double because it was, the same thing was on the previous page and we just changed what that was supposed to be. And right here, we just said, create a, and I think this was done in the past here, create an event calendar of school events, event, but that's a little redundant, so that it will have group invites and individual invites. So our, our vision here was that we would have a calendar posted that as, that our, so that our clerk could ask people, as we were invited to, to events, you know, we get invited to different programs and things like that, or we invite ourselves, you know, but we have to contact them ahead. Oh, I really want to go to this and they didn't put me on the list. Because there was a school I wanted to go to tomorrow and they didn't, they never called me. So I called them and said, do you have any openings?
I want to read.
Because it was a school I wanted to go to. All right. So that was, that was the plan here. So as it comes in, it can be all, you know, it could just be noted that, and this is something the clerk could do each month, that the event was there for everyone to go see, or it was just there for, it might be something that just, the, the chair would, would be going to rather than everyone going. But it would have that information somehow. If you put it in blocks and you'd have room for who, everyone or something, was what our idea was here.
Right. And, and I'm just sharing about the process, just sitting in the seat that Ms. Tanner sits, that when I would get invites, it may be for the entire board or a specific board member to, and I think Ms. Tanner does this for other things like conferences and stuff, just put it on our calendars. Just send an invite with the information and we can accept, decline, tentative, or whatever the case may be. And so it's on our calendar. Again, if it's for the board, send it out to the whole board. If it's for a specific individual, then send that invite to that individual and that information is on their calendar and they can move forward and how they want to proceed. So.
It's like we needed a protocol here. So much as for these, for either one of these two was that it just seems to put something there that we, that isn't a, a, a big, long list of things to do. But it was just, this is the calendar, put on the calendar what's coming up. And then you can pick and choose what you want to do as a board member because so much of the invitations are directed to the whole board, but not all of them, including the place that I'm going to tomorrow that I wasn't initially invited to.
But they're happy to receive you.
They were wonderful. They all are. They're all wonderful. So anyhow, but if, I don't know how everyone else feels about it, but it just seems so logical. And I think you were doing something like that already, aren't you?
Yeah.
The expert is here who's already doing this.
And sometimes they come to you directly. So they may not go through the clerk, but come to you directly and, you know, again, you just put those on your calendar. But if they come through the clerk, she can just populate them on your, on your Outlook calendar.
Everyone have their outfits picked out for Read Across?
For what?
Read Across American Day.
You know, I don't have any of that left. I had, one of the, one of the people said, they want, they want us in outfits. And I thought, I don't have my hat anymore. I don't have my witches hat that I wore on Halloween.
Come on back. Come on back.
I don't have that. So I'm just.
I was just really, really aimed toward Rodney if he has his outfit picked out.
That's a great conversation for Lunt. Great conversation.
I think she's cutting us off. I think she's cutting us off.
Great lunchtime conversation, yeah. Because we're, I'm trying to keep notes too, so sorry about that. But I think where we landed with that one is that you're looking for input, if anybody, based on what you just shared, if there's anybody who wants to just chime in and say, well, here's an idea or here's something.
We were hoping for feedback.
So any, any feedback, any thoughts on what Ms. Campson just shared in terms of the first and the second item? Identifying, clarify, identify, clarify the process for being informed, and identify and clarify the process for reaching board members? Any feedback for Ms. Campson and Ms. Buffalo? Yep?
Just one, I know on this one and then the, the previous page had school events. So like this, you know, this week, we have different sports teams that are in different things, or we have, you know, I know from speaking with Nayar student rep that, that the Maury team is going to be doing their one-act play in Charlottesville. But making sure if there are student activities, that we know about those as well, so that we can attend and be supportive to the extent that we can. So to me, I think that's more internal. But, but if you all have some thoughts or can bounce some things off of Dr. Birdsong about what process works best internally for bubbling up different activities like that, that if the board can be there to be supportive, that, that we, that we know what they are and what the process is for attending.
So it sounds like you're saying that maybe we, you're not saying this, but that, that maybe we would have a calendar that had sporting events and, and plays and all those kinds of things, just that was always filled in, you know, that was filled in by the month and just there.
Right.
So we could see it, because I don't go, I have to be honest and tell you, I don't go to a lot, to hardly any of the sporting events.
Yeah.
And maybe that's a way to integrate your student representatives by asking them, you know, tell us. Because they are the ones who.
We could put them in charge of it.
But you could certainly get their voice. You could certainly get their voice, I think.
And they, we have really good ones in there too.
So perhaps we could develop a division-wide calendar with extracurricular activities so that the board members can access that calendar. And that could be organized and by our communications department.
Yes.
And they could be responsible for making sure that it's updated with current events. And so if a board member says, oh, I've got some free time this week. I think I want to go to, you know, the one-act play in Charlottesville on Saturday, that they can make arrangements to do that.
So it would be almost like, it sounds like we're saying that we're going to do the one that Tiffany and I originally brought in, where you're invited to stuff, like Read Across America tomorrow. And then we'll have another one that just lists all the big events that are happening that are performed by our children.
Right.
Like athletic events and. And drama things.
Death, FBLA, what, what have you.
Performances by the strollers, yeah. Yeah, anything like that, that we, that we do like to see. I love to see any of the musical stuff and the.
Yep. So what I heard there is that you're going to develop a division-wide calendar of activities created by the communications department.
Yep.
All right? So how you get that information, I think there are a lot of different ways to do that.
My request is how we get the information and where it's being stored should be electronically. So it should be on our website or some kind of, you know, onboard docs or something. And that's just across the board, like on everything that we're talking about, no paper. Just please make it accessible.
So I have that as, I have that as a possible. Okay, keep in mind, these are the suggestions that are coming from.
I mean, I can see doing that, but I still would like to see the calendar of it.
Yep.
Yeah. Oh, oh, okay, I thought you mean.
On the website, so that you could, you can access it. But it's going to change like every day.
So, so here's something to think about as you all are doing it. These are the suggestions. You all are going to bring it forward to this group, and then the group is going to make a final recommendation. But take, you know, we're just brainstorming and sharing some feedback too.
I just wanted to clarify, so one, you know, in, in my suggestion, I didn't want to make it overly staff burdensome. But, you know, I can look in the, I can look on the website and know what the regular schedule is for certain things. But we have individual students or groups of students who, going through the process, things may change pretty quickly. So you, you're in a sporting event, you win, and then two days later, you're playing in a championship. So I'm just saying, just pushing something out that says, hey, our team is in a championship, or our team is in the debate contest, you know, something at that level. Not trying to place on a calendar every individual action that would, that I don't think would be manageable. So, but those things.
I think you're right with that, it would be hard to manage that.
All right. Good feedback. All right, so I want to make sure that we have enough time to just hear from the others. So with the remaining ones, the create a process, establish a community engagement, develop. If you could just give us a quick update on whether or not you need additional time or if you need to get some voices from colleagues here. And we want to keep that kind, that time kind of tight, because with these action items, when you all are incorporating these into your meetings, it's really just tell us where you are, give us a status update, do you need additional time or no? Okay? So for number three, create a process. Where are we with that?
Oh, well, that, I think our interpretation of that one was that there would be a, a computer link or something that you could just send a flash out if you wanted everyone to know, or, 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 in other words, it's.
Hi, you guys. What are you telling us?
So this is the third one, create a process or pathway for gathering.
Yeah, this is us.
Oh, you've already finished us off without doing that.
We're good.
All right, thank you.
Okay, no worries, we're good.
All right. So let me just pull up my notes here. Okay. So Mr. Clinton and I had a meeting with Ms. Brown. We've shared some notes and some thoughts and some feedback about this. First, we wanted to identify what was already happening in the division as far as what, what is a process that is in place. Some of the things that we, we realized, or got a little bit more familiar with is that there is a community engagement council that has been set up by Ms. Brown. The council includes some principals, stakeholders internal within the division, some external stakeholders, such as some nonprofit entities, business partners, and faith-based groups, and a military partner. And she's working on getting a couple of more voices at the table. They met a couple of times already. And what their, what their biggest request was from outside entities was, how can outside stakeholders become partners with Norfolk Public Schools? Who's their point of contact? So they're working on this information and developing what this, making it very streamlined and easy for those partnerships to happen and to be followed through and to be appreciated and acknowledged. Because that was a big part of it too. There is a smaller entity which has kind of popped off of that council to set up a community expo. And that community expo is going to work on matching school needs with outside entity needs and just to kind of bring the two groups together. So that is something that they are in the works of planning right now. And, and all of this, again, is background into if we're going to create a process and a pathway for gathering input, where are we right now in, in that development? And, and so I, I think that there's a lot of information gathering and a lot of listening, and that's what we gathered from Ms. Brown, was that we have a variety of stakeholders and everybody wants to give feedback differently. And different entities have different needs and different ways that they want to be communicated with. Some prefer a group setting in person, others prefer just send me some things through email. And so she has been really trying to get out into the community to learn what those best lines of communication are, so that way she can start to receive that input.
Okay.
And so just to, just to kind of share with you again, we, we definitely don't have a, have a set process right now as far as something that we can report out to everybody. But I can tell you that the, that the background work is taking place as far as creating what that process is. And then, go ahead.
That, would you like to extend to the April meeting?
We're definitely going to extend to the April meeting.
So at that time, you'll be sharing what?
So we're going to share with you a little bit more about. Probably something that's more pen and paper versus draft.
Okay.
There, there's definitely internal processes that are there, but they're working to build upon those. And so what we can do is share in writing what that process looks like. Because what we're trying to do, and, and this was a part of the conversation that we have, was we've had some periods where we've done great communication with our stakeholders, internal, external, and then there are some times when we feel like we have not made the mark. And it's about opening up and being honest and reflective about that. And what can we do in order to make that process better? So that way our decision-making cannot be us making a decision onto someone else, but everybody having buy-in, or maybe not necessarily buy-in, but that they were able to give their feedback and that it was received. It may not just have been where the direction was that the division decided to go in or the board decided to go in. So I think we'll be able to really have something a little bit more concrete by the next one for that.
Sounds good. And for, yeah, I heard a couple of hands, yeah.
So along those lines, that's great to hear some of the, the actions that the division is taking. And I think maybe that's something that we need to think about and consider is the division action that's, that's being taken to involve the community and then what we mean as it relates to board engagement of community stakeholders as it relates to board action. Because I think that there are two separate things that are happening there. They're connected, obviously, but two separate, two separate things. Like how is the board going to engage the community stakeholders in our decision-making process versus how the division is engaging community stakeholders to partner with schools? Like to me, that is, is separate, but we obviously want that buy-in, as you talked about, you know, to also, we also want to engage them in the decision-making process. But still two, I think we need to think about them in two different ways.
So if I can on that one, that did come out of the discussion, and that was that the administration should be driving. And I think we've talked about that, what our talking points are, so that we're on the same message. And so that really came out of that, though there are things that the administration's doing, out of that discussion really came out that we, the administration should be driving what those talking points, what the, so we're all on the same page as to what that information is. So then when we go out as board members, we're communicating the same message to the community as a whole. And so we are, and that did come up, and that's why I think Dr. Gabriel's talking about that we'll put it pen to paper, so that'll be clear.
And gathering more information. So what I heard essentially with that action item is that we're going to extend it to April 5th and that we'll, you, in the, in the meantime, you'll be sharing more information and gathering more information to share and to create a distinction between division action versus board engagement of community stakeholders.
Well, there's actually not much of a distinction. I, I don't, I don't see it as difference. What, when we were having the discussion, and again, this can all come back to the full board, it was, it was really shared with us that it really needs to be from the division level. We can't have the board going out and trying to have a listening session on something that the division isn't either able to do or doesn't, can't get behind, or we really, it needs to be a collaborative process.
Right, so what I heard though with Ms. Bassin sharing, she's saying, this is my idea.
Right.
So as you all come, as you all meet to talk about that, that's something to consider. We don't have to figure out now what that's going to look like. Or if it's going to be embedded, because essentially it's coming back for everybody to have a conversation about.
Right, yes.
So it's just, here's my idea, think about it, integrate it if you can. Or when we, when we bring it back, that'll be more opportunity if Ms. Bassin says, you know what, I really want to advocate for that, and she can do that. Yep.
So I was going to say something similar to what Ms. Bassin said, because I think that one of the things, one of the challenges that we have when we were going back on the pluses and minuses is you took us through an exercise around what's board work and what's superintendent work.
We're going to talk about that today too.
And so to me, that's the, that, I think there is a distinction. And so I think what our opportunity area is, is doing board work and letting the administration do administration work. Otherwise, the accountability system breaks down. So I just want to express that my concern is if we are figuring out the internal processes for what the division is doing, then I think we are stepping on superintendent's work. And I, I interpreted this as what is it that the board is doing so that we are engaging and representing whatever it is that the community wants us to do in terms of our role of setting expectations for the division that we are passing on to the administration. I do think that there is a, our preference would be that it not be viewed as the same thing, that it be viewed as a grand canyon between the board's work and the superintendent's work.
That's feedback for, for that team to consider and bring back a, a final product. Thank you. All right, were those two together, Mr. Clinton and Dr. Gabriel? Okay, so then that was three and four, so five. Talk about that one already?
Develop a written and published.
Develop a written, hmm.
That was us too.
All right. Oh, I see where we are.
Yeah, I had to count.
This is the one that we kind of gave ourselves more time to call again and have another discussion. So it, this was the, we appreciate input on this one, I think, because we wanted to make sure that we'd gotten some ideas down. But this has been a, a little touchy thing for us in, in the past, so we.
So more voices needed?
Yeah, more voices, emphasizing that the fact that we have the word begu, before.
Yeah.
The before is the big piece here. And so we're trying to think of what would match the stuff. And that's why I don't, we wrote, you know, call or meet with the chair one week prior to meeting to discuss a concern. So if you start off, you have a concern, you go to the, to the, the board chair to have that discussion with, with her. And, and then if, if there's more information needed, call Dr. Birdsong for your questions, not any of her staff. And then, and then if that doesn't get the, the, the person who wants more information, then you, then the next step you would go to is you could ask for a one-by-two or a two-by-two staff meeting with the, the staff member and the superintendent. And so that was, it was just kind of set like that, and that's, I don't think y'all get the part we typed in already. But then that's why the big emphasis was all prior to the next meeting. And that was the first thing when we said a week. And so that would have given the person that has questions a chance to discuss it over with the chair. And if, if she still had questions, then to go to the superintendent directly. And you could really do the one-by-two then. And, and then, and, and so that those three, those three steps, maybe probably you'd have to start the process probably more than just a prior week. But that's usually when you really got it in your mind of what you want to do. And so it was just to try and layer in some steps that hopefully by the time that you've talked with the chair, you've talked to Dr. Birdsong and asked her, I usually just go directly at her and, and pick up the phone and call. Not lately, but I have in the past. And then finally ask for, you know, their expert, their staff person and, and the superintendent. I, I, looking at it now, I would put a time, a, a time that they could be meeting with the superintendent.
So it sounds like there's some more thinking and information gathering needed.
I thought was that this is what we were trying to come up with, to try and, and take care of all the extra. I mean, you get a lot of information, if you go through this process, you should have a lot of good answers. But when it's over, I guess in the end, if, if none of this works for you, then you bring it to the board. But at least you've tried to find a way to get to the. then you bring it to the board, but at least you've tried to find a way to get to the information you wanted ahead of time.
So then by April 5th, um, you'll have more information? And any brainstorming ideas, people can just send them to you all?
Well, maybe we'll follow this thing and, and have a meeting with the, the chair.
Okay.
To give us some input into this, too. We, we felt it might be a little touchy for people, but it says clearly, before coming to the meeting, you know, that was the direction, and we were trying to come up with some ideas that would be helpful.
Okay. One quick thought.
It's more of a question than, than a thought. So when I read this, I'm glad we're talking about this, because I perceived this to be something different, more about, um, before the community. That's what I was thinking in my mind. I don't know why I left with that thought. Like, if there were concerns in the community before, should there be something in place within perhaps the administration that, uh, there would be a process whereby citizens, community members, parents, whomever, uh, that they could share concerns before reaching out to a board member or reaching out to me? That's how I perceive this one.
Oh, see, I think of this as action, all of these as actions were our actions.
And it could be, that's why I'm asking.
'Cause we also had a discussion about that, too.
Dr. Birdsong, that's where I took it.
Yeah.
That's how I took it, and then as we talked, um, we came up, Lauren and I talked about this, because I was thinking about how the community, um, can share their concerns before, you know, going-
Not to a board member or myself.
Yes.
Right, I think that's where this is rooted in.
Oh, it is, 'cause to me, I read it, and I, I guess I thought with this whole action packet is that we were looking for what we as a board did, because, not, not what the parents were doing. So I may be misunderstood, and maybe, "You were right and I was wrong."
Because I was thinking, you know, there's a, you know, a, a school-level concern.
Well, I, I like this one, though.
You would, you know, you would start with the building administration. And if you're not good there, you would go to a executive director.
There you go, the chain of leadership.
And if you're not there, if there's a chief of staff on, then you'll go there and so on.
So I think we have clarification on that now.
So, so we're not going to come up with a, anything to help, to ask our board members to do a little prep work before they, and see if she can get answers instead of continually bringing stuff at the meeting? So, I almost feel like it would be good to have both now, both interpretations of this. But I, you know, see what the board feels like.
I would suggest then first tackling the initial idea that this is, you know, how, what is, what is the, I, I think I heard Ms. Bassin say it, what's the chain of command? What, what's the order that we follow in terms of communicating? So using that as a next step and the focus, and then if you get agreement on that, then it's asking, okay, should we now move forward and extend this to, you know, working with the community or, or whomever you wanna work with? So, that's, I think, the next step is to figure out first, do we have this chain of command in place? And then do we wanna extend it to something beyond? So by April 5th, you all will have some more information. And, again, keep in mind, you all can send each other information, ideas, shoot 'em to folks who are leading these efforts so that that, that can be done as well. So the next one is, um, and this is gonna be the last one that we focus on, and I'm gonna give you all the charge to go back with the remaining ones and just do a quick check on where you are with those. Because the idea, again, with the action items is, what's the status? What's a quick status update, and do you need more time? So this last one, better utilize the student board member to gather, uh, student voice. Uh, Ms. Bassin, Dr. Martin, and Mr. Jordan, we're looking at that. I'm just gonna ask, what is a quick status update, real quick? And, um-
Good luck.
And, do you need more time?
Uh, a, uh, waiting on, uh, Dr. Martin's feedback.
All right.
Need more time, then.
Gotcha. There you go. Perfect.
April 5th?
All right. Perfect, all right, so, um, all right, so, this, the other, the remaining board, I, the remaining, not, the, not board items, action items, I'm gonna ask that you all go back. I'm going to extend these to April 5th, so that you all will have more time to gather this information. And, again, when you come, when we come back on April 5th, just share the information that you have. If you're ready for the board to make a decision on something, let us know, because that has to be built into the agenda time, all right? For whenever you all make that decision.
We did that one.
Okay. April 5th. April 5th, we're gonna talk about it. All right, so, shifting gears a little bit, we're gonna talk about the PELP framework that you all had, um, as an opportunity to read. So there were two things. Um, one was the PELP coherence framework, and the other one was a note on racial equity in school systems. These were the two documents that we asked you all to read from the Public Education Leadership Project at Harvard. So, we're gonna make some quick connections on what you all read. We're using a process that we call a synecdoque. Synecdoque is really about, how do you make connections? And how do you make connections or discover some links and unite seemingly disconnected elements to something connected? So, this strategy involves you thinking differently, thinking differently and making connections. So, if I were to use the example of teaching and a roller coaster. Teaching is like a roller coaster ride, because you're sometimes thrown for a loop, but the ride is still a lot of fun as a, I, I would say former teacher, but I'm not even gonna say that, I'm gonna say as an always teacher. Teaching is like a roller coaster ride. Sometimes you're thrown for a loop, but it's still all good. So, you're going to now make a connection between what you read in the PELP framework, the note on racial equity in school systems. So your synecdoque in making this connection is going to involve you working with the person sitting next to you, and you're gonna say, "Talking about racial equity in school systems is like a lamp, because..." So with the person sitting next to you, you're going to connect talking about racial equity in schools to a lamp. How are they alike, or how is it like a lamp, and why is it like that? So take a few minutes, stretch your thinking, stretch your legs if you need to. Just stand up and stretch them, though, 'cause we're gonna move into, um, the other work that we have for you in just a minute. So, take about five minutes to work on that.
Oh, you did?
It's like a lamp.
Yeah, me either.
This one was in the-
Oh, it's the note on racial, it says-
Yes.
I see it, but I, I didn't-
I can't get online, so I'm not able to pull it up.
So here we go, here's some points. The Media Network of Black Households. Oh, yeah, there's a difference. Ten times more than that of black households, national poverty rate. Twenty-five point four. I mean, when you think about it, there are differences or gaps within, and this is where we'll talk about equity, where people are. I mean, it's not making things equal. The little box that they show, so we have to put more resources into certain groups.
The lamp off when you do-
You don't wanna have, you don't wanna put light on it, you turn the light on. But when you, you're hiding what's going on.
But when you turn the light on, that's when you're starting- additional work you do with each child and the child's, the children, that's turning the lamp on. Turning it off.
I know.
Four minutes.
Yes. Are you counting? The one has twenty plus. What are we talking about now? And these, these are the princess ones I haven't worn in a long time, 'cause I usually wear a joker. But I actually, I also, I also have the opera one. I can't even remember when I wore it. Wait, no. The one I, and I- Yep, I don't know my password. Oh, wait, that's a southern one. So, but, the one I usually wear, and I had on first, was that one, 'cause I can wear it with a shirt, with things. But, but with this top, it kinda caught it just wrong, 'cause it's, it does, it's not a real joker for me, 'cause I'm so scared. But, it, it, it still didn't fit right, so I bought one. 'Cause I have them right there, they're stacked, they're own little cases. 'Cause they're going to my granddaughter. Yes, but, but it doesn't mean anything to me.
They won't.
But, uh, 'cause each of them have, and, and really the opera one, like the only piece of jewelry that Paul, that could very well be why it's still, it's sitting in the box now. But, uh-
Probably.
Yeah, but, well, and plus, it's, it's not- It's, this is five and a half inches. It's, you know, an opera one's seven and a half, so it's like, you know, it's kinda bulky. Whereas the joker, I wear it all the time, but it, it's a title me like that.
Hey, Martin?
Hey, Martin, wow. Yeah, take him.
Or you, you don't leave too, or you leave, you don't leave too- What was that? Oh, man.
What should he do, the Japanese music?
All right, so, connecting the reading that you did, which was focused on talking about racial equity in school systems, connecting that reading with the seemingly, um, disconnected object, which is a lamp, what did you all come up with?
Talking about, uh-
I like, I like it. We start on the side, just one, just one.
Oh, just one, well.
Talking about racial equity, start there. Talking about racial equity in school systems is like a lamp, because-
Because, well, um, so a lamp is, is like, you know, it's a light. It's, you're shining a bright light, you're intentionally turning it on to look at, uh, with focus, with intention, at the hard realities of-
To see something better.
To see either something better or worse, but that you are seeing it with intention and focus.
So talking about racial equity in school systems is like a lamp, because you're seeing things in better focus, is that what I'm saying?
In better light, in better focus, yeah.
In better light, in better focus.
When you turn a light on, you're turning it on so that you can see something better. And so if you're looking at something through racial equity, you're trying to really examine something better, not just look, just to go in and do a quick peek. You're really trying to get an understanding for it. And that light can shed a lot of information for you, or bring about a lot of information.
All right. Thank you, thank you for going first, being our example, appreciate that. All right, we'll bounce over here. Talking about racial equity in school systems is like a lamp, because-
Very much similar to what they said there in respect of the turning light on and turning light off. Um, when it's off, you're ignoring, um, the, the realness of what's really going on. You're turning a blind eye to there may be racism, or that there may be historical things that are in place that are creating these barriers to being able to move forward. But when you turn the light on, and if you're unified as one, 'cause we're only looking at one lamp, so we have to be on the same page in respect of being able to look at it with a unified lens as to what we want, um, what equity looks like and where we wanna go.
Thank you, all right. Here are here.
We talked about turning the lamp on, and sometimes when you turn the lamp on, Rodney may turn the lamp on and see something totally different. Tiffany may turn the lamp on and see something totally different, but the lamp is on. And so just having those, um, Rodney, what do you see? Tiffany, what do you see? You know, even though the lamp is on, doesn't mean that people see the, you know, harsh realities about racial equity. Conversations you have to have, because again, you know, I'm here, and Tiffany go, nah, you know, so, that's, just because the lamp is on, doesn't mean that-
Great, thank you. About the Birdsong Martin team?
We didn't have a chance to talk, but I'll share a little bit anyway. So, um, in thinking about the statement, talking about racial equity in school systems is like a lamp, because you can put structures and systems in place to ensure that the light shines brighter for each child, or you can intentionally or unintentionally dim the light or shut it off for children.
Great, great.
We would've talked about that more.
I like that, I like that. So, that's, that's what it's about, you know? How are we shining light on these situations, especially when you know what they're rooted in? So let's talk, let's dig a bit deeper in talking about how we do that through coherence. So, this is really just a review for you from our last meeting, where we talked about governing with coherence. Um, this slide was shared along with this quote about great organizations and enduring organizations. They're characterized by fundamental duality. And, you know, you have those two things, just like the light. On the one hand, they have a set of timeless core values. On the other hand, they have a relentless drive for change and progress. And that's what we're focusing on when we are governing with coherence. So, um, the PELP coherence framework, we've talked a lot about that. And I just wanted to give you an opportunity to kinda hear from those who have participated in it, what it, what it really speaks to. So you're gonna hear from some participants. And the last one, the second one is Karen Mapp. Karen Mapp is the author of the book, um, Beyond the Bake Sale. She does a lot with community and family and stakeholder engagement. But I like the way that she talks about this coherence framework. So, when listening to this, hopefully we'll, it will be able to play with no problem there. Um, you're gonna hear her describe what this coherence framework is like and what it, what it does. So, um, it will stop at, um, a minute thirty-seven seconds, or it should stop around that time, so. Oh, okay. Doesn't look like it's gonna play, which is okay. What I wanna do then is just kind of give you an overview of what she talks about in it. She talks about the fact that with the coherence, with the PELP coherence framework, that it really is how are things aligned together? How are people building that coherence and doing it in a way that establishes a process that is going to be meaningful, and a process that is going to lead to those goals and objectives being met? So, that's okay, Ms. Tanner, we'll, we'll just-
It's not on YouTube, is it?
Uh, that's what I was- It is, yeah.
Can we just pull it up?
Well, I bet it is. That's a great idea.
I'm pulling it up actually to, to see the link. It is the PELP- And you all can, I can share it and you can listen, if that helps, because I don't know if it's gonna be able to pull up, so I, I apologize.
If you search the PELP framework, it's unavailable.
It's restricted.
The PELP framework?
At least we know you're secure.
There it is, right there, perfect. And just at one thirty-seven, Ms. Tanner? And just at one thirty-seven, Ms. Tanner, if you would kindly stop it at one thirty-seven for us, we'll be right on track.
Skip ads.
Oh, y'all ain't got to play your plan? Let's go get the commercial.
We're on a budget.
We're on a budget.
One thirty-seven. Thank you.
Better educational outcomes and better systems. My experience through the district management council has been working with districts around the country, small and large, urban, suburban, is that, that is a critical piece to actually really improving public education.
Many times you hear from the business community that if only the schools would adopt business strategy, then they would work well. Well, what this was an attempt to do was to take what we knew from business strategy, marry it with the realities of education reform in schools, and come up with a framework that made sense for this sector. And so that's what the PELP framework does. We look at the instructional core, and that is what happens in that classroom. It's that relationship between the student, the teacher, and the presence of content. But look at, what are the all the things that surround that instructional core that can have an impact on what happens in that classroom for the better? Anybody who watches this that knows about the education sector, and it's true in other sectors, we have a tendency to silo our efforts instead of working together. So I do believe in the PELP framework, A identifies the components that have to be a part of reform, and really pushes this idea that they all have to be aligned and coherent.
People, Jeff. Alright, alignment, alignment and coherence. So when you hear that and you think about the work that we now have to do, it really speaks to how carefully and how intentionally we have to focus on that coherence. Coherence again, meaning that the elements of the district work together in an integrated way to execute an articulated strategy. That's what we're focusing on. And with that, we wanna talk about the different elements of the PELP coherence framework. And the first one speaks to strategy. Again, this is kind of a review of what we talked about before. Define, the definition being group of high-level actions the district must do in order to execute its strategy and accomplish its objectives. That's what we wanna see happening. There are critical questions there that you can also use to guide that thinking around strategy. What do we have to, what do we have to be good at to implement the strategy? What are the capabilities? Are there some key actions? Is it possible to prioritize the list? Again, very thoughtful and critical questions to focus on. Then we get into culture, looking at the predominant values, attitudes, and norms that define and drive the behavior here. What behaviors are needed from people throughout the district so that we can really execute these strategies and these steps? What norms and values have to be established to support this? It was important for us to establish what norms we were gonna be using as a group. And then, how can we enable people in behaviors that will shape their beliefs about the ability of all kids? All kids, or each student in NCP, NPS to achieve at high levels? That's what our culture has to speak to when we're thinking. The structures, those are the arrangements, the organizational arrangements and relationships that enable individuals to perform key action steps. Those critical questions again, how do roles and responsibilities need to be defined to support our key action steps? We did that at the September fourteenth meeting, identifying my job, your job, our job, and we'll hit on that in just a minute. What are the reporting relationships? We talked about that just now in the action steps in communicating. What's the, what's the chain of command there? Um, how do these relationships, how can we, these, how can these relationships be made clear to everyone? How do people know who, who to go to? And how should decisions be made and by whom? We talked a little bit about that, um, at a few sessions ago as well, in the different levels of decision-making. And what are informal and formal communication networks need to be implement? What informal and formal communication networks are needed to implement these key action steps? So those structures have to be defined as well. And then the systems, the systems that speak to the processes and procedures used to manage the district. What systems are needed to support each of these activities? And then the resources, what are some of the resources? Does the strategy include intentional planning? Are resources allocated to, allocate it, to bring to life instructional designs? How are partnerships formed and external funding raised to support the strategy? Key and critical questions there. And then our stakeholders. Does the strategy include plans to ensure that stakeholders from marginalized groups have voice in decision-making? And are key participants and collaborators in shaping the organizational strategy? Does the strategy account for community engagement and partnerships? Looking at all of those areas of the PELP framework, we talked about the roles and responsibilities, again, back in September, of who does what. We outlined, brainstormed what the superintendent addresses without consulting the board, what the school board can entertain without the superintendent's input, and the issues that you all can collaborate on. So this is what you came up with, my job, your job, our job. Brainstormed what these different areas are. Who does what, the superintendent's role, the school board's job, and then where does, where there's overlap in collaboration. So what we want to engage you in now is the logic model, because the logic model is critical to any measurement and evaluation of work. If evaluation had a guiding star, this would be it. In short, you use the logic model to define and align, and that's what we wanna give you all an opportunity to do this afternoon. Defining and aligning. Okay? So turning it over.
Alright, so when we think about a logic model, thinking about all of the steps that it takes in order to implement a strategy. So the strategic plan was developed, um, and with five focus areas, goal areas, um, and then objectives within those, and then strategies have already been identified. So I know that the work is happening to really put numbers to the measures that, um, were in there. And then Dr. Birdsong and her team have the great fun job of figuring out, like, what are all the actions? And what are all the things that they're gonna do in order to reach those strategies? And how they should tie back, um, to get the measurements that you all are saying that you wanna get. So as we think about this and the work that y'all are gonna do the, um, for pretty much the rest of our time today, is thinking from a board level, what needs to happen in order for these strategies to be able to be realized? So from a culture standpoint, what do you need to do? Um, how does the strategy align with what y'all have decided it needs? So I know that there's like some discussion about relooking at your mission and vision. Um, and if we have time, then we will get to just like some ideas around what you currently have, and does that still align with where y'all are going? But really thinking about the culture that you have, the culture that you want to create, does the strategy align? What systems and structures, um, need to be put in place? What resources do we need? And then back to some of the actions that y'all have talked about today, how are you gonna engage stakeholders? And I, as we go through this, I want to keep saying that this is from the lens of the board. So getting super tactical and they should go do this, this, and this is not where y'all are living. It is very much around, from a board standpoint, remember y'all have policies and procedures. Y'all are setting, um, vision, y'all are setting values. And it is the onus of the superintendent and her team to go live those out. So that's what we're gonna be looking at through the logic model. Um, this is just a quick sample as to what that would look like. So for this district, their strategy or their initiative is around implementing consistent K-three literacy curriculum instructional practices to raise aware, uh, achievement for students. Um, and so one of their strategies or actions is around publishing a new identified and defined curriculum content for K-three. And as you kinda read through all of the pieces on it about what are all the things that have to do? So answering those questions that we just talked about in the logic model to make sense. You can think about this as being that higher level step. So if you could then take this, and then the superintendent could, could then go and say like, in order to do this, what are now our actions? And very tactically, what do we have to do in order to do that? So again, thinking more of that higher level, things that y'all are responsible for as a governing body. The things that you control, the things that you, um, have alignment to. And how does that happen in order to make the strategic plan come to life? And to get to the, to the goals and the outcomes that you've identified? I don't wanna read through every single piece of this, but does that make sense? Um, so I'm gonna come back to this for a second. We, you have the strategic plan, I think, in your toolkit, and I'm sure y'all all have it memorized, word by word. Um, and so we wanna look at the first, um, piece with around student excellence and that first objective. So the first objective being around ensuring multi-level supports and evidence-based interventions are effectively and consistently implemented in every school to support each student's mastery of learning standards. And then there's two strategies that were identified in order to do this. So as a group, um, just to get the understanding and make sure we're all on the same page before we break y'all up, let's go through with that first strategy, provide resources and training to effectively implement culturally relevant curricula, instructional materials, and teaching practices. Thinking from a board level, what y'all are responsible for, how you govern, let's look at the culture piece of the PELP model. And how does this, this particular strategy, number one, align with what you believe? What behaviors do you need from staff? What behaviors do you need from stakeholders? What behaviors do you need from yourself in order to implement the strategy? And this is also in your, if you can't see, this is in your, um.
Your toolkit.
Your toolkit.
Is there a question on the floor, or?
Yes, for culture.
For the culture.
For culture, thinking about that top, that first strategy, provide resources. Um, how does it align with what you believe currently? What y'all are trying to create as a culture? And then what behaviors do you need from all stakeholders, including yourself, in order to implement that strategy? Let's start here. Does this strategy align with what you believe? So providing resources and training.
I would hope so, it's in this book.
Well.
That's it.
That's, that's the question.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm struggling to respond, uh, almost as I struggled when we worked through this before. So, um, in terms of the board's role around, uh, vision, goals, um, my, my, my belief is that that the objective is determined, uh, based upon, uh, some assessment and some goal that's been established. And so I still struggle because, like, on one of the, uh, to be determined that we had on the previous chart was, um, you know, SMART goals and, and outcomes. So to me, when we talk about SMART goals and we talk about being focused on student outcomes, I still struggle, cause I don't know what we've agreed to those be. And so then, when I then get asked as to where multi-level supports and evidence-based interventions are effectively and consistently implemented in every school to support each student's mastery of learning standards, my brain tries to tie it back to some outcome that then, a board outcome, board-defined outcome, that then allows me to talk about things from a, from a board level. So, um, so when I'm looking at culture, how does the strategy align with what we believe? It's difficult for me to respond without knowing what we believe we're trying to achieve for students.
So let me, so, let me ask you this. So you, are, are you talking about in the plan, all of the, um, measures on the side? That there's not a number of time to tie, tied to that?
Yeah, so, so I can measure, so like in this particular case, I can measure whether or not, um, every student, I can measure, uh, whether or not multi-level supports have occurred. And measure whether or not training has occurred. But I measure it against some goal, some outcome. And so we can, um, uh, one can measure, um, activity. But it doesn't necessarily mean that the activity results in the, in the outcome.
Right, and so what I would say is that even if you had a number that said, um, that, so for this first one, one of the measures is increasing the percentage of students reading on grade level by third grade, as measured by Fall Growth Assessment. And I don't know y'all's data by heart. Say, right now, it's fifty percent, and at the end of it, you want it to be seventy percent. How does you knowing seventy percent help with understanding if the culture is set up to, like, if the strategy is aligned with what you're doing? Cause what I would, what my, my pushback would be, or my challenge would be, there's, there are, once they start actually doing actions to it, when I get the data to say it's seventy percent or not seventy percent, it's already too late for me to do something. So there's already steps.
I agree with that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So as they're implementing the plan and doing all of the tactics and everything that they're doing, there's other data that they're looking at to say that's what it needs to be. I guarantee you that all these measures are, the number is higher than what it is now. So even if you don't know that it's seventy percent, it's a number that is higher than whatever your current data is. And so what I am just, what we're challenging y'all to do as they are working through all of that is, there's still structures and processes and culture and resources that are needed in order to move that number, whatever it's going to be. And so I'm just challenging, like, moving out of that and kind of like being able to be in the ambiguity, ambiguity of a number, understanding that the number is higher than what your current number is, I would imagine. You would want more kids reading on grade level now than you have.
Right, so, so I don't, I don't, I think where, where I look at it differently is, I think that it's my goal as a board member to help establish, to collectively establish what the outcomes are. And I think that then it is the administration's job to determine the, the tactics. And then what I feel then, we should, what we should be doing as a board is, like you said, there are going to be, uh, interim goals or interim things that they will be doing, uh, that we will be monitoring as we move towards reaching that ultimate outcome. And so that's where, to me then, um, as, as we consider culture and structures and, and resources, that it is, um, it really starts with being clear about what the, the outcome is, tactics and tactics tying to that outcome, and then the board monitoring that, that process. I think we can ask these questions about, um, uh, the strategies.
But do you also agree that from a board perspective, no matter what the outcomes are, y'all have, y'all can create or dismantle certain structures and systems?
Absolutely.
So that's where the focus is, I think. So there are still, in, even with not knowing a thing, a number, there are still structures and systems that you as a board have control over from a policy standpoint, from procedure, from how you just interact and all of that, that are going to enter, that are going to impact that. And so that's where the focus is. So I would just. So I would just push to, instead of getting stuck on and not doing anything because there's not, there's not a number, a number's not about to walk in the room in the next two hours. And so what are the things that y'all are responsible for, that y'all control, that can be put into place? And again, as you think, I think one of the improvement, or one of the feedback areas, I can't remember if it was a plus delta, was about the continuous improvement, right? So you figure this out today, something comes in, you're like, you know what, that doesn't, this, this is part of the continuous improvement loop. And it's also a way of being able to say, if these are the things that we say we need, these are the things that we're holding ourselves accountable for. So if this is, if there is a policy, if there is a structure or system in place that is hindering, then it's up to y'all to figure out, how do you move that out of the way in order for the work to be done? Does that make any more sense? I get it.
No, it does.
And I know, and I know, like the outcomes.
Yeah, no, it, it makes perfect sense. I just, I just.
It's just hard for, because it's like, there's like a dot missing for you.
No, it's just for me, I think that there's a, I have a different perspective on what I think our role is in defining the outcome and what I think is board work and what I think is administration. So I would like, you know, if you go back and look at that chart, my, the, the chart we had, we were looking at, yeah, one of the ones you had up there, right, the list. So what that has is a collection of individual thoughts that we had as, as board members. But I personally think what hinders continuous improvement and what hinders student outcomes and, and even especially in the context of, of racial equity, is the failure of the board being clear on what the outcomes are. And then providing the administration the framework and flexibility to, to implement so that we do then focus on the, the progress that's being made over, over time and not allow ourselves to get dragged into the tactics.
Right, so here's my recommendation. So my recommendation is that y'all work through the process so you understand the process of doing the work and can get feedback on that. At the point of when the numbers are available, share that and say, based on what these are and based on what we're going to, does this still make sense? Change where there's, change where you need to and then move on where you're like, like just, it's like that, that check of like, does this make sense given the, the outcomes and the measures and what we're going to? And if it is, then you're good, and if not, then you make adjustments at that point.
Planning, if it's not working, you change it. The goal remains the same, but the, the the route to, route, the route to the goal is where you can make changes as you go along. I think if, you know.
Yeah, I mean.
Do it, then you look at the results and if the results are not what you expected, then you can make some changes as you continue toward the goals that are already there.
Yes, and, and, and part of the reason that, at least from my perspective, that you don't get any, any more detail in a plan than y'all got is because you do need that flexibility of shifting. When you're doing something and it's not working, then you need the flexibility in order to shift.
Yeah, you don't just keep doing the same thing over and over again.
Yes. Are we, are we moving off of this one or?
Off of what one?
Well, so I wanted to build off of, so for me, so this, when you talk about culture, I think one of the other struggles is having a clear definition of what we're talking about. So while, you know, while Rodney may say, like, I understand what multi-level supports are and what evidence-based interventions we're using, do we all know what those are? And so that may not be clear to everyone, and I think that, I think there is a culture where what one may think, it's just like when we turn the light lamp on, are we all seeing the same thing and do we have a shared understanding? And I think that has been, what has been our culture is that we're not all seeing the same thing or understanding the same thing. And so I think that with that particular strategy, I've had a hard time with that particular one, even when we tie it to the measures. Because when I hear multi-level supports, I'm thinking multi-tiered systems of support. So, because we also talk about that in some of our data review and some of our presentations. So I hear that because I also know that is best practice and I know, you know, from the research that, you know, the readings that I do, that that is, is, is a best practice. So, so I want to be sure that we are speaking from a common language and that we are using the same, the same language. So when we talk about culture, that's something that I think we need to be sure that we are, that is a behavior that we all have to be speaking from the same language, that we have the same definition of what that is, the same measures, be very clear about what those evidence-based measures are, what those evidence-based outcomes are, and be clear about what those are. So to Rodney's point about the outcomes piece.
So what I'm thinking, looking at that, the question that I would, would pose is, how does providing resources and training effectively implement culturally relevant curriculum align with what you believe? Do you think that if we're providing resources and training to effectively implement culturally relevant curriculum, instructional, instructional materials, and teaching practices, does that align with what you believe? If, if we do this, if we're going to go out here, we're going to start providing some resources, we're going to provide some professional learning that's going to help everyone involved effectively implement this culturally relevant curriculum. And we're going to make sure that we're providing them with instructional materials and teaching practices. We believe that if we do that, that's going to make a difference. That's essentially what we're asking.
Right, but our objective is to ensure multi-level, right? So I'm tying it to the objective that we have. If you were to ask that question to our current mission statement about, then I would say, if we all agree that our current mission statement is still what we value and still what we believe, then I would say, yes, like I think that, you know, having, you know, relevant, culturally relevant curriculum is extremely important for the diverse population that we serve. And that's, but how, tying that to the objective that is is listed here and having a clear understanding of those multi-level supports, I guess that's what I want to be sure that we're having a, a shared understanding of what those definitions are. But do I generally believe? I do believe that providing resources and training to effectively implement culturally relevant curriculum, yes, I do believe that. To put it simply.
Yeah, and, and I think that as, as we work through the process, some of this will become clearer, but where it's not clear, then that's where we want to kind of question and just go back and say, maybe we need to do some adjustments here because if, if there's a concern that, well, we may be speaking a different language when we're talking about multi-level supports, then let's say that as we're developing this, we're going to come up with our definition of what multi-level supports. That's an, that's an action for us to follow up on. So we can be sure, you know what, this is what we mean by multi-level support. Okay? But I don't think it changes what we are asking you to do in terms of actually mapping out what this is going to look like for you all. Dr. Gabriel?
So I, I think I need just a little bit of clarity on where, where we're going with the exercise. Because when I look at it from the perspective of, you know, do I think that this strategic plan and this object, this strategy, right? That's what this one is called, the strategy, right? This strategy is going to, I just want to make sure I'm using the, the right terminology, the right definition. I pointed to student excellence here.
Yeah, that is, so when you see strat, like when you look at the
I see objectives and I see measures.
But you see strategy under the objectives.
Okay, so this is our goal.
Yeah.
This is our goal. So when I see this goal, I see that this goal can definitely get us closer to increasing student outcomes. And then the question on the worksheet says, how does this strategy align with what we believe? I agree that it, it completely aligns with what we believe. What behaviors do we need from all staff and stakeholders to implement this strategy? And for me, when I see that, as a board member, I, I see that as sharing with individuals, whether that be the external or the internal stakeholders, to say, why is culturally relevant material so important? Or learning experiences so important to advancing academic achievement outcomes? That's, that's how I'm taking this. And then, and then I would, I would share, you know, why it is important with them. And, and then the strategies that are listed below, I, I feel that they would be how the division is doing what they say they want to do with the objectives. So I'm just trying to figure out like where, what do you need from us in order for these things to blend together so that it's measured, reviewed, and evaluated effectively on a board level?
So I'm trying, let me repeat back so I can make sure. So from your standpoint, are you saying that from a board standpoint, being able to speak to the goal is more where you feel like you live versus the strategy? I just, help me just understand a little bit.
I, I, I think I, yes, I've given the, I, I think that as a board, we have, we have, you know, kind of blessed the goals. And as far as the objectives and the strategies, that's where the timetables come in. And we make time in our meetings and our work sessions to go through the strategies and to determine if the data and the relevant information is aligning with achieving those goals. So I feel like that, that's where we live as a board.
So there are things that in order to, so, so thinking about the first one with the resources, there are things that y'all, as a board, can or can't do, or can do to help or hinder, right? So to your point of talking, so if you decide to completely change your curriculum, that's a resource, that's money. If you decide to change school times or how much time teachers have for, or for whatever, those are decisions that y'all can or can't make to help or hinder this strategy going into place and being successful. So that's the piece that we're looking at. It is, it is definitely not like from an action standpoint or from a tactical standpoint, like yes, do it or, or don't do it, but it is thinking about from a board standpoint and from that lens, what are the things that we are doing, what are the things that we're responsible for in order to help the strategy go and be successful? And this framework is just being used because when you think about PELP and thinking about all of the things hitting the instructional core, these are the things that can hinder or help that, that work being done. And really, when you think about those things, a lot of these are where y'all are. So y'all like set culture, y'all set like systems and processes and policies, y'all determine resources that are going to be allocated to whatever it is. And so, yes, there's a timeframe that needs to happen, all of these aren't happening year one, so 100%. But what we're trying to get you to do is start thinking about from a board standpoint, what are the things that you can and can't, or what are the things that you do that can help or can hinder these things going into play, these actions going into play? And so there could be other things that as you get into, in the work and Dr. Birdsong and her team get into the work, they're like, well, we need something, like something that you haven't even thought about because I could be going down this path and then I determine that it's not right or whatever, and something needs to shift. But it is from that higher level, from that broader view of what are we doing as a board or what are we not doing as a board? Or what can we do in order to help the strategy be implemented and be successful?
So then, help me by, you get, can you, how would you answer from a board, the block that's under structures and systems for the question that you've proposed to us? What would be like, for example, what systems and structures do we need to help people get their work done effectively and efficiently around this strategy?
Around providing resources?
No, it says structures and systems.
No, I know.
Right, but this first one. But, but we're talking about the strategy of providing resources and training to effectively implement culturally relevant curriculum. So the question is, what are the resources people need to effectively implement the strategy of providing resources and training to effectively implement culturally relevant curriculum?
Okay, so then, so then what would you be looking for from us in order to give you feedback on this?
If they, I, I would go back to the example that you just shared, Shauna, that if resources aren't available, if financial resources, you know, aren't available, then would they be able to effectively implement it? If you don't have the resource of people, of educators, would you be able to effectively implement it? So those are examples that I see that you all influence. You influence the financial, you influence the, right, through budget. You influence also the communication that goes out because you may find that people are saying, you know what, I don't know if we need to really talk about culturally relevant curriculum. So then you're going to influence whether or not you have the ability to, you're going to influence what the communication is around that as board members. Because as board members, if it's difficult, or if, if, if as board members, you're challenged with explaining what culturally relevant curriculum is, I'm just using that as an example, then a resource would be, we need to make sure that we understand what it is so that when a, a stakeholder or a community member or caregiver says, why are we focusing on culturally relevant curriculum? Because culturally relevant curriculum speaks to the lived experiences of our students. And if we can't address the lived experiences of our students, we're not preparing them for a, a world that they are going to be living in and influencing and guiding and directing and impacting themselves. Do you follow?
So this would be done in collaboration, this is done in collaboration with the superintendent because she's going to come back to us and let us know, you know, these are the needs that I have in order to completely fulfill these items which are going to get us to set point.
Right, but what we are asking you to do is just think from board perspective. What are some of the things that we need to make sure that we are doing to influence, to make this happen from a board perspective? And so what we are going to do is pair you all into, in thought partners. And as these thought partner groups, you're going to first work on, everybody is, well, you're going to start with student excellence. Camson and Jordan, you all are part, are thought partners. Clanton and Buffalo, you all are thought partners. Gabrielle and Basin, you all are thought partners. And Birdsong and Martin, you're thought partners. So each of you has an objective to start with. We're going to ask you to walk through this process with your thought partner, get into a little bit of productive struggle because that's what I'm hearing right now. You're like, but how does this work? How does this make sense? This is from a board perspective. So from, as a board member, how do you look at the student excellence objective two, for example?
Objective workforce, objective one and community objective two.
Yeah, that's the one that you all have, but I was looking at the one that Mr. Jordan and Ms. Campson are going to be focusing on. So they have student excellence objective two, which is improve academic excellence for each student. The strategy is implement effective literacy and math instruction and interventions for students' grades pre-K through, oh. students' grades pre-K through, oh, yeah, grades pre-K 12 to ensure each student is prepared to meet or exceed learning standards across all content areas. So when they look at that, they have to think about, all right, well, what, right, what does that have to do with culture? How do I make it connect with culture? Because again, we're going back, this is part of the instructional core, so how do I make this connect to culture? How do I make, what are some of the structures, um, and systems that I need to be aware of? What resources do we need to make sure that we have? So let's, I, I think if we take a step back, let's go back to the sample and walk through that. So, um, this, this initiative is to implement consistent K3 literacy curriculum and instructional practice that raise achievement for all students. So the strategy is, um, that we publish newly defined and identified literacy curriculum content for K3. Um, so our, our, if we were to come up with this, we'd have a theory of action. We would say that, you know what, if we do this, then this is going to happen. So our theory of action would be, um, if we are able to do X, then we can expect that this is going to happen. So from a board perspective, if we are able to do this thing, we can expect this outcome. Right? So that's what you all are going to be moving into your groups to do. Looking at structures and systems, um, we're going to be looking at, how do we identify a literacy task force to lead? We're going to identify a literacy task force that's going to lead the K3 district literacy work, including building, um, building-based leadership to support implementation. That's what we're going to do. That's what our, um, structure looks like. Our resources, we're going to make sure that we provide all staff with newly defined curriculum and appropriate materials to support this initiative. With stakeholders, we're going to create a plan for broad, ongoing, two-way communication around this initiative. That's what it's going to look like for us. So you're going to have to think differently, you're going to have to think hard, you're going to have to struggle with this a little bit, because this isn't easy work. And, and, but it's essential work. Yep.
I was going to ask, um, could we do, is this the working lunch portion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely. We want to give you all until, should we say three? Three thirty? I know, I can't believe it's already.
Right.
Three, three, three thirty?
Can I get one more clarifying thing? So we had one that you put up for us, and then, oh, so, right, and we're doing objective two, which is...
You're going to student excellence.
The strategy's under there. I just put it, we just put it at the objective level, but each of those have at least one strategy under those objectives. And in your...
The objective two, and we have...
We were ambitious.
Still not clear on exactly what we're going to be doing with that.
So in your, in the strategic plan, if you look at student excellence objective two, there's one strategy on there.
Yes.
That's the one that you're looking at. And in your toolkit, toolbox, tool, what do you, toolkit? There's, um, there's folders that have each of the, like, student workforce, or, sorry, student excellent workforce and everything, and each in there, each objective has a sheet that has that strategy on it.
And so then we will be...
So each one has a thing like this?
Sure.
That you're looking at, that strategy for...
We put that strategy in the upper corner.
It's already there.
Oh, it is? Yeah. So look at, um, I'll, I'll, I'll show you where it is when we break. Yeah, it's already in there.
Mr. Jordan, I'm sure knows.
I got him up.
He's the one that, yeah, he's got him up.
There you go.
I'm going to get some training today from him.
Can, can you go back to your example? I just have one. Uh, so, under, under this example, when you were talking about structure and systems, and the first one says, identify K-12 literacy task force. In this example, did the board determine that's what was needed, or the superintendent recommended that was what needed, and the board said, yes, we, we will support that? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
So this one is a little more tactical than y'all are going to be. Which is why I kind of like, like, was like, this is what it is.
See, we all need to be later.
So this one's a little more tactical than y'all are going to be. So you need to still be at a higher level than that.
Okay.
Maybe I don't want to see the sample. Because that's what I was thinking, like, this is superintendent's.
Because go, going back to what you were saying earlier, we, we were dealing with the question of, does X, what was it, um, uh, what, does it align with what we believe?
Mm-hmm.
So, so the goals, the goals, at least for me, work, are clear. So if you ask me, as a board member, do I believe in the goals that have been established? Yes. I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding, when we're filling out this, this chart, um, you know, what's the example, you know, if, if you can give us one example of the level that you want us to be in the absence of a recommendation from the superintendent?
So yeah, so what Dr. Swenson had said with that first one, with the, with the, I don't know which one I'm supposed to...
Yeah, she asked the question, do we, do I think that culturally affirming literature is basically...
But everybody doesn't.
Right, no, no.
Yeah, and so that's, so that is the thing.
That's what you're asking me.
Yeah, so that is the thing, is that like, there are some schools, that everybody doesn't, right? And so it is at that thing. And so like, yes, if you do, because, and I know that we, like, you, you, I can't remember who, I think it was, um, about the mission, you were talking about that.
Yeah, I was just making sure, does it tie with...
Right.
I was thinking too hard about it.
Yeah, because, because y'all's mission, you might want to change your mission, I don't know. Like, I know that that's, that, that was talked about or whatever, but eat, but every strategy from, like, there are people who would not believe that the cultural, culturally relevant, culturally relevant curricula is in line with our culture. And so that's what it is.
Okay.
And so, and then from a resource standpoint, like, what are you willing, like, what are y'all going to have to agree to and not agree to in order to make this happen? This might be a complete curriculum overhaul, I don't know.
Probably.
Based on your face, it looks like it will. Where you're like, yes, it will. Um, and so those are, so those are the things. So that sample, which was, uh, like, kind of like glossed over the first, that is like too tactical for y'all. But this from a, from a board standpoint, um, and again, it's in your groups, which means like, and I, this is, this is an example, like, y'all might say, yes, this is, this isn't aligned with our culture, and over here, like, yeah, we don't, like, that's not it. That's the conversation and everything that needs to happen. I feel like y'all are all in the same place on that. But there might be a strategy that comes up that you're like, this doesn't align with our culture. But again, it's about, from a board perspective, of what that means. So once y'all get into it, and I think, well, Ms. Camson, Mr. Jordan has it pulled up for you, so, but y'all have questions, but we do want to let y'all get lunch, because it has been, um, I don't know where lunch is. But get lunch and then work and then come back, oh, do you want to do the headline?
Now, we probably, I don't know, we'll have time for that. But what we do want you to do is move, kind of move away from the table, spread out so that you can think this through, have conversation, enjoy your lunch, and really serve as...
Did you want us to, you typed this into the Word documents? I mean...
We would like for you to, yeah.
Not the chart, I need to be at a table then.
Yeah, I got it pulled up. So, oh, well, we can't really go into work, because we got to be in here.
However you, however you need to do it.
Ideally, I, ideally, it would be spreading out a little bit, just because it's going to involve conversation.
Get a copy.
Go back to your original date of work.
But if not, then...
The door's open, can we just be on the table at the superintendent's room?
It, it doesn't have to be, I don't know if you want to...
Yeah, but we'll all be, yeah, talking.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, Tiffany, we're going to take the superintendent's conference table, okay? We'll keep the doors open, it's public.
The rest of us are struggling, and the rest of us are crammed here. I just want to make sure they understand what you're asking us to do. Like, for example, under Birdsong and Martin, I, I, we have the two goals, student excellence and resources, and then we have an objective, objective three and one. But under the objectives, there are several strategies. So you're looking for, for us, it would be four strategies. So you're thinking, in an hour, we're going to be able to flesh out? Okay, we'll be lucky to get just student excellence, objective three, first strategy done.
Right. We, we were hoping to build in more time for this. We initially had two hours for this.
Oh, wow.
But some of our other conversation went along farther than we anticipated. So that's okay, because we are leaving you with this work. It doesn't mean that, okay, they're gone, so now we can...
This is going to also be a part of the homework before we get back?
This is part of the work, part of the work.
So in the folder is a, a, a document for each obje, yes, for each objective, and it has a strategy.
Well, I saw this, the one template, the different one in there?
In the folder?
Yeah.
It should be most...
Oh, so in the folder, in the folder.
We'll have to download it and duplicate it to another one.
So all of these.
Ah, I see it, okay.
And like, if you click that one and that's objective one, that's objective two.
Okay, I'm with you now.
Yes.
Okay. So then that makes it a little bit easier, because then we're starting.
Duplicate this document. You can make a copy.
Right, same.
This way.
Oh, well, uh-uh. Nah, y'all trying to take my, y'all trying to take my idea.
No, he's got the computer, not me.
No, no, Ronnie just told me.
Oh, okay.
We both have it pulled up.
So I can move over there and run the...
Oh, okay.
So welcome back, everyone. We can have a couple more minutes together. So what we want to do is just do a quick summary of what you've just completed. So it's a headline. It's asking you to write a brief headline that summarizes, um, the work that you just finished, the work that you just completed. And I heard one over here, so we'll start first with, uh, Mr. Clanton and Ms. Buffalo, their, their thought partnership. What's your headline for what you, just the work that you all just completed?
Oh, the proof is in the budget.
Proof is in the budget.
For what you do.
For that strategic plan. Proof is in the budget. All right, thank you. Then I think I've heard some thinking over here.
Ours is a little bit longer.
You're using your word, uh, but...
Your word count.
But, "School board members, uh, champion high-quality and highly effective teachers and support staff to work with our amazing scholars and will do what it takes to make them feel valued and supported."
Not the article.
Just wrote in an opinion.
That was the abstract. Yes, that was our abstract.
Think that's the strategy.
But just imagine that school board members champ, are champions.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a good one.
Hmm.
What else do we need to hear from?
High expectations and informative data.
I agree.
All right. Dr. Martin and Dr. Birdsong, you all might still be thinking of what's...
Aren't about this assignment.
So did we.
It'd be an R, R.
An O, a D, an N, an E, a Y. Bobby, yeah.
Hilarious. Comedy.
This is kind of, thinking about church too. This little light of mine, I'm going to let it shine. Speaking of lamps and that analogy. Shine the light on our brilliant scholars. We're, we're not prepared, clearly.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking about, um, the, uh, you know, the diversity, like, we want financial diversity, culturally, you know, um, appropriate, uh, culturally relevant, um, criteria, so it kind, and then it just goes back to Norfolk Public Schools, probably diverse school. So, um, yeah, we all, we already have that slogan, but, um...
Maybe diversity shapes who we are.
Right.
Oh, boy, she just pops them out.
I might have sat through one or two of these.
You think she's maybe done this before?
That was, that was top of the head.
It was good.
Yeah. But all of those things matter, that's the point. All of those things matter, because with your strategic plan, it is a headline. It is information that you will be expected and maybe questioned or asked or put on the, you know, put on the spot to share. What is it that we're working on in the strategic plan? Why is it that we can impact our stakeholders? What are the resources that are going to be involved? What is it, you know, how does this change who we are? How does this change or shape our culture? How does this change or impact what we're doing around student excellence? So the headline and what you say about that is critically important, not only here as board members, but certainly when you're speaking to students. So, we talked a little bit about this at our last, um, time together. Districts with high levels of student achievement, local board of education is aligned with and supporting the goals of achievement and instruction. Or these goals remain the primary focus, in other words, the headline of the district's efforts, and that no other initiatives attract attention or resources from accomplishing these goals. That's what we want to ensure is happening here, continues to happen here. All right? So when we come back, um, we need to talk a little bit about the, the mission, the vision, and the values. It's outlined here, we're not going to spend a lot of time with that right now, but when we gather together again, it is going to be thinking in light of the norms and the strategic plan, are we aligned? Is all of this now aligned with, with who we are? And what does that mean for us moving forward? So, let's do some thinking around today. I want you to go back to and reflect on the norms. These are the norms, again, that we agreed to, that we created, or that you all created and agreed to. So how did this play out today? How did you demonstrate these things? So give you a couple of minutes to think about this, or a minute or so to think about this. And really, Voice, how did you successfully live out these norms? What, what were some of the things that you felt really, were really elevated today?
Since I've been on the board, I know one of the things that we've had as a part of our norms is, um, that we respect each other's, um, positions in, in our society, like, right, as a parent, as an educator, as a, um, you know, so, employed person, or, you know, community activist, or whatever that is. And so I see this number four, or bullet four, um, that we value one another and will ensure that we hold ourselves and one another accountable. And that we value one another is really standing out to me in that sense, that we value what we each bring to the table individually and how we can learn from each other collectively.
You value one another and what you each bring to the table collectively? Did I miss anything else?
Well, we bring to the table individually and how we learn from each other collectively.
Well, just kind of, I was going to say number three, because that was kind of one of the, the objectives that we worked on, and we did a lot of focus around that engagement, and they report out that Dr. Gabriel gave, that we, we circle back around, we actually did that work. Um, value family, stakeholders, and community partners, that engagement piece. Taking active steps towards... I think we value one another, we recognize the fact that we have cheerleaders amongst us.
We have opera singers. Singer. I don't know if anyone else sings.
So, um, I don't know that we demonstrated any of the four, but I don't think, but I, but I feel we did not harm any of the four. So I think we did no harm today.
After battle.
Knowing is after battle.
And I'm just saying that just from the nature of what we did. So we, you know, we talk about, like, Ms. Campson, I were again talking about student growth. So we're in the process of, so we didn't go backwards, which I think is a positive.
All right. There are a lot of different ways that we can think about how we process what worked, how we focus on improvement, continuous improvement. And so one of the ways is looking at the work from these three areas. Did we achieve the results? And if we did, or what worked well in our moving toward our results or objectives for the day? What are some of the areas for improvement? Work, what worked well in terms of process? What are some areas for improvement? What worked well in terms of relationship building? And what are some areas for improvement? Because these are what we consider the dimensions of success, results, process, and relationships. And as you can see there, achieving the results, that's only one dimension. That's only one part of the success. But it can be measured in terms of how the work gets done, which focuses on the process, and the connections among people and how they treat one another, which is the real issue. And it sounds like based on not only the comments, but the way, observing the ways in which you all are engaging with each other is different. It's different. You are connecting in ways that are building stronger relationships, from what I see as an external observer. And you are laughing and smiling and sort of, I think, being more authentic with really who you might be outside of the board. I can imagine that Mr. Jordan, for example, is probably very funny else, because when you got them on a cheer. When you got them on a cheerleader joke.
I've always been funny, what are you saying?
But that's what I'm saying. People probably don't even know that. But that was a funny joke, though, really. You got them on that one. But I say that because that's not always what we have an opportunity to see with each other. So it's nice to be able to see you all and to allow yourselves to be more authentic in this space.
And I would say that, so I haven't been here since July. This is definitely a different, better feel in, like, the cohesion and what y'all are doing and how y'all are relating to each other than it was a little, almost a year ago.
So are there things that you are looking at and saying, you know what? These are some of the things that work well in any of these areas. We've already kind of talked about them as it relates to the norms, but if there's something else that you want to add as it relates to results, process, or relationships, I'm gonna jot those down, and then we'll focus on what are some things we need to improve. The only caveat I have with the improvement is that it starts with a verb, so that it's an action that can be taken. All right? I'll start with any pluses that you have that are additive in terms of the norms.
What works well and needs to change as it relates to results, process, and relationships?
Yes.
Okay.
What worked well. We're gonna go with what worked well first, and then we'll go with any things that you feel need to change.
We reflect on just today or just the whole process?
Just today.
Oh, just today.
Just today.
Okay, gotcha.
And this is a step that, again, you can incorporate into your agenda when you have your meetings, so that every time you're going back and saying, all right, what are we doing well? What do we need to work on? Because we talk about continuous improvement. We expect that in classrooms. So holding that same standard here. And if you don't have things that you want to contribute, that's okay, too. I don't want to, I don't want you to feel obligated to say something. We can go to, you know, what are some of the areas that you want to improve in?
I'd say something. Well, I think one of the things that worked well for us today, I hope I'm answering the right question, is partnering with different people.
What?
The pardon.
Real partnering.
And partners that I'm sure were carefully selected and decided who went with who. And that's, and that worked out well. But it was interesting to watch the, to read the part, I went, oh, okay. Okay. This is actually a step upward. This is what we needed to do. So I think that that was helpful to the relationship-building piece that you have.
Another way of saying you survived me?
No, we're like best buddies. It did, we worked very well together. Did all the typing.
For the process.
Oh! Score!
Yep.
Anything else?
I just think to just remember not to take things too personal. We, I mean, Noel and I just had a brief interaction where I think she just wanted to make sure I didn't take something personally, and I was like, I didn't, you know? Just, but I think the fact that she took the time to make sure I didn't take it personally and I confirmed that I did it, you know, I think was, you know, a plus, you know? But I think that is just a reminder that, you know.
I heard a plus and maybe a delta, checking in to make sure.
Well, I think, I think.
Or is it all of us?
I think we're at a, I think we're all at a place where that check-in may be necessary as we're building trust. But I think also a reminder that to not, to not take things personally, that, because we're all not coming at a place to personally attack or anything, it's just, we're coming at a, from a place of passion for the work that we're doing. And that's, that's really what's, I guess, driving, you know, our, I guess, sometimes the way we communicate, and so.
After this accurately. We're at a place where check-in may be necessary, and we're coming from a place of passion for the work we're doing, not attacking.
Right.
Excuse me, any others? All right. So.
Was that plus or deltas? I have, I have one, one delta.
Okay.
I don't know if it's a need to change, but.
Okay.
We, we had, we pushed out several tasks for another month. So couldn't do that again.
Okay, so what's the upgrade? What do we need? What's the action that you want us to take?
The things we just agreed that we're gonna complete by April 5th, that we, that we do it.
The meet deadline.
The meet the deadline. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, meet deadlines in the action items. Yep. Mr. Clanton?
So, yes, I agree in the respect that, you know, we need to meet deadlines, but I also believe that we need to leave enough flexibility to understand that to have full board discussion and input may require for us to push some things back. Doesn't mean that we're not meeting a sense of urgency, but we truly want to be moving together towards that.
Okay, that's fine. Now, with, with any of these, with any of these reflections, it's what you feel is necessary. So it's, you can say it, it doesn't have to try to justify or counter what someone's saying.
No, no, I'm just saying for me, that's my opinion.
It's to leave flexibility to have.
Definitely a goal, you know, this deadline type thing, but also leaving enough grace and flexibility with us as a governance team to understand that some things may take a little bit more time.
Okay. So up next, or next up, oh, I changed it over here. "Continue to work on the board-level governing and strategic plan monitoring. This is what we hope we'll do: establish and communicate the current board priorities and develop a theory of action for the board's work for next year." All right? And that's it. Thank you all so much for your time today, and we hope you have a wonderful rest of the week, and we will see you back in April.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Right into it. To honor the time. Okay, first up, we have our educational facilities planning updates discussion from, from David Sturts at Cooperative Strategies. Please come up to the lectern.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It's good to be with you, as always. And so what I'm going to do today, when we, when it decides it's ready to load, it's finicky, I guess.
Oh, it's coming up.
Good timing.
There it is. I'm gonna, as you say, what's the ask? I'm gonna give you the ask, and I'm gonna give you a pledge, a commitment. So my ask is going to be, I'm gonna lay out what I see in terms of broadly speaking, what is the question around your strategic planning for your educational facilities master plan? That really is a rudder that helps, will help to navigate what we do next in terms of the plan. My commitment to you is upon receiving that strategic direction, that I will come back with a plan that has more community engagement than you have seen in some time in this process. Because I believe that we are in a go hard or go home kind of pivot at this point in your educational facilities master plan. And that step one will be an extended engagement, listening sessions with your community to wrestle with the context, the desired outcomes in this broad, this strategy that we'll talk about. So that's my pledge to you. And that upon receiving, you know, upon getting that back, I will come back with that plan and will not proceed until I have consensus from the board on the broad approach itself being appropriate to the action. So I, without further elaboration, I think this is a big moment, and I want to lay the groundwork here. The beginning few slides are probably not information to you that's new, but it helps set the stage. I'm going to look at nationally, larger urban school districts and the relationships of facilities, population, and finances in the past 10-plus years. Norfolk, and specifically, the same. Defining the goals of what we're trying to achieve, options as I see them strategically for the next phase of your educational facilities master plan, and then sort of the next steps, which I previewed already. National context. Norfolk Public decades ago was one of, was in the group of the 100 largest urban school districts in the country. You shrunk a bit, but you're still in that large, mid-to-large urban group. Among the large urban school districts nationwide, 40 districts have had declines, these are the largest, like, 70 to 80, and declines between 10 and 60 percent. So significant enrollment declines between '06 and 2020. Only 11 districts had any significant growth above 10 percent. The vast majority, you can see the blue and the red, and these are our largest urban districts in the country. Hard to read, but the yellow highlighted box is Norfolk. And the graph there, the map, rather, the darker the red, the higher the decline, the darker the blue, the blue shows some moderate growth in some areas or level off. Among the large urban districts with declines since 2006, Norfolk's losses are averaged 20 percent. So among your, your large urban districts in the country during this period of time, Norfolk's enrollment decline is right there in the mean. Now, relating this to capital. If you have not read the 2021 State of Our Schools Report from the National Council on School Facilities, I would highly commend it. Has lots of great, is the authority on national infrastructure data in K-12. There's really not great data sets out there that allow us to do benchmarking in K-12 capital. This is one of them. And it shows the unfortunate reality that in our urban districts, you are, you have several competing challenges. You have disproportionately high costs for construction, well, you've had disproportionately declining enrollment, and the burden for those costs are borne majority by the local taxing authority, which has had declining revenues. So you have an upside-down math equation in K-12 facilities. This is a national issue. This is a national equity issue, and you are in this mix. And this proportionately impacts negatively our black and brown students. Nationwide, there is an $85 billion estimated gap in school facility infrastructure spending. About $57 billion of that is capital. The remaining is MNO, keeping up, preventing deferred maintenance. There is an unequal cost burden on our local communities. The states, on average, pick up 20 percent, but that's on average, and there are great swings in that, and the federal government does next to nothing except FEMA. High-poverty districts spending 37 percent less on average than low-poverty districts on their facilities because of those pressures that I mentioned prior. And that is dovetailing with the enrollment decline. Of these large urban districts nationwide, the median number of schools that were closed since 2006 for those districts with 10 percent or more decline is 13. Median number of those schools in these districts in 2020 was 82. So a lot of these districts are larger than you. But what this shows, about 20 percent enrollment decline over that period, which is what Norfolk has experienced, and districts going from about 95 schools to about 80-something for the largest districts. The colors on either side, icons, show approximate ratios. I'm gonna get something a little bit more specific to Norfolk. I used the National Center for Educational Statistics data, looking at mid-sized cities, of which Norfolk is one, and did a change over time in revenue, in enrollment, and expense per pupil. And the expense per pupil is the top gray bar, the enrollment is the bottom blue, and the dotted orange is your revenue. The peach highlight there shows the point at which your rates are in negative territory. So you see that really through, and this is '06 to '17. Suffice to say, until we, as we started to get out of the last recession, the gap widened. In the 2012, 13, 14 era, the gap is widening between enrollment, expense per pupil, and revenue, whereas it used to be a little bit more aligned. This is Norfolk specifically, using the same data set, where you actually were in a slightly better position than many mid-sized districts until more recently in these ratios. And this is percent of change over time. But the trend line follows. But the trend line follows. The enrollment's declining, the expense per pupil increasing, and the revenue is not keeping pace. Within the district, your census data shows that the city itself has declined between 2010 and 2020 by an average of 480 persons per year. Your district decline is 514 on average during that same period of time. That, despite the fact that you have about 8,000 units, housing units, permits during that period of time, and we track this with our enrollment projections, we do these projections every year, we're tracking these building permits. You've had a significant volume of permits, they're not yielding growth to your student body, nor your population writ large. There is a whole conversation about investment versus displacement to have that is at the city level that is impacting you, and I'm sure that is not a new conversation for you. When you aggregate this up, spent a significant amount of time yearly itemizing, going back in time on all of your capacities, we did a capacity study in 2013. That was my first time working in the district, was actually walking your schools to get that capacity. And we benchmarked that, I froze that capacity in time for 2013 back to 2006 and looked at your total enrollments. And then used the forecasted enrollment with the current capacities and projected those current capacities forward. And in the space between 2013 and present, every year, I was, I changed the capacity to match what your program capacity was that year, to be very specific and accurate in terms of your total utilization. This trend line, if you hearken back to this graph, is remarkably similar. Your utilization was in a good spot district-wide. Individual schools varied, but district-wide, until 2015, 16, 17, and you have a drop. 2017, 18, and that has accelerated. Your forecast is to go, you, '06 to '22, your surplus capacity went from only 2,000 surplus seats, you were tight and tidy, to 90, to 44 at present. Projected to increase to about 13,000 surplus seats by 2031, or a district-wide utilization of less than two-thirds. When we look at capital, to be comprehensive about it, the capital planning creates the operational units within which you can work, quite simply. And so it is the numbers, slices of pie that you have in your district. And so to quantify what is on the table, not just from a capital expense and possible capital cost avoidance in the future, in looking at changes to your portfolio, but in operating costs and availability per student investment. Worked with your team to create a model for the school-specific operational costs per grade level building. Elementary, middle, and high only, we did not look at mixed configurations. What this is, is this takes a three-year average of all of your utility costs, and then sums up by grade level. Then we look at the personnel specific to operate that building, and there's no teachers in this, it is the personnel specific to that building to operate it administratively. Your average, and then look at the smaller sized schools as the benchmark. So a methodical, conservative approach to your fixed costs to operate each school by grade level. $860,000 a year for an elementary, 1.8 million on average for a middle school, and 2.65 for a high. I went back in time and used the following methodology to look at, at what point did you have reasonable surplus schools in history, based on looking at your total grade level capacity, looking at two factors. One, at what point does your grade level utilization drop below 85 percent? 85 percent being a standard planning metric in your utilization. And to back up a little bit more, your utilization is only looking at your, at your permanent capacity, and we factor that down for program. So it already has a 95 percent factor for elementaries, 85 percent factor for middles, and a 75 percent factor for highs. So we're backing down your max capacity programmatically to account for scheduling. When you, so we're looking at, if you take 85 percent as a standard planning benchmark for a happy utilization with room to grow, but you're not heating, cleaning, cooling, a lot of empty space, and staffing in a lot of empty space. It's a range, it's not the number, I want to be clear on that, it's a range. Looking at where you dropped below 85 percent utilization by grade level, and then looked at when the surplus seats that you would need to eliminate to be at that percentage, when that number of surplus seats was equal to the average enrollment of that grades band, I counted that as one potential surplus school. Case in point, if you have 400, and I think it's 430 or something like that is your average elementary school size, enrollment. If the number of surplus seats that you would need to eliminate to get to 85 percent utilization was less than 430, you don't have any surplus schools at the elementary level. You have a little surplus seats, but it's not enough to say you could surplus that school and then be at 85 percent utilization, because we do not want to go in the opposite direction, which is to overload a bunch of schools. So that is how I approach this methodology. And I want to state again that it is a range approach in practice and reality, there is no one number to think about, but this is a solid planning number, and it gives us an azimuth. You didn't have any surplus schools, according to this methodology, until 2016. That's because the numbers were creeping up to that line, but they weren't quite there yet. And then you see, based upon that methodology, the number of schools by grade level historically, that you could consider surplus using this methodology. By multiplying those numbers by grade level by year, according to your operating costs, I estimate that $81 million has been spent since 2016 on schools, on basically operating surplus, that that could have been reinvested if you had consolidated. That's a significant number of schools. You see that number? $81 million over those seven years. Forecasting forward, using that same methodology, there are your average enrollments, 441, 725, 1480, elementary, middle, and high. Your base operating cost multiplier, the number of seats needed to reduce to maintain the 85 percent utilization, you see those raw numbers there in 2024 through 2031. The number of schools to reduce to maintain that level, I actually was more conservative in this approach in the future, I made all of these numbers round down, so 1.9 schools that you could consolidate equaled one. I made it very conservative in that respect. And looked at the annual budget impact. Using this methodology, projecting forward 10 years, we're talking about $100 million. And that assumes you maintain your current configuration. The lesser, but still important question to follow up the main question later is, what do you want to consider about configurations? You're at a point where you've gone through several elementary schools and middle schools becoming 3/8s model over time, and it's been, as enrollment declines, finding, finding that opportunity. If you went to a different model, as that more broadly, this number could go even further. So, and last, this is the slide, there we go, that this, this is changed, this was a correction today, so if you saw the board docs post on Friday, my occulpa, I had half this number in there. The 2020 FCA noted you had just under $600 million in deficiencies noted through 2040, anticipated through 2040, which is about $30 million a year without inflation, which is kind of a big deal. You can't keep up with that. Your federal funds will dry out in the next two years, they're great, they're amazing, they're letting you do a lot of good things, even with the cost overruns that inflation is causing us. But they're going away. So you're not gonna be able to keep up with them. So, as looking at the goals and priorities that you have as a board, improving student academic achievement and outcomes, ensuring safe, caring, and healthy learning environments, and strengthening family and community engagement, and I won't go, I won't read you the rest out, that would be patronizing, but here's the main question. Considering your goals and priorities, what do you believe is best for students? In the next iteration of planning, should we, A, maximize the investment that we can per pupil? Is that best for students? Or is it best that we try to keep every school building open and support those schools where they are? I am not going to row in a different direction that you want to go. I want to know what you think is best for students, and if it is more nuanced than this, then nuance it for me. And with configuration planning, do we plan, moving forward, that we only consider changes to your configuration à la carte, based upon a school-by-school decision, which is enrollment-based, when it becomes inviably low? Or do we look at pursuing, considering a different district-wide model other than elementary, middle, high school, and then the occasional combo, 3/8, maybe a K-8, maybe not, when enrollment gets too low? But the number one question above that, what are we doing about your declining enrollment? You're increasing surplus capacity, because it's not changing, it's going to accelerate. As much as I would love to see the housing developments changing your fortunes in future in that respect, I don't see that. I haven't seen that. And so there are tough roads ahead. It is tough to maintain everything, it's tough to change. So, as I see it, there are four options. If what you believe is best for students is generally speaking, maintaining the schools in our community, in your community where they are, how they are, insofar as you can, as best as you can, then if we're going to do that and change configurations on a school-by-school basis only, then the plan that I will develop with your team, for you, will focus on deferred maintenance and building efficiencies in the system without changing the portfolio as it is. And we'll focus on operational tactics that could nip and tuck around the edges on our efficiencies, i.e. the start time discussion we had a couple of years ago, and those kinds of things. Boundary changes, but not changing the fundamental numerator-denominator, not changing the fundamental equations, just looking at changing some of the operational efficiencies around the edges of that. If you want to keep the schools open as long as possible, that's what we're maximizing for, then the capital operating will be the same, the only difference in planning is we're gonna come back and start in this room and start with envisioning exercises about what is that do different on our configuration. And then we're gonna scale that out to the community, and it's gonna be significant. What I propose will be a, whatever path we choose here will be a significant amount of listening. If the general direction is invest as much as we can per pupil, knowing that means changes to your portfolio to, to surplus schools, when they are defined as such. And yet, we want to keep our configurations more or less the same and change on a school-by-school basis. Our capital planning will focus on portfolio reduction and rebuilding, moving programs to the best-conditioned facilities, while on the operational standpoint, maximizing proximity of families to the best-conditioned, optimal-capacity buildings and programs. That planning focus will work internally, and then with stakeholders to create a plan to maintain the dominant configuration while aiming for the capital and operating goals above. If option D is the most significant change, then all the same, except we start, we're gonna start here, we're gonna do a lot of visioning work. What is it? Why is it? What are the opportunities? What are model districts that have gone down that path before you? If that's the path that you choose, there are some, we can look at them, we can talk about pros and cons, we can, we can get some good data. And so there we are. And we can, and I mean this in all sincerity, I deeply care about doing this job right for all of my clients, for all the students, my client is the student all the time. And that's why I'm staying in this business. You all are the, are the strategic direction, strategic policymakers, and I need your direction explicitly as to what you believe is best for students. Inform me about what that is, let's dialogue about that, and when you give me that direction, I'll take that next step with you, but only after getting confirmation with you that the plan that I have devised with my team to achieve that with your community, not to, with, is something that you can support strategically. And then I will hold myself accountable and ask you to do the same, to doing that in a transparent and honest way with your stakeholders. That is important to me, personally and professionally. So step one through four, this is not an easy, quick thing, but we discuss, and when you give me your strategy, I will draft that plan, I will come back to you, we will work on it together until it is right, not just in strategy, but in process, in engagement process and strategy, with whom, when, how, devil is in those details, and I want to get them right with you before we execute it. And then we'll start, and it's gonna be a process. I think it's at least a year, probably going into the second, because the, whatever path that you choose, there's a lot of hard issues at stake. And the right plan wrongly executed is not gonna fly, and I want to do it right, and I want to do it with you. So, what I'd ask then is, is to have some discussions, please challenge any assumptions that you see in here that you think need challenged, please engage on the data, I'd love to do that. Engage on the process, regardless of strategy, what are the process non-negotiables that we have here, that you have? And I want to listen, and if you'll beg my pardon to run and grab my notes, I'm gonna go do that, and I'll be right, be right back here.
Yep. Challenges, questions, comments? Go ahead, Dr. Gabriel.
Thank you, Dr. Martin, and thank you for the presentation this afternoon. My question is to the board, how do we feel about the data that's been presented to us? I think we first need to either acknowledge that it is fact, or if there are challenges that we see, or questions that we have with the material that's been presented, then we discuss it. Because I don't think that we can move forward if we don't agree with what has been presented before us. So I would first like to establish that, because what I have perceived from the data presented is that we have a number of school, we are operating too many schools than what our budget is allowing for, and it's not sustainable. That is my take-home message from this presentation. And the result of that for the future is that we are going to have to continue to do more with less, and it may not be benefiting students because of the situation that we're in. And that, that has been my kind of take-home point from the data that you have presented. So I So I want to hear from my colleagues to see if that's what they have received from the presentation.
We'll go around the table. Ms. Massim, go ahead next.
Thank you, Mr. Sturtz and Dr. Gabriel. Thank you for those comments as well. Before I jump into what you've presented here today, I guess if you could give a little bit of some background, I guess part of me is feeling a little bit of a disconnect between, you know, the recommendations that you had brought forward, I think June 4th.
Right.
I think it was, you know, previously, and where, I guess, what our status is with the projects that were previously recommended. Some I know are moving along, and then others may be waiting for some clearer direction from us, you know, for instance, Lindenwood.
Right.
And how that plays a role in where we are with this discussion today.
Yes, ma'am. Good question. And the core of the previous recommendations were around this issue of resources per capita, resources per student, and costs per building. What do you have to work with, and what is a way to optimize those? And at the same time, optimize for access to those schools. We do not want to leave deserts, you know, no school access and those kinds of equity. And where I'm coming from in this presentation is that the pace of the change in terms of your enrollment and capacity and costs is outpacing what we had improved in terms of the building-level consolidations, which were fairly limited in the past scope around the mainly ECC and those things. What I see is in implementing the plan as it is, the capital needs are only going to continue to grow. The costs are continuing to grow. But actually, as a capital planner, more importantly, the expense per capita is accelerating with this decline, and simply, the master plan should be a living document, and it should be updated as we have new data. As I look at it, I think the thrust of the master plan remains. I think the pace of the change is what I'm asking, if we need to change that, to accelerate that. And if we do, that's a major change. And that, quite admittedly, I was humbled in the last round of discussions around Lindenwood. I could have done a lot better job of engaging with your community a priori before, you know, we, I rolled out into that recommendations. We had a process. We went through the process. We were faithful to the process. The process was insufficient. And so if we're talking about the need, the potential need for significant change, and we need to do better, I need to do better in terms of engaging your community on even one step in that change. If we have to do many more steps in that change, I need your direction, I need your approval of the strategy, I need your approval of the goal, and then I need to work with you to devise the right engagement strategy that you and we believe, you and I believe, is robust enough to the task, and it's big. Did I answer your question?
Yes, you did. But when, so thank you for that, and thank you for that bit of a background before I launch into like some things that I think is a board discussion for consideration to help with that direction moving forward. And I like how you preface this whole discussion on what's best for students.
Yes.
And, you know, so for the board to consider with that in mind, what's best for students, and considering the data that we've been examining, the academic data that we've been examining, along with, you know, some of the goals that we've had in place throughout, since 2014, since Cooperative Strategies or Dejounte Rector began this work around deconcentrating poverty and creating more socio-economically diverse schools, you know, that we maintain that as a goal. The other piece is we see with, as long as, as far as academic data goes, you know, do we need to look at different configuration, grade configurations? You know, we look at elementary school configurations to include sixth grade, for instance. Do we need to look at ninth-grade academies? Because when I look at even the data that we're going to look at later on this afternoon, you know, we consistently see, you know, the high failure, you know, the challenges of our ninth-grade students. And, you know, how do we bring targeted supports to that grade level, so could we have a ninth-grade academy? How do we, how do we create structures in our schools to support our students in the best way possible in the buildings that we have, but so that we are meeting the needs of our students? And so I would like for us to kind of consider grade configurations. It may not be wholesale across the district, but maybe school by school, starting with those schools that we know are in greatest need. And so those are some other things. And the last thing that I think needs to be strongly considered is that decisions around our facility planning need to also take into account, not just facility planning, but educational planning, is the health impact, the whole child impact. And you talked about in one of these options, revisiting start and dismissal time.
Right.
And, you know, I think as the years go on, the research continues to mount on the benefits of the, especially for high school secondary students, the later start times. And so, you know, I strongly continue to advocate that we continue to look at that. And even as we talked about earlier today with this fourth stagger that we currently have with our elementary school students starting, you know, later, you know, there's been a lot of advocacy to look at that and just adjusting our start times to be more developmentally appropriate. I think that is something that we need to examine as well. So those are, those are three big areas that I think are non-negotiables, and that is, again, you know, deconcentrating poverty or desegregating our schools, you know, keeping our academic focus, you know, on our students, and how grade configurations, and the structure of our academic programming, and then the health impact of our facilities and educational planning to be at the forefront as well. So just for board consideration.
So do you agree with the data?
We're round-robin at first, aren't we?
Yeah. So Dr. Gabriel's first question was, do you agree with the data? And so we're going to go around and listen to everyone. That's what I thought you were raising your hand for, but that's okay. I mean, I think you made a lot of really good points, too, so that's fine. But I do want to go back to Dr. Gabriel and her question of, is everyone in agreement with the data as a basis for moving forward? You're fine, you're fine.
I mean, I have no basis to argue against the data, so I haven't done my own independent research to support, but I mean, it's been well documented over the years that this has been, and, you know, I've gone back and looked at the data that you've provided and the other districts have provided, and that we've known from other conferences and things that we've gone to and learned, you know, that declining enrollment is a reality. And so I don't have any basis to argue that that is not factual, if that's what you're asking. It's just, now, how do we approach these options?
Right.
I think that needs to be a board discussion, and those, the factors that I raised are just some things that I think we need to consider. So, yeah, so I apologize if I didn't answer that.
I just wanted to know that, are we, do we feel like we're all reading from the same sheet of music when it comes to the data that was presented? Because I know that that was important when we had like our norms discussion about, you know, the information that's received. So I want to make sure that before we go on those options, do we, or do we feel that no, the enrollment is not declining, it's actually accelerating? And so I just want to hear from everyone that, you know, do you agree or disagree, or do you think otherwise? Does anyone here disagree with the data? Have comments about it? Critiques?
I don't want to address the question yet, because I don't think, for me, is the first question.
Okay.
So, like, like, like we just said, we've known what declining enrollment in facilities, I mean, that's, none of that is new.
New.
I think he's, it's been put in new context, which I think is important. I would submit that there's greater costs associated with Norfolk Public Schools and the city of Norfolk, associated with, are we preparing students to graduate from our schools on time, ready to enter the workforce, our college and career? That to me is, if All For Ed and some others have done assessments of the benefits and the costs, just looking at graduation rates and students being prepared upon graduation. And so my sense is, I appreciate the update on the data, and I appreciate the four options, but for me, I go back to where I thought the educational piece, the educational planning piece fits in, in the educational and facilities planning piece. So I feel like we have done a lot of focus and attention on the facility planning piece. I feel we have lost track of the educational piece, which is to tie the student outcomes and preparation. It was to connect the community to education and facilities. And so, you know, we were talking about communities of practice earlier during governance training. And so to me, there's also a option where we also, I think, need to reassess and reevaluate what we've done academically. We created Academy for Discovery at Lakewood. What has it, you know, has it produced? We've built new schools. Is there a connection between the new schools that we've built and the academic outcomes that we're seeing? Do I think we need new buildings? Absolutely. But I think there should be some deeper consideration around not just building buildings, but building buildings that meet our needs in terms of the student excellence and the things that we've identified in the strategic plan. And so I think that we should go back and, or as part of this process, reassess, reevaluate, or maybe just evaluate what we've done thus far against whatever goals we had at the time, and kind of level-set that, and then use that as part of consideration around these four options or any other options that come forward. Because even, you know, we did a, you know, we did a 3-8, we did a 3-8 for, because we also thought we were going to have some pre-K2s, okay? We didn't do any more pre-K2s. We had one pre-K2. We did a 3-8 that was citywide choice, because we said we wanted to have, we wanted to be the cornerstone of a proudly diverse community, and so we were looking at models that would create more proudly diverse schools. We built Southside STEM. We haven't gone back and assessed that and how we can, are we achieving the goals or not? We did the Lake Taylor School. So there are things that we have done that I think are good things, but I think what tends to happen over time, especially when there's frequent board turnover, administrative turnover, and city turnover, is we carry these legacies on, but we don't take the time to evaluate whether or not we were effective with what we've done. And so I think we need to, you know, in the community of practice loop, you know, we've prototyped several things, but I think we need to pause for a minute and evaluate the prototypes that we've done, so that we can determine now, are we, that we grow what works, if that's appropriate, and look at what's the infrastructure that it takes to grow. Or maybe we start all over again.
Yeah.
But when the tough decisions came around zoning and pairing and those things, we punt it. And so what I think we have to consider beyond what the data tells us about our schools and our operational costs is, do we have the courage to make decisions based upon whatever the data tells us? And I think there's some, I think we should have a conversation with this board and this governance team at this time around those types of questions, because where we were in 2013 is very different than where we are in 2023. And so I personally just don't want to have a conversation about facilities. I think that the conversation about facilities has dominated the conversation, and I think we have lost track of the educational planning piece and what it means for students beyond knowing that we want our students and staff in great facilities. I don't think there's any question about that. And I'll give you one other example, and then I'll yield. To me, it's almost similar to, you know, when Norfolk Public Schools years ago had, you know, Dream Keepers. And I remember going to the public hearing, and because of recession and because of all these other things, decisions were made around buildings and money. Decisions weren't made, in my opinion, decisions weren't made around what was best for children. And then we'll come back 10 years and 20 years later, and we'll come up with an innovative idea, which in essence is to go back and recreate Dream Keepers. So I think we need to be able to take a pause and evaluate and assess the decisions that we've made, and are they producing results for children, and have that factor into our decision-making about what we do next.
And I agree with you on that. I think that we can do that. But the other thing that I'm getting from this presentation in this newer context is that by having the facilities discussion, it could potentially free up some financial resources so that we can invest in the educational planning portion and do it right.
No argument. We have that.
So I don't think it's one or the other. I really think that we can do both of these.
You're going round-robin.
Yeah.
So I was giving my input, and I'm saying we had that same conversation before.
Yeah.
And the math doesn't change, the formula, the calculus doesn't change. What ultimately hinders it is when the board, or when the superintendent has to make a recommendation, and then the board has to make a decision whether or not, we've said it often, you know, we haven't touched high school attendance zones since the 70s. So that's where the rubber hits the road. You tell somebody you want to build a new school, everybody'll say yes. But then when you start talking about you want to change the attendance zone around that school, then that's when the tough conversation comes in.
Do you have anything?
I'm actually taking this all in.
All right, all right. Do you want to go ahead first, Carlos, and then?
Yeah, I just wanted to have comments, and then I wanted to follow up. Mr. Jordan, can you clarify when you mentioned the board, when they had to make a tough decision, punt when you, was there a specific time? Are you saying that the board punted?
Yeah, we haven't touched high school attendance zones. We haven't looked at whether or not we were going to follow the pathways. There are some, when we were looking at K2s and 3-8s and all that, there's all kinds of things that, from an educational standpoint, we were looking at, that we just kind of dropped. And so what I heard in the presentation, what I would agree with, is it's become kind of à la carte, you know, we'll pick something here and we'll pick something there. What we were trying to do originally was to make systemic change and impact.
Yep.
And I think we, that takes a certain level of depth that I think, and it's not just us, I just think boards in general.
Appreciate it.
And then we end up going à la carte, and then the next thing you know, we're still, as the, going back to when I first got on the board and the Great City Schools Report, we're still as the, going back to when I first got on the board and the Great City Schools Report said we were system of schools versus a school system. We're still a system of schools and not a school system.
Definitely. I appreciate that, Dr. Martin. It kind of leans into my other questions. So we see that we've had this steady trend of decline in school enrollment and student enrollment. So whatever decisions that we kind of make from that, there's not something that's going to happen all of a sudden and then we start having an influx of students in there. And, and then it kind of falls back into other pieces. There's something that we could have done to, to change that because I know that that's a question that's out there. Well, you know, there's too much violence or there's this that happened. And so there are things that you could have done as a school division to stop this steady decline in enrollment. So this is a national trend and we're just a part of that, right?
It is a national trend. It is a local trend. Your decline in student enrollment is in lockstep with a decline in the Norfolk population writ large over the two census, the last two census periods. And you're, you're both averaging about 500 persons a year, be it students or population total. And so it's despite the permitting. And that is part of the life cycle of a built out city. You've been built out for decades. You got the largest naval base in the country. That's not going to become a master plan community anytime soon, forever. And you are where you're at. The housing yields tend to decline as po, as the housing stock ages. And there is sometimes a little resurgence when you go through renovating. But it is, it is at a lower peak in a quicker valley, generally speaking.
You know, I agree with a lot of things that my colleagues have already stated. And I do believe, Dr. Martin, in your respect, that we have to look at both and I appreciate the numbers because it does show us that there's an opportunity to be able to reinvest some of those dollars that we're spending. And also I appreciate the aspect that you mentioned, taking the time to really intentionally spend as much time as needed with the community.
Right.
Because one of the things that we've all noticed and we've all seen is how myths and disinformation can get out there and derail opportunities that for which could potentially, or, or what are derived to make, to be done in the best interest of students. And we all want our, our, our students to be in world-class learning environments. We want our teachers and staff members to come in each day, knowing that there is a safe and secure learning environment for them to be able to work with that. But I have been saying for a minute here, and it's a thing that I'm going to continue, and I've told folks, I said for the next four years, I'm going to continue to keep pushing, pushing, pushing. And that is, how do we change the way do we do education in Norfolk Public Schools? To do exactly what you, many of my colleagues have stated, so that our students can graduate on time, come out of school prepared for career, college and life. And no matter what that may be, if that's going to a two or four-year institution, going into military, but that everyone walks out of this building, out of there, across that stage with a diploma, and in some cases that they've got their associate's degree or even they are, they're walking out with certifications. That's where the educational piece comes in. And so how do we change what we've been doing? And I know there are models out there. I've been pushing to do some field trips, to, to go and look at some of those other models. An opportunity for us to be bold. But I caution and, and I put that out here for my, my colleagues in this respect, that if we go down this road, it's going to be a whole lot of different things and a whole lot of things that are pulling on us. But if we've decided that we're working with our consultants, where the administration's pulling in to give us a recommendation, we have to stand firm to do what's in the best interest of students. And we cannot buckle under that particular pressure. We've got an opportunity and I think what you said in there is that we have to expedite what we're doing because we don't have time to sit around and wrestle our laurels because these things are continuously decreasing. I think you said with 500 students almost on an average every year. Which then goes into the dollars and the cents because we know that each pupil that's coming in here with the average, average daily attendance, those are dollars and cents that are on how we run this division and how we support and, and we look at another year, Dr. Birdsong, and then we don't have those federal dollars. Unless there's something else happening, but you know, the way and we're spending, we're doing some other things there. So we've got to do some things and I really encourage, and I, the diversity piece, you know, I, I, I hear that a lot and I, I know that we, we made some, you know, the board made some decisions before I got here, but again, I support those going forward. However, this is the kind of a question back to you. When you see the steady decline, almost 500 students every year, and then we look at the majority population that's in our school division, we look at also some of the systematic things that have been done in our neighborhoods with redlining and so forth and where our schools are located. How do we truly meet that goal of ensuring diversity across this entire school division? Unless we do something in the respect of getting rid of attendance boundaries or moving to a system where students have an opportunity to apply within their career track. And this is where I'm very a big proponent on getting rid of attendance boundaries at the high school level. Going to a ninth grade academy where we can support students there. But we've got to do something that's different and it's not just because I grew up in this neighborhood. But we've got to make sure that when students are preparing to go into the high school level, that we're offering them tracks for which they can benefit from, which is going to engage them, keep them involved so that they can graduate on time and they understand why they're there. Because it's different from when any of us was sitting in the school and I was sitting in the geometry class or anything else down there. It was like, you know, why am I here? We've got to make that connection. But I do punt that back to you. How do we, what are some things, and I mean, is, is that a challenge?
Yeah, it's a challenge. I'm going to give, without naming, name, different state, different client. A little bit smaller than you, but not a lot smaller than you. Just finished up an attendance boundary process. They went to elementary school choice about 20 years ago for boundaries. Because their schools, the majority of, seven of their 11 elementary schools were within two miles of each other. You can't draw an attendance boundary like that. That's, I said, it's angry spaghetti on a plate. It doesn't make any sense. And they were trying to do, they were trying to promote diversity amongst their student population through that. Ended up through the choice pattern with some of the same kinds of lack of diversity, you know, some measure of segregation that was directly reflective of the same measures of segregation in their community. The schools reflecting the community. It's tough. And through time, their tweaking of the formulas for choice have trended in a positive direction. We were asked to look at alternatives to that. So we did. We brought them to the community. In order to override the segregation that's in the community through school attendance by mandate, we were talking about moving two-thirds to 80% of all students to a different school. And what we ultimately ended with unanimous, that's, that's too strong of a word. Vast majority support on all of the communities across that district was that the ends did not justify the means. That, that mandating that kind of change to have that, you know, a, what would be called on paper predictable amount of diversity at the schools, that the scale of that change was not tenable. Let alone feasible. Could they actually implement that? What folks said is at the elementary level, and this is, this is a reflective of what I see over the past 10 years of doing this. Naturally, you're going to get the highest capacity to, to, to increase diversity at your middles and highs. That's just logical, the way that our schools work. And it's the most challenging at our elementaries. And what folks were saying is if we go to try to force this, the, the change, the massive changes on our school system there to, to better, have better diversity, we are going to necessarily increase significantly the distance between where parents and students live and the schools they attend. Because the neighborhoods aren't integrated the way that they should be. The way that we want our schools to be. And that the cost of doing that would have a disproportionate negative impact on our black and brown families because of the lack of the transportation challenges and those kinds of things. And so it was to say that the end, the means to achieve this by mandate would undercut the strategy that we're going for in the first place. And so to focus instead on how do we make every, invest in every single school that we have so that every, every, every elementary school, regardless of your zip code, is warm, safe, cool, dry, educationally adequate on the facility side and maximally resourced on the human side. Maximizing that most important of quotations, which is the quality time with a teacher and student.
That's.
And that, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry.
That then, what we ended up switching with, with this client was to focus, our contract said elementary zones. The net result was, yeah, keep doing what you're doing on the elementary side. On terms of how you do the choice, because that's the best way for this district to do it. Change your feeder patterns into your middle school. And you increase your diversity and you balance out your capacity. Which then does the same for your high schools because it feeds up. Long answer to a short question. But it is reflective of what I've seen in doing this across the nation. And I think generally speaking is, would be my recommended focus. Absolutely. This is absolutely a goal. You are swimming against the tide of your neighborhoods that are decades in the making. To do so by force is, it comes at a cost. That cost will be borne most by those you want to serve, to resource the most who need it. So to do so by, by looking at maximizing, how do we make sure that every elementary, every kindergarten education, you, you leave that kindergarten class, you have met your kindergarten standards? If you do that, you look at any research study on achievement gaps, opportunity gaps, your kids are kindergarten ready and leave kindergarten on grade level? That's not everything, but that's a lot. How do you do that systematically? And then you don't disregard your diversity goals of the elementary school. You look at the capacity for the most gains at the middles and highs.
So that just, just the, so going back to your question, Mr. Clanton. So when we made the decision to do educational planning, we didn't, the, the question or the goal that we set was not about forcing anybody, was not about race. What we said was that we asked the consultants to make recommendations to us how that new school in Norfolk Public Schools had a poverty level that was greater than the district average. That's, that was the question that was asked and where we started. Because the same question that you raised and the same responses that we got, we, we, we got those. You know, we can't do this, we can't do that, we can't force, we can't do so forth. And so as part of that analysis, we looked at portables and capacity and all this other kind of stuff. That was the, the, the initial goal. And it just got lost, in my opinion. And so if we're saying that we're okay with some schools being 90%, 99% free reduced lunch and other schools being 30%? And we're saying that that's a result of neighborhoods which we drew zones around? Then that's a conversation that the board can have and that's a decision that we, that we can make. But we were intentional about setting it around economic diversity because the data also for Norfolk Public Schools, if you look at the data that we looked at and if we ever look at it again, we saw a direct correlation between the concentration of poverty in our schools and student outcomes. And that's what we were trying to change.
Yes, but it goes back to the dollars and the cents. Because the data also will probably show that if you put the resources in place and you have highly qualified teachers, I don't care if you're 90% high reduced lunch, you can still have high performing and successful students.
Sure, but historically in Norfolk, we, 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 and across the country, everybody talks about that, yes, in theory, we can make that work. But in practice, it doesn't occur.
So this is where our strategic plan and everything else comes in. In this conversation, the commitment for where we're going. Because just like you're saying there, we all know, we, for those who've been here, some of these neighborhoods, you know, this, not fault of ours, it's just the historic nature of it. You're not going to be able to force and move some of those things around there. But if we can make sure that no matter where you are and it goes out to the community in Norfolk Public Schools, I don't care what neighborhood you land in, that we're going to provide you and afford you a high quality public education, that needs to be the focus and that'll be my focus pushing. And, and that's what we put out there.
Ms. Campson? This is a good discussion. I really, we need to make sure everyone gets it out.
So I'll just have a few quick remarks since this is getting so late. But I think first of all, you know, we have some, a lot of big problems that we need to, to solve. But I think that one of those problems isn't that we need to have a choice of putting our children in 21st century buildings and having high education, higher education. We cannot sacrifice either one of those sides. I, I think that that would be a tragedy because our children deserve to have a better school. And, and, and it's not always the building that they're in. I, I think that was something that probably Rodney was saying is, you know, but I think that, that if we're letting it go by and letting our schools continue to be sitting there crumbling away, half empty, that it will have a bad impact on our children and their families and keeping people in our schools. It's easy to say, do this and do that, and then you take your child in to have a walk around the school to see what it's like and it's falling apart. But it doesn't mean that because it's falling apart, it doesn't have a good program. And I think sometimes they are mixed together. The school that I had was a 1939 school. It was in the bottom five in the city. And a team of teachers and parents and everyone working together, it's always a team, it's not a single person, may, that school became one of the top schools in the state. And it was still a 1939 leaking, horrible falling down school. But that happened and it had, its racial balance was about the same because we were still busing in the M and M kids. We got two, two buses full. So we were equally, we were the perfect school to look at achievement gaps. Because we had an equal number in the low 40s of white children and in the low 40s of black children with some Hispanics and Asians mixed in. And so I don't think that it impacts either way. I just say that, I have a lot to say later, but I won't say it all today. But as I listen to everyone, and everyone on this board is very, very, very devoted to our children. We have a board of people who care about what we're doing. And what I would say is don't get distracted and, and, and leave our children in crumbling buildings because you think that you can't do any focus on that. That's two different things. Instruction, education, academics and facilities are over here. And you need both of them because you won't get the people, more people in, you're going to keep seeing this decline if they take their children into these falling apart schools. It makes a difference when you do that. And it doesn't give your students the ability to see what it would be like in a building that has all the things that you need. And we're in an inner-city school system. Nobody wants to fund us. You know, I, I, I never understand what is wrong with America that we don't put any more money and support for our schoolchildren. I, I'm at a loss as to why that happens. But I would just like to say, and I'll say all the things I think about the other ones later, is that don't feel like you have to sacrifice education for, for, for facilities or facilities for education, that they both are critical to. I mean, in, in the committee meeting this morning, I'm sitting there and looking at, what, 14, 17 trailers attached to one of our elementary schools? What's up with that? We, we're America and we have children going to school in trailers. It's not safe. If we want to talk about safe, how do you move a kindergartner who's out in some trailer somewhere and they have no restrooms in those trailers? You know, I mean, and how safe is that as they go from the trailer outside, outside into the school building? And first, how are they getting into the school building? Someone's giving them a key. And then they're going, could be raining, there could be a bad person there to snatch them. I, every time I thought about, and I only had two at my school, I hated having them. It's not fair. So anyway, I'd just like you to not take facilities and take student achievement and do this to them. We need to do both. And we need to move on this. We tend to move a little slow on decision making sometimes and, and the schools continue to rot and the parents continue to look for a new safe building for their child. You walk into some of these buildings, it's hard to feel safe if, you know, you don't have, there's no direct line from the front door to the office, all of the things that are for safety are very challenging to do in the older buildings because they didn't have crazy people running around shooting children. So just kind of keep those things and let's not turn facilities and student achievement into a battle. Let's do what we need to do for both for our children. They deserve both.
This goes back to the conversation and what we kept saying last month was around, I believe it was last month, about, around having schools that anyone would be proud to work in, learn in, you know, volunteer in, so on and so forth. And, and of course, we have to accomplish both in order for that to happen.
Well, I was talking to a gentleman who had come in years ago with two, two children. He was a single parent and he was looking for a public school that also worked with, he was a, you know, a military person and he needed to take care of his children. And he, they were like three and five, I think, when, when they came. And, and so he had, and he worked out in his mind just driving around that he saw a place that had, that here he works, here's daycare, and here is an elementary school, which was Willoughby. At that time, Willoughby was still an elementary school. And he said, and so he's, his two boys, one of them now, they came to our school and the reason they picked our school, even after looking at, and he said he was a little concerned about the condition of the school, but it worked for the, moving them in, you know, getting everyone in place together so he could come back and forth with them. And, and that child, and so that's how he ended up at Ocean View because it was the easier way to go. But it went so well and he moved his others in both, and one of them, he's in Virginia Tech and the other child is in Maury. And he said to me, he loves Maury, but I worry all the time that he's in there because it's so dangerous. And in his remarriage with the twins, his wife has made a decision not to come into Norfolk Public Schools where the two boys are, are finishing up because the condition of the schools is getting so bad. And that's a sad thing to happen.
Are you talking about Maury?
Maury, yeah, that's where his, his child is a senior this year and his child loves school.
Yeah.
But his parents, his, well, parents now have a concern about the condition and the exposure to all of the, the modern 21st century things that are expensive and are not always in the schools. So just, so if we could just separate the two and not, and, and then move more quickly, you know, we need to come up with some kind of plan, what we're going to do, whatever we decide, we need to make a decision and we need to move on it.
Yeah. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Oh, I do have a question.
Yes, I was waiting for that.
Looking at this future operational cost chart with, let's see, I think it's slides, let's see, no, I'm sorry, slide 15, under utilization and opportunity costs.
Yes, ma'am.
And spanning over elementary schools. So what I'm seeing, because I'm, I'm trying, I'm digesting, listening, so you're saying in 2022, we have 11 elementary schools that's under utilization?
What I, well, it's actually different. What this is saying is, according to this methodology, you could operate 11 less elementary schools.
Okay.
You could close 11 elementary schools.
Save a lot of money.
Still be at about 85% utilization for that grade level.
Now, with that said, is there a trend in Norfolk?
I'm sorry, that's me hitting this.
Of the schools that are showing below 85%?
There are pockets.
Pockets.
And that we have in the master plan presentation from June of 2021, time warp, where you can see that we have high constant, where the concentrations of low utilizations are geographically and that those correlate with high opt-out rates where parents live in that boundary but are opting out. And it appears that the high opt-out rates in low enrollment are feet off of each other when you look at historical enrollments.
Take a look at that presentation. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments?
Quickly.
I'll follow you. Go ahead.
One, Ms. Kanson mentioned the portables, one of the things that we.
Trailers?
Trailers, whatever you want to call them.
Call them what they are.
Learning cottages.
Learning cottages. One of the things that we asked the consultants to look at and the, and the school board said we wanted to occur was for them all to go away.
Yep.
We didn't, I don't think we took away maybe a couple when a school closed, okay?
I'd like to address that.
So, so I'm just saying that again, if we're going to have the discussion, because as you look at some of these historical patterns, we built cottages or whatever you call them, trailers.
Trailers. Say what it is.
We, we, we built them to align with these adult decisions, not necessarily children, child based decisions. The other thing is, I think we also have to be willing to, so Norfolk is a predominantly rental city. And often what you hear in the discussion is, is that people choose the houses that they buy based upon the school. So inherent in that in itself is a bias. Okay? So I'm saying, so as we're going to deal with these things, we really need to talk about choices that people are making and who do we value? So are we saying that we're valuing children whether in an owner household or renter household or when the political discussions get made and somebody comes out and says, I bought my house to be in a particular zone even though they opt out? You know? Those, those are some of those conversations and we have to talk about and the data we have to look at, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Dr. Birdsong.
I just wanted to share, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to share as it relates to Mr. Jordan's point about mobile units, Ms. Kanson.
Thank you for getting it correct.
So you'll know, the administration has been working very hard on that. In fact, if I would allow Mr. Fraley to do so, he would get rid of all of them tomorrow.
Yes.
And so, and so we, we do have a plan, but certainly there needs to be a transition because, you know, we've been building principles, we, we understand that those spaces may be used for small group tutoring or the parent engagement center or what have you. So it, it can't be something that's done overnight. We need to certainly let our building principals know if we're moving in that direction so that they can plan for a smooth transition from not having their mobile units. So we do have a plan and we're ready to execute.
Okay.
Student population in Norview.
10,000 of each of those trailers.
But you look at Norview Elementary, that is essentially more than half of the school.
Yeah, but we also need that space for children.
Yeah, but they could go across.
No, I understand that.
Or they could go across the street to Tanner's Creek, which is what, 300 kids short.
Redistricting.
There's a plan.
I mean, yeah, I think we need to redistrict.
I think you just said it, 11 this year.
All right. Dr. Kay, break up.
I will just say from anecdotal experience, having gone to Granby High School before it got renovated.
Oh, I worked there.
I, even though I knew that that building was old, I didn't feel it because I felt loved and cared for by the teachers who were teaching me. And the sense of student camaraderie and care that was there really surpassed the feelings that, you know, we had, the bathrooms did not work very well, so that was always an issue. But we had big bright windows and we had, I, I, that wasn't really something that I focused on, but I can see as a parent and how others would feel and especially having done multiple visits at Maury, you know, the, the safety concerns that are there. So I would say we can do both together, but from a student's perspective, just thinking back about myself and how I felt, it, it was definitely the caring and thoughtful attitude of the teachers and my colleague, my friends at that time that we, you know, that's what we felt as the priority. What were, what are going to be our next steps for this discussion?
Up to the board, that's, that's what.
If I may, like a proposal and that. So I, I'd like to pare it back, the non-negotiables that I heard from you. And my thought was, I, I take those and when ready for another conversation, that I, I have that come, have that conversation with you. We need to button up any particulars on this. But the non-negotiables that I heard, we're including academic data. We are maintaining a goal on deconcentrating poverty and increasing diversity. We are looking at configurations in some way. We are focused on the whole child and health impacts at all, not just bricks and sticks. We are analyzing in the data impacts on changes to our facilities, programs, enrollments in the past and those changes on outcomes that we can measure and using that in, in our planning. We are looking to maximize graduations on time, certifications and college career military readiness as, as a focal point. And we are not, we are looking at schools and programs and operations, not either or. It's, it's the capital and the operating.
Dr. Martin, can I, one thing that needs to be in, that I, that I didn't hear that I think is critically important is that we need to be working in collaboration step by step with the city in any planning. Because that will vastly affect anything that we put down on paper here, if they decide they want to tear down a community to build something else here, that all changes what we're doing. And I think that that's what some of those numbers are reflecting.
Thank you.
And, and it includes not just the building, but the fields.
Yep.
The tennis courts, the recreation aspect of it. If, if there's opportunities for us to do what happened at Crossroads where you have your community center, your gym and your school all together.
They all had such a nice big campus. Those are the schools that are doing well.
That is, to me, success, but definitely I don't want us to exclude the recreational aspect of it as well.
The site issues as well. Site security, site access, athletics.
And your, your promise to us was that you were going to consider if we make a recommendation, that you're going to embrace full, authentic, broad cross-section of the community engagement and feedback as part of this process.
Committed.
If we decide to go down.
Hundred percent committed. And I will say that the, the engagements to date have been authentic but insufficient.
Right, but we.
In my own admit.
But we, 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 we lost our broad cross-section of the community steering committee and their engagement and their role in helping to vet some of these things before they come to the board.
Yeah. And, and what, and just, I'm getting ahead of myself, but what I, I think logically to get on, back on the right foot, to get on a good footing, that we would probably start, and this is to be discussed with you all, with a significant amount of going to communities with data, with this kind of information, receiving feedback before re-engaging the steering committee. Because once, once re-engaging the steering committee, I want to re-engage them to respond to and work with real voluminous feedback from your community and then to inform the next steps of that. I want to get them back after having proved the medal, really done a lot of the work in listening, but absolutely include them in a, in a significant manner.
Okay. All right. We have our.
Thank you.
Our marching orders. So thank you.
Thank you.
Really, I, I like this presentation. I like the way you delivered it.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much, as always.
All right. Up next, we have our strategic plan, continuing the drive, updates. Dr. Birdsong?
Good evening, Dr. Paul.
Good evening.
All right, whenever you read, we lost a couple people. Um, go ahead.
All right. So the second quarter grades PowerPoint, if you would, right there, up one. Comfortable places. All right. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Ms. Buffalo, members of the board and Dr. Birdsong. I am here this evening to provide an update on second quarter grades, attendance and chronic absenteeism. This data will cover second quarter grades, attendance rates and trend data, rates by level and demographics, students who are at risk of being chronically absent and students who are already chronically absent. Starting with a high level overview of second semester grades, as seen on this graph, grades one and four have seen a slight uptick and they are above the rate from last year. Grades two, three, five, six, seven, eight and 11 are all below the rate from last year, while grades nine, 10 and 12 have seen the largest increases in the percentage of students failing two or more classes. Looking at the same data by demographics, the data stayed level from students with disabilities, decreased for Asian students and had increases with all other subgroups of students, with the largest increase in percentage of students failing two or more classes with the English learner student population. Included in the data uploaded on board docs is a report by grade level and demographics as well as by school for students failing two or more classes. This slide shows our attendance rates for elementary levels over the past three days, years, not days, sorry. These percentages represent the total days of attendance for all students divided by the total number of days possible. This rate averages all students together to get the average daily attendance. As seen on the data, every grade level has improved in average daily attendance as compared to last year and improvements from pre-pandemic rates are seen in first, third, fourth and fifth grades. Here is the same information for secondary grades. All grade levels except for ninth grade have seen improvements over last year. Additionally, grades seven, 10 and 11 have higher rates than pre-pandemic. This graph shows the differences in attendance rates by level and by demographics. As a reminder, this is not trend data, it is data through first semester by level and demographics. So the orange bars represent our elementary student, our, the darker orange is middle and the brown is high. This gives us comparison by level. This graph shows the percentage of students in each grade level that have exceeded a 10% absentee rate through quarter one with the orange bars and for the whole first semester for the red bars. For quarter one, students had to have missed four or more days and through quarter two, they had to have missed eight or more days for the, for up to this entire year. This data takes the attendance by student and does not average out all students' attendance. Therefore, in ninth grade, 31.2% of the students missed eight or more days each. The shaded areas are the bands for accreditation. Schools are at a level one if they're at or below 15% of their students are absent, 10% of the days for being chronically absent. Level two, if they're just above 15%, up to 25%. And level three, if they're higher than 25%. Included in. Included in Board Docs is a breakdown of this percentage by school. And although pre-K data is not part of school accreditation, the importance of tracking this data earlier so that we can reach out to parents and guardians earlier about the importance of school attendance is vital to, for future trends to improve. Because as you can see, pre-K and kindergarten have the highest chronic absentee rates. This is the same data broken down by demographics with our English learners, students with disabilities, and our socio-economically, um, students. And here is our racial demographics. And here we see data by grade level that represents students that are already chronically absent for the year, meaning they've already missed 17 or more days of school. All grade levels have seen decreases from this time last year except for grades seven, eight, nine, 10, and 12. And you'll see grade nine were over the 15% mark. Here's the same data broken down by demographics. And included in the presentation, as stated earlier, are the estimated chronic absentee rates by school up to this point, and with a comparison from the first quarter through second quarter, the students failing two or more classes by grade level and demographics, and the students failing two more classes by school. Thank you for allowing me to present this information, and I stand ready for questions.
Questions on attendance, grades, absenteeism? Mr. Clayton?
This just kind of correlates in this one, so the budget that we've got, um, that, that's been proposed. Dr. Birdsong, can you just remind me of the investments that we're making in personnel to support attendance?
Absolutely, so, um, we have a significant number of vacancies um in the air, in, in the area of attendance technicians. And so within the budget proposal, I'm proposing a significant salary increase so that we can attract, um, staff members to Norfolk Public Schools so that we can support this effort. So we need definitely personnel to help schools move this forward.
And the ratio on that, um, so these attendance technicians, is it one to one each school, or do they split between certain schools?
The high schools and the middle schools, I believe, have their own. And the elementary schools, I think, depending upon the size, they would have to share. They certainly wouldn't have a one to one.
Definitely. All right, thank you.
Ms. DeSain, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Dr. Paul, for the presentation. I have, um, some similar questions related to what Mr. Clayton just asked about, you know, investments um in these areas to support improvement in decreasing our chronic absenteeism as well as the academic performance of our students. Um, so in line with, you know, the attendance technicians that we have, um, you know, I also have a lot of questions as to, um, why our students are absent and the need for perhaps social workers and, you know, to work with our families. And I know the allocations for next year haven't changed in that regard. But do you find that increased allocations would help? In that, uh, in that case, to kind of work with our families, to identify reasons for absenteeism and to provide, you know, other supports that might be necessary?
Uh, that's a difficult, I, I mean, I, I think carte blanche, more positions would help with a lot of different, different areas. Um, I, I don't know off the top of my head, but I don't think we're fully staffed right now with the social worker positions that we have. So just adding staffing won't help. So one of the things that we have done was we've added funding for overtime hours for our social workers to help with this work, funding for our school counselors to help with this work. You know, funding in those areas where we may not have the full staffing right now, but what can we do to entice staff to, to work harder, which is harder and harder to go, you know, year after year?
Okay, because that's something I would like to look at. I know other districts have had success with using social workers to really get deep into the reasons why, um, that absenteeism is taking place and to work with families to provide those supports. So that's something I would encourage us to look at. And, and if we aren't filling those vacancies, um, to look at whether it's increased pay or increased, you know, what it might, what it would take to, to, to do that.
I might add something to what you just asked.
Oh, okay. Um, is something to look at, yeah.
So if, if you recall, last year I did increase, uh, the positions, um, in the area of social workers and school psychologists pretty significantly. And so we, we have looked at that in the past, and we are fully staffed with, with our social workers. And as you all know, you know, we have a limited pot of, of, of funding that, you know, and so my focus this year was definitely on compensation for our, our teachers and, and our staff. So, um, I do believe we're going in the right direction. Last year I did not, um, request an increase in the area of, uh, attendance technicians, and that's why I did so this year, because that certainly would support the efforts of, of what the social workers and school psychologists and building administrators and graduation coaches are doing right now.
Absolutely.
So I wish we did have an infinite pot, but we don't. And so every year I, I'm trying to be more and more strategic in with staffing.
Right, and I, I support the increased attendance technicians as well. But I, I, I just, going back and looking historically at the allocations of school psychologists, I know we had, for a very long time, had had 23, and then I know you had increased to 27, so there were those four additional positions. But, you know, I'd like to see, um, you know, us put, especially with, um, not only as it relates to chronic absenteeism, but the mental health needs of our students beyond, um, what I know our school psychologists are currently being used for right now in terms of child find and things like that, that, that we are, um, really prioritizing that. So, so that's, um, something I'm going to continue to advocate for. Um, the other, the other thing, um, is, you know, just resources, especially when I see it that ninth grade, you know, I mentioned this earlier, you know, I know we're all kind of concerned about that. But what, what, whatever resources, um, that we can put in place to, uh, you know, to, like, do all ninth graders right now have a seminar class like, like some of our programs do? Like a ninth grade seminar where they're like learning study habits or, um, learning the importance of being present at school? Or, um, you know, do, do all of our ninth graders have that opportunity?
There's nothing that's built into a class. However, what we started at the, really the beginning of this year was to do an advisory period with our high schools, and we, we piloted that where the advisory would be able to, would, would talk about, you know, what does it mean to be in high school, what, what about study habits? And kind of a quasi mentoring with our students?
Yeah, or even like more, um, what, let's say, relatable experiences like field trips or things like that are, you know, where they're really connecting to what they're learning. And so, you know, I just would really encourage us to think more outside the box of ways of keeping our students engaged and being at school. And I know you, these are probably all things that you're thinking about. But I really encourage, you know, the administration to come back to us and see, like, how can we support you either through budget, um, and resources, you know, to, to help move that along faster? Because for me, it's really disheartening. And when I see, um, you know, students, up to 40% of our students in some, in most, almost all of our high schools failing two or more classes, that's really, it's deeply concerning. Um, and even at our middle school and, um, some of our elementary schools, um, that's just, to me, it, it should be unacceptable to all of us. So I hold myself accountable and all of us accountable for that. And so I want to, I kind of, I'm pushing us to, to do something with greater urgency to, to address those issues. So, um, um, I'd like to see more around that. And then as far as investments go, um, again, with our students with disabilities, um, I know we have some investments with our English language learners that have been made, but can you speak to, uh, in the budget specifically with our students with disabilities, how we're further, uh, furthering, um, academic advancement for that subgroup?
Well, I, I think the bill, the budget is built around the, the kind of dichotomy of our, our learning support special education, where it's not just, there, there's no longer just a focus on compliance, although that's ultimately very important.
Right.
But Dr. Walter's done a magnificent job on this focus on instruction. And how are we supporting instruction more? So when we're at the data meetings, you know, um, you know, there's always a coordinator specialist with special education to talk about specially-designed instruction, instructional practice, um, and, and how are we supporting that more and more with our collaborative, um, teams in the classrooms as well? So the budget includes that professional development, includes all the ongoing work that, that we need to do to support, to support our teachers and our students ultimately.
I'm sorry, Dr. G, no, go ahead.
You, this, this won't be very long. From a policy perspective, uh, I truly appreciate all of that. We do as a division and as a board, I know that we firmly want to support families and give them the assistance that they need and help them, uh, when it comes to making sure that their children are in school and what support should they need. But what happens from, with our policy that we have? Do you feel like our policy is strong enough when we have, uh, parents or guardians who are not fulfilling their commitment to getting the children in school? And we've done all that we can to, to help them? Do we have the ability to hold parents accountable to make sure that their children are in school? Of course, once we've tried to help and work with them and, and find out limiting factors.
So I, I would say our policies are strong enough, they're, and they're in line with Virginia code. And one of the things that we've, we've really done this year, um, is division-wide had a focus on attendance. And there's a, a strong attendance committee. Uh, we actually partnered with a, a, a coach from VDOE on it as well. Um, we've partnered with, uh, city staff, um, to, to talk about if we have to do a CHIN petition and what, what kind of supports we need there. So I, I think we have the teeth behind it. Um, and, and I, I think we've done a really good job from the division level down to the school level at focusing on that data, um, the accountability of, you know, the, the contacts at the right days, um, and following through with it, and, um, and putting all those in place. You, you know, coming back this year after last year where it was a little.
Yeah.
You know, you know, it's just a lot looser because of the COVID illness. You know, we're tightening this year, and now being able to put those back in place, it's, it's a process. But I, I, the policy part, you asked, yes. We, we, we have strong enough policies and procedures.
Is there anything else that you need from, from us that would help? Is there anything missing from this equation?
Uh, you know, ask the city for about another billion dollars and find us some staffing, like the attendance test.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I think continued support, um, is, is, is what's needed.
So what is the message you're sending to parents and guardians?
Message around.
Like, is there intentional messaging to parents and guardians around, um, how important?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. They're beyond the, the, the letters that we send and the communication that we send home. There are, um, attendance campaigns going on right now, especially between the elementary schools. Hopefully you've seen it on social media.
The challenges.
That, you know, that are going on. And at the middle and the high school level, there are a lot of discussions around it. And it's not just about, oh, we brought a note in. There, there are calls being made, there's contact being made, there's discussions around why it's important to be in school. Because there's also a correlation between attendance and grades. Because if you're not in school, you can't learn as well. So, yeah, there's, there's, there are a lot of contacts being made right now and being documented as well.
And, and can you talk about absenteeism and this, with students who are attending virtually?
So it, the, the, the attendance rate for our virtual schools with Virtual Virginia is, is, is pretty strong, honestly.
Okay.
So we, we don't see the same issues because we have also a lot fewer students in our virtual academy this year.
Okay, that's interesting. Any other?
Don't forget, we were very selective in, in, in looking at the children who should, who would best.
Correct.
Their needs would best be met in this program. If they had attendance issues.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, they, you know.
Okay.
They weren't recommended, recommended for enrollment.
And, and on, on that as well, quarterly, um, Dr. Edwards, our, our senior coordinator for virtual learning and instructional technology, you know, more weekly, he meets with Virtual Virginia and talks through it, and he works with parents on a regular basis, but quarterly they review contracts. And we've actually moved students from virtual to in-person because of attendance or grades to make sure they have the supports they need in place.
Go ahead, Ms. Buffalo.
Hello, Dr. Paul.
Good afternoon.
Um, if, I'm interested to know of these, of students failing two or more classes by demographics, how discipline plays into this? And, um, with that said, with attendance and, um, infractions and being, um, attending Madison, how many kids are actually showing up and, and, um, not reporting to school? Um, so I'm interested in the future to see a disciplined presentation on infractions and, um, because I think there is some kind of correlation with, you know, students failing two or more classes, especially when I look at the ninth graders. So I would like to see that in the future, to see how that all ties together. Attendance and, um, students failing two or more classes, how discipline plays into that.
Dr. Martin?
Yes?
Ju- just an observation, um, on the chronically absent report, again, this is just one year, so I don't know if it's a trend across years. Our citywide specialty, uh, program, one citywide specialty program, uh, was green in both quarters. Uh, citywide specialty magnet program, Rosemont, was green in both quarters. Our citywide K-8 was green in both quarters. And one of our, I would call it a military-involved, uh, specialty local elementary school was green in, uh, both quarters. So as we were talking about some of the things with educational planning and, and what works, these are the types of things I think we also should, should consider. That at least on our, in the case where we have, uh, no attendant zone, schools, uh, each and every one of them, uh, have green attendance as parents choose, uh, those schools for their, for their children.
Why do you think that is?
For the, the reason why the citywide, I think.
Engage, engage parents.
It was a choice academy, a choice program for them.
It's probably a standard, a criteria.
Right, and there's some application in there as well.
It's a culture.
That's right. The expectation.
Parents are held accountable.
They even get there.
Yeah.
They're even, very engaged.
Correct.
I don't know how accountable parents are held, but I do know that in those, in that case, you apply.
Yeah.
You apply. And so that in and of itself involves a parent decision.
Okay. All right, thank you, Dr. Paul.
My pleasure. I have more to go.
Yes.
You don't kick me that easy.
No, I'm not kicking you out. You can move on, though.
And the, uh, the, through the bottom one, yes, thank you. Good afternoon again, everybody.
Good evening.
Is it easing already? Oh, it is.
Dark hour. Talk fast.
Okay, this evening I'll be sharing data now on the fall and winter video through-course assessment. So this is one of the first times you guys have seen the data or heard of the through-course assessment. So in, in 2021, the General Assembly required the implementation of a through-course assessment in reading and mathematics in grades three through eight. Last year was the first year of implementation with only the fall and spring assessments, and this year was the first full year with all three assessments in place, including the winter. The assessments are given three times a year, fall, winter, and the final being the SOL test in the spring. All assessments are reported with a vertical scale score. However, pass/fail scores are only provided with the spring SOL test. Both the fall and winter assessments are shorter in length than the spring SOL tests. Additionally, these assessments are adaptive both above and below grade level based off how students answer current grade level questions as they go through the assessment. So the vertical, vertical scale scores allow for a comparison of scores across years and will be used to measure student growth along the scale. The minimum score is 900, and the maximum score is 2,000. The bars on this slide show a visual representation of an estimated scale score range for each grade level from third to eighth grade. Notice how the expectation is for students to earn higher scaled scores as they advanced grade level. As an example, if a student scored a scale score of 1401 on their reading-through test and they're in third grade, they would fall directly in the center of the range. If they were a fourth-grade student, they would be at the bottom of the range, needing more supports. And if they were above fourth grade, they'd be below the range, needing intensive support. Another example would be a student who scored 1551 on their mathematics-through test. Another example would be a student who scored 1551 on their mathematics through test. They would be at the top of the range for grade six, mid-range for grade seven, and near the bottom of the range for grade eight. As of now, the VDOE has not released the calculations for winter assessment ranges. However, on this slide, the quartile ranges for the fall assessment are displayed. Range one scores are the lowest 25%. Range two are students above the lowest 25%, but below the top 50%. Range three are students above the lowest 50%, but below the top 25%. And range four students are in the top 25%. The ranges in the quartiles below are not fixed and do not represent ranges required to make growth towards accreditation. They only represent how all students in the state scored on the season's growth test Now let's look at some reading data for the through-year growth assessment from fall to winter. This slide contains a lot of data, I'm willing to say. It is from each grade level assessed, including a breakdown of demographic data with the dots that you see, and the data point for the all-students median score across the Commonwealth for the fall window. They have not released data for the winter assessments as of this time. So the gray score for the fall window represent the median scores for the state and the orange scores represent the median scores for Norfolk Public Schools. When reviewing the data, it's evident that all grade levels saw growth from the fall, with third grade showing the highest levels of growth. In grades three, four, five, and six and eight, the scores follow the same type of step increases that we saw on the slide that showed the vertical scale score model. However, grade seven is a step below where it should be, and the gap between the state and Norfolk is the largest. Let's look at the same kind of data for mathematics. Similar to the reading, all the grade levels saw growth from the fall to the spring, with grade three seeing the highest levels of growth. The fall Norfolk Public Schools median math scores are closer to the state median scores than reading. All of our gaps are, are closer here in mathematics. Additionally, grade seven scores are slightly lower than the other grade levels as they were with the reading, they're a step down a little bit. And at this point, VDOE has not released information on the ranges for the quartiles for the winter assessment, nor have they released median scores across the Commonwealth. There's also no indication as to what signifies achieving growth levels or pass levels for the spring SOL tests. It's really just a comparison of our internal data. However, what these administrations do provide is a great deal of data, all the way down to the classroom and student level. As was done in the fall, the ARA team has developed a winter companion document and provided it to all teachers. This document provides growth charts over time for at the school and test level, including dot charts similar to those presented tonight, and including in the data packets for this presentation. The data also provides student detail by question reports at the school and test level, including student groups and teacher levels. Additionally, sparkline charts have been provided by student for teacher. These charts, that some in our division call sparkle charts, give a student, give a by student trend data of the virtual scaled scores over time. Beyond just providing the data, ARA has held and continues to hold professional development sessions at schools to provide guidance on how to best use this data to inform instructional practice and to differentiate based on student needs. ARA has also continued to meet with CNI to discuss schools by grade level that are below benchmark and did not achieve expected growth as averaged across the division. This allows our central office team members to refocus supports mid-year, not only by school, but by grade level and by teacher within each school. Included in your data packets for this presentation are the dot charts for each school broken down by grade level and demographics, and the tables that show the numerical values that represent, that are represented in the dot charts. Thanks for allowing me to present this data to you tonight, and thank you to Ms. McGarrett and her team for assisting with the development of the presentation and the tremendous amount of data work her and her team provide. We stand ready to answer questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Dr. Gabriel?
Thank you. So this is the first year that these exams have been given to our students?
The winter. They, last year, they did fall and spring, but this year, they did all three for the first time.
Okay. So now we have, for this particular school year, they have done a fall assessment and they have done a winter assessment. And, and the booklet that you have provided is showing teachers how they can kind of use the data that they've received in order to kind of glean any information from it, whether that be student growth, interventions needed, because this data is relatively new. We don't have a whole lot of trend data yet.
Correct.
And then, and then have you, I, I guess, now that, that we'll complete one full cycle this year, you'll be able to look at, I guess, grouped, like a third grader who has gone to fourth grade to see how they've made advancements?
Well, yeah, we'll start tracking, we'll be able to start tracking some cohort data.
Okay.
One of the things, things Ms. McGarrett and I talked about was tracking students who show growth to make sure they continue to show growth and they don't flatline or fall down.
And with these, these growth assessments, we layer that with our STAR?
So we do, and we're finding there's a, a pretty high correlation.
Okay.
And it's, it's becoming almost a repetitive assessment.
Okay.
Since the, when the state mandated this, we talked as a team about STAR assessments and the possibility of taking an assessment off the plate of our students. So STAR would be the one most likely next year, we're looking at keeping STAR for second grade, but third through eighth, we're not seeing a need to have STAR because, as you know, the growth assessments are made by the VDOE, directly correlated to our SOL. So we, we're, we're getting stronger data from the growth assessments based on what standards they understand or doubt.
Thank you.
Ms. Bessine?
Well, thank you for that. So that was one, one thing, well, two things I was going to ask, because, you know, I always ask about the cohort data and being able to kind of follow that and track that and how that might look with these through tests, whether you would look at it in the quartiles, like see how they're moving from one quartile to the next or by grade level. So that would be a couple of different ways I could see you looking at that.
Correct.
Which would be interesting to see. The other thing is, so to that point, I just wanted to share some feedback. So that's, I'm glad to hear that the STAR data seems to highly correlate with, with this. Because one piece of feedback that I have, feel like I've been consistently getting from our teachers is that the, the number of assessments is high and that the, the focus on really authentically teaching seems to be diminished because there's this focus on testing, testing, testing. And I think parents are also feeling, feeling that as well. So whatever assessments that don't seem to be providing a benefit for our students or our teachers, you know, I'd like to see us reduce those that aren't having a positive.
And we, we do look at that on a regular basis. And we knew, we knew going into this year with the, the, the fall, winter, and spring through assessments, that this would be the one double up year to have the STAR and the through assessments, that, that most likely the STAR would be the one to go, because we have to do through and it's giving us great data. So the STAR will be, I won't, I won't say definitively, but most likely coming off the plates next year for three through eight.
I've had, yeah. Well, that's good to hear. I'll just say that it seems to be playing somewhat of a role in retention efforts with some of our teachers. So, so I just wanted to, to advocate and share that feedback with you. But I appreciate this information and look forward to the spring results.
Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
On slide six, just wanting to clarify, the, did you say that we don't have the statewide data for winter?
Correct. They haven't released it yet.
They haven't, they haven't released it yet. And then, is there a, an internal SMART goal around our reading performance in comparison to the state, for example?
So when it, when it comes to here, it's difficult to make one since we don't, we really don't know.
I mean, anything in reading.
Right?
I mean, reading in general, do we?
Reading in general, I mean, our, our, our goal is, is still SOL pass rate based and, and, and one of the main ones is on grade level by third grade. What you'll see with the STAR data, and even here, you see the, when you look at our third graders here, the growth they saw and how they had, I think that, I can't read it from here, but I'm pretty sure they had the tightest gap between being closest to the state average already. So our early literacy is really working on that to, to create a long-term literacy goal in Norfolk Public Schools.
Yeah, that, I guess that's what I'd just like to get a sense of, if, whatever, whatever the data is showing us, like, are we saying by, in three years, we want to see the Norfolk Public Schools' performance against the state to have no gap? Whatever, whatever it is?
Right.
Do we have something like that?
And we're, we're getting there, we just don't have it for the fall and winter assessments yet. But like, we have, you know, with the goals that we have set for the spring, for improvement.
Okay. Do you, can you, can you tell me, like, oh, you have to do it now, but can you, like, share with us an example of what that looks like?
Well, I, yeah, again, I think the biggest one would be in the strategic plan with the on-grade level by third grade. And that'll start to use the fall through assessment so that when they get to third grade, their on-grade level, not by the end of third grade, so that we know our pre-K, K one and two programs are strong enough to set our third graders up for success.
But it's not, it's not time, I, I can't remember, is it?
It's time, yeah. It's a SMART goal.
I'll go back and get it.
Go ahead, Ms. Bessine.
I just have one question, because I, as you mentioned, I think I recall this with the fall data, there was some delay with the state. So are you, are you seeing that again with the winter? And what was, can you?
Yeah, so we still, we, yeah, we still actually don't have the fall data we would need to know if our students were on grade level then or not.
Oh.
All we have, all they've released is the median score. So that's all we have to go off of right now, which is why we haven't been able to revisit that. And don't think I don't lose sleep over at night, because it's the one table we haven't done yet for the strategic plan, is on grade level by third grade.
I was going to ask.
Because we don't have the data from the state yet. They kept saying they were going to get it to us, but now they're saying it might be the fall before we have it again.
Really?
Because, well, they need to do a lot of norming to the data and they need to make sure they're giving the right data out. It's just taking more time. So next year, we should be able to report that data point.
Okay. But you mean, you mean in the fall for, for when we're doing the next?
So it was, so, so the, the.
Graduated by.
Right now, according to the timeline right now, the goal would be for us in the fall when we do the fall through assessment.
Yeah.
We should have a number from the state at that point to be able to say if our students were considered on grade level for that point or below grade level for that point. That's.
When they took it that last fall?
No, 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 for when they take it next fall.
Okay.
They'll have the number, because they'll have the whole year's data, so they'll be able to project it for next fall.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so we'll be on point next year for the data year.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Canton.
Okay. So if we're not getting back information from the state forever and ever, which is typical forever and ever, so that you don't have the hard data that you need in the fall and in the winter, so you don't have that, why are we letting STAR go, which gives us all that data and, by your own words, is heavily aligned? And I knew this because I tested it, developed it myself, that the tight match.
Because next year, we'll have the data.
Yeah.
Next year, it'll be.
But how does that help, help us this year?
Well, we were still doing STAR this year.
Yeah. All right. And so next year, you'll have something besides the state to rely on?
No, well, next year, we'll have the state data and we have to do, the state tests are mandated and they're giving us, they're giving us the same data the STAR assessment's giving us.
Right. But how long of a gap do you have STAR? You can sit the same day you gave the test.
We can, we get our data pretty quickly on this. It's just getting the state level data. Well, next year, we'll trend a little bit behind, but not that far.
So you are with your other, with your, whatever you're putting in, you get immediate feedback for the children so you can do your turnaround intervention groups?
Absolutely, we do.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we get, we get, sorry, we get that data right away. We just don't get the, the comparison to state level data, like state average and state medians, but we get our internal data.
Right there. So you're able to meet on a Friday after you've assessed kids and put them in a new intervention group on Monday?
Absolutely. And the ARA team has been going to schools and principals have been knocking their door down about data, about data, about data, and about presenting it and doing professional development. So it's great.
Well taught. That's what they're supposed to be begging and forcing it out.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, because I was feeling a little frantic there when, when I was hearing no data back.
You were looking back into it.
Yeah, I was starting to get dozed over here until I heard this thing about.
I noticed the hand was like this earlier, but this time it was like this. So it was, it was pretty important.
Because you were waking me up when you were making it sound like that, that our kids weren't going to have any immediate feedback and immediate intervention.
And Ms. Canton, would I let go of data?
Well, I was thinking that you were, and I was starting to panic, because you know, I wouldn't let go of it. Okay, thank you.
Chain don't slip.
Thank you.
Great that we're telling her about STAR right now, because then next year, we're prepping her.
I'll try not to cry. Because, but we really. You have no idea the war I put on.
It was your baby. No, I know.
And to get it going, because so many people weren't supporting it. What, that last semester, that's what, the whole work I did was to get that mandatory. If you found something else, I'm willing to give it a chance.
And we've got to decrease the number of assessments. We have to.
Oh, uh-huh. We need to decrease a lot of STARS.
Yeah. Yes, yes, yes.
All right. One more, Ms. Tanner.
Oh, there's another.
Yeah, we're a little behind, we need to catch up.
Sorry. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go really fast. How about that?
Oh, I'm not even looking if it starts, it's already out the door anyway.
Do it in your auctioneer voice.
All right, it's top, there, right there, you go. All right, so good afternoon, I'll skip the pleasantries. And we're going to start with reading data tonight. And this first set of data that you don't quite see yet, it's the participation rates. And when it comes up on the screen, you see that all of our elementary grades and subgroups are over 96% and with the majority of subgroups over 96% as well, or 95%. And while all the middle school grades are the majority of students, as well as all the subgroups, are over 86%. So it's, it's trending typical to how we have it. Our, our middle schools have a lower rate of, of completion on the, on the winter STAR assessment. This data shows the performance from the fall to the winter assessment windows. And there, I, I really want to point out the strong gains in grades two through four. And there are some small gains in grade five and slight declines in grade six. And then we see some concerns, just a little bit of a drop in grades seven and eight with the urgent change. And also in grades six, seven, eight, we do see, we still have over a third of our students in the urgent intervention. So that, that's a highlighted concern for us as well. That's what the red shade in the urgent intervention column means. But I also want to point out, the data's not included on a slide, but our students in reading did slightly better this winter than last winter. So not only did we see a slight better in, in, in scoring from the winter to winter, but we're also seeing high levels of growth. And the levels of growth in reading are slightly higher than they were last year. So we're on a better tra, trace and pack, path than we were last year with our STAR reading data.
Your rate of accelerated reading growth is higher this year than last year.
That's what we're seeing right now. And, and, in the, in the lower level grades right now, we are. So something new that we're reporting this year is cohort data, Ms. Bessine. Something new we're reporting is the cohort data from fall to winter, following the students who took both assessments. So they had to have taken the fall and the winter assessment. And we're looking at the data across assessments for the benchmarks that were compared. First, to review how many students remained at the at or above level, and then second, how many moved up from the urgent intervention, intervention level. So here we see for our reading, within these cohorts, remember, the numbers are going to be lower than the testers across because they had to take both assessments. But this data shows us that in grade two, we had the highest percentage where 93% stayed above, stayed in the at or above level. And you remember, it gets harder to stay at that level from the fall to the winter assessment. And the lowest was grade six at 72% that stayed in the at or above level. This one is looking at the end ranges of grade, looking at the end of, of the ranges. And grade five had the highest percentage of students to move up from the urgent, urgent intervention, with 28% moved up and out of urgent intervention. And grade seven had the lowest amount with 19.7. But do notice that we had nearly 20% or higher in all of our groups to move up and out of the urgent intervention, intervention from the fall to the winter test. A couple of highlights from the reading data include all division-wide subgroups in grades two and three showed growth in the at or above range and declines in the urgent intervention. 37% of grade two students are in the urgent intervention range, so that's a little bit of a concern for grade two. Nearly all subgroups in grade four showed growth in the at or above range and declines in the urgent, urgent intervention, so that's great. Then, 5th grade students showed minor changes with English learners and students with disabilities. Having over half the urgent intervention range in grades 6 and 7 and 8 have the most students in urgent intervention, as we talked about earlier. So, some implications from the reading data continue to derive supports across the division. Supports that will be continued and strengthened are focused on professional development on upcoming content and interventions. Continued support to teachers with planning for explicit instruction to include phonemic awareness and systemic phonics for grades K through 2 and text annotation for grades 3 through 12. Additionally, professional development activities will continue for long-term substitute teachers, collaborative teachers and our NPS tutors, as well as university instructors. Supports being implemented include feedback and professional development for PALS early literacy tutors on effective instructional routines, collaboration with ARA to provide professional learning to literacy leaders to create database intervention plans, and collaboration with instructional teams to map human resources and identify curriculum resources to support intervention routines. The mid-year data will also be used to adjust pacing and instructional time in grades 6 through 8 to include new instruction and response to intervention weaved in, to identify and create aligned resources, to use and create complex curricular activities that support higher levels of engagement and professional learning on phonics routines. Mathematics, here is our participation rates and a little bit better than our reading participation when we get to the middle school level. And then, when looking at data from the fall to the winter, I want you to look at those scores in grades 2 and 3, those double-digit moves in at or above. Again, grades 2 through 5 saw high levels of growth in both the at or above and improvements in the urgent intervention. And grades 6 and 7 saw improvements in the at or above category. And grade 8 saw declines in both of the areas. And again, with math, we were, the gap was higher from winter to winter, so we improved more in math. And our improvement from fall to winter was also higher. So, we're seeing, we're realizing larger gains in mathematics right now. And again, we knew coming back from the pandemic that that math is really an in-person class. And seeing this second year in a row, we're starting to realize some of that, that growth back. So, here, just like we did for reading, this is the data, the percentage of students that remained within the at or above benchmark. Grade 3 had the highest percentage at 91%, and grade 8, the lowest at 57%. And this slide shows the percentage of students who moved out of the urgent intervention category from the fall to winter. Grades 2 and 3 tied for the highest percentage at 44.5% that moved up out of the urgent intervention. So, almost 50% of our students who scored in the urgent intervention for grades 2 or 3 were moved up and out from the fall to the winter. And grade 6 had the lowest at 21.6. And again, all of the cohorts saw realized higher than 20% growth out of urgent intervention from the fall to the winter. Here, a few highlights are all division-wide subgroups in grades 2 through 5 showed growth in the at or above range and declines in the urgent eventual range, with the exception of Asian students in grades 2 or 3, and that's because it's a very small population in those grades. Additionally, grades 3 and 4 have more than 50% of students in the at or above range. Slightly more than 1/3 of the students in grades 6 through 8 are in the urgent intervention range, with the highest subgroups being students with disabilities following, followed by English learner students. And for grades 6 through 8, grade 6 showed the most increases in the at or above range, while grade 8 had declines in the at or above range for every subgroup. So, based on that information, there are some implications to the mathematics data as well. The supports that will be continued and strengthened include professional learning on upcoming content, interventions on using strategies from the What Works Clearinghouse to plan for explicit instruction, using the concrete representation abstract framework, using discourse with an emphasis on math vocabulary and support problem solving. The push for improved small group instruction will also continue with more assistance on using data to inform the flexible grouping in elementary classes and improving implementation of small group instruction across middle school classes and support blocks. Supports being implemented include facilitating division-wide professional learning communities to support concepts identified through mid-year data, using TestNAV to practice online assessments, and the application of mathematical concepts and technology-enhanced items, small group intervention for students in the bottom two score bands, using data to offer building and grade-level supports to include adjusting pacing and identifying and create aligned resources to address the higher need standards. And ongoing professional development will also be provided on interventions for mathematics instruction. Detailed reports have been shared with principals by grade level, test and subgroup. Also included in the board docs documents for STAR are the division by grade level data and the division by school report. Additionally, central administration is focusing on tiered supports based off winter data from both the STAR assessment and the SOL-through test, focusing by school, by grade level, by teacher with data that showed below benchmark results and below expected growth from the fall to the winter assessment. By placing these additional supports in these schools and classrooms, we're supporting students with the highest needs. I'd like to thank you again for allowing me to present the STAR data, and I stand ready for questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions on STAR data? Ms. Basine?
Mr. Jordan, you go next. I feel like I've talked a lot, go ahead.
No, I'm not, just, just looking at the, some of the school-by-school data. You know, at some middle schools, I'm looking at the reading. You know, all 6, 7th and 8th grade in urgent, and then 9th grade at some of the high schools. I guess my question is, I saw what you were identifying in terms of what you're doing, but can you describe, you know, in some instances where it's 40% and in at least one case upwards to 87% of 7th graders at a middle school in the urgent category? What is being done kind of specifically to those schools that have large numbers of students at a campus in the urgent category?
So, we're resetting supports, division-wide, as far as our central supports. And by looking at this data and knowing which classrooms we may need to be in more often to coach teachers and to support student growth and student learning, we're still working with our partnership with university instructors to possibly increase the numbers in some of those schools for some more small group tutoring. We're working with FEV Tutor to do some one-on-one tutoring and support blocks in all of our middle schools so that students during the support block now only get small group rotations, but they have a 45-minute chunk of one-on-one instruction with a content expert to really build up those supports for our students.
So, one of the things, you know, going back to the educational planning piece, and we were looking at poverty pathways. So, when I look at a middle school that has 3 out of 4 students in the urgent category for reading in the second, in the winter area, and then just on quick glance, look at the schools that are feeding into that middle school. Are you all, what are you, what are you looking at in terms of supports that are going on, some of our current pathways?
So, the same thing, we're really following the data on how we do the support. So, if schools have higher needs, they're getting, they're getting more support. Centrally, they're getting more support financially through the additional tutors. Some of these pathways are, of course, some Title I schools, so they get additional supports through Title I and some more, you know, coaching and instructional support for principals as well. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Basine.
So, so my questions were very similar because I too had had questions. You know, I saw the overall report in the presentation, but of course, you know, the school-by-school, I wanted to have some greater discussion around investments in the schools where we're seeing the, these, you know, high percentage of students in the urgent categories. And when I look back at the data around, you know, our schools where we do have high teacher vacancies and even in vacancies in content area, there's a direct like correlation in a lot of these schools. And so, while we're also talking about the budget, I know we have the IGNITE program being piloted at Lindenwood, but one of the things I'd really like to see is more of that and more instructional coaching happening in several of these other schools where we're seeing these big percentages of students that are in urgent need of attention. And I'd like to hear more about some of the rationale on why we don't have more instructional coaching just based on the, the support position, the school-by-school support position map that we had. And I might be reading it incorrectly, but if you could speak more about, I know you just mentioned with Mr. Jordan's question that there is some instructional coaching happening, but what that actually looks like and what other supports that we can help support the administration for our schools.
So, I think, I think a few years ago, when the board supported the addition of the 12 instructional coaches, and then when those weren't fulfilled, when the board supported the Grow Your Own programs, and then we were able to fill those, and we still have some, some that completed the program that aren't staffed yet because there, when there were openings, it was the middle of the year, we couldn't pull them from a classroom. So, you know, there is a lot of coaching going on. There's a tremendous amount of coaching going on and more so in our schools of higher need because they have more staffing for the coaching. One of the things that Dr. Seda worked with the principals on was adding, making sure we had a Title I teacher in every school that was there to support and coach, in addition to the instructional coach in there, in addition to the reading specialists there, in addition to the math specialists there. We've also been working with principals directly and some of their admin team on how do you, how do you best coach students in, to get the best academic performance, or coach teachers rather, to get the best academic performance. So, we do have several of those going on. I think, again, the continued support and the, again, the, the focus on pay raises this year to help fill those vacant staffing positions. I think that's, that's the support that we need.
Is the pay rate? Do you think, like, I guess this is more for the board, you know, I'd like to see some more incentives for those hard-to-staff positions or the hard-to-staff schools and the hard-to-staff content areas? Because, you know, especially those grade 1, grade 2, in some of our schools that are being reflected here that we see maybe 3 vacancies at grade 1, grade 2, I think are impacting some of our, especially with the literacy results. I'd like to see more incentives around that in the budget. And I don't know when we're going to have more budget discussion, but that's one of the things that I'd like for us to talk more about. But I appreciate, I appreciate the feedback, the information you just provided. That makes me feel like, you know, I understand a little better about the level of coaching that's happening in the school, so I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you want to say anything about how we kind of started this discussion, was it last month or the month before, about we're going to have the discussion around, and you'll get some recommendations possibly on the hard-to-staff schools and how those are going to be, you know, some incentives and things different?
We presented that with our IGNITE program, yeah.
I heard that at the workshop, yeah.
Yeah, we did, we did.
All right, thank you very much.
My pleasure, thank you, everybody, have a good evening.
Thank you, everyone, you too. And up next, we have the matters of the board, discussion of the use of matters of the board. I've been asked for a while to put this on the agenda. And so, this comes from our board members, and discussion of the board is, discussion, matters of the board is nothing new, obviously. And it's been used in a few different ways. And so, it's a way for us each to have an opportunity to report on something. It's been used like in different ways. So, anyway, so this is an opportunity to really talk about, do we want it, where do we want it? Do we want it in work session or business session? Do we want it, how do we want to structure it? Do we want to leave it wide open, or do we want to tailor it to certain topics? The floor is open. Any thoughts on this, or would you like to table it and then we can?
I mean, I personally, I know, I've been one of the board members that have advocated to have it come back. And I, I understand some of the concern about it being used for, you know, you know, spending too much time to talk about a particular issue or things. But I think once we have our monitoring calendar that clearly spells out, you know, when we're talking about specific topics, it should really minimize, you know, the data requests or agenda requests, agenda item requests. But there are instances where I think we need to have that opportunity to also share ideas and feedback that we receive from the community or ideas that we have about initiatives or things that we would like to see the board engage in. And I think, or, or new policies that we might want to introduce to the board. It's, I think it's been effective in the past when used appropriately. And as long as there's been a monitoring calendar that clearly, you know, spells out what's coming next, I think it can be beneficial.
Yeah, what I don't want to see happen, and what has happened in the past is, this ties to that parking lot conversation too that we're going to get into more, is that we end up with a long list of these items that we never really get to. So, I think that, you know, once we get through this, that's the next step is, okay, so how do we make sure that we're checking them off?
Right, and if we have that monitoring calendar, I think that will minimize it being used for that reason. But that's, you know, I look forward to getting to that point.
Any other comments? Go ahead.
Well, I'd just like to say that we keep in mind, if we go into that with that long list, is that our focus is supposed to be on students, on students, on students. We don't need, if we get too much conversation going, we're not really often talking about the students. So, that would just be one thought I'd like, as we start developing that, that we want to keep the focus on the kids.
Just in the, the task that Dr. Birdsong, Mr. Clanton and I have around our homework related to process timeline for data and information requests and so forth, there are some draft suggestions dealing with how matters of the board could be dealt with. And so, I just want to mention that because since we're gonna, we didn't, we didn't pick our date yet. But since we're going to complete that assignment, I know that there's some recommendations within that assignment that we would eventually be sending to the board for, for consideration.
In April? What date was that?
For our April meeting.
Is it April?
For the, for the, for the April meeting, but I, you know, and I don't, I don't want to get ahead of what may come out of our group, but I can tell you my personal view is, is that kind of what is being modeled for us in the governance training, that we use matters of the board to recap what we've done, be clear on what our next action steps are, and being able to share good news and go home. You know, something in that, in that context, not.
Yeah. Yeah, that sounds good.
You know.
All right, did you have something?
No, I would agree with that because I, I've just seen matters of the board mean all different types of things. And what I don't want it to be is an exhaustive wish list that has not been brought up through consensus through the board and has, and, you know, with the monitoring calendar that we do have with the strategic plan, that will give us a lot of guidance. I'm sure that there are going to be things that come up that we can, you know, again, build some consensus around if it needs to be brought to the level of a full, you know, board presentation. But I would support that as, you know, what were our action items, what glows and, as you said.
Glows and gross.
Yeah, next steps, mm-hmm, very brief.
Do you have anything to add?
With everything Lauren said, Noel said, Hanya said and Rodney said, all wrapped up. Everyone, I agree with it all.
Just put a nice bow on it, gift to you.
All right, all right. All right, thank you, everyone, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the brevity of that conversation. So, we'll, we'll continue this, obviously, with governance training. All right, up next, we have citizens' comments on the superintendent's operating budget proposal for the fiscal year 2024, which is school year 2324. Ms. Tanner, has anyone signed up for public comment? Okay, all right.
Have a comment.
Oh, okay.
So, my anticipation based upon what we discussed before is that I thought we were going to spend time today on the board, on the board, working on the budget. So, we have a meeting on the?
15th.
15th. What's, what's the current conversation around when the board is going to be able to have a discussion around the board's budget moving towards adoption?
We're supposed to vote on it on the 15th at our business meeting.
Well, we, I mean, that's the projected.
Right, that's what's currently on the timeline.
Right, but we don't have any, we haven't had, in my view.
Oh, are you talking about just the board's budget?
No, 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 no.
Okay, so, I'm just making sure I'm getting.
Superintendent proposes a budget, the board has the.
Superintendent proposes a budget, the board has discussions, so the board should have an opportunity to discuss the, the budget, if there are some things we like to add or modify or whatever it is that's within our responsibility as a board.
Okay.
We need to have a conversation.
Because we did have, we did have the, the questions submitted.
Two big discussion groups, was it?
And so, do you have more questions, more changes?
Recommendations.
Recommendations? So, we could go through that process again and then have a discussion on the fifteenth, but we'd be voting on the fifteenth as well? Or do you have any recommendation that you'd like to make?
Well, I mean, I don't know. We could vote on the twenty-ninth. I'm just saying that in terms of the, the scheduling, I thought that's what we were going to do today. So, if, if the process is to submit recommendations, I can, I'll write them up and submit them, but what I don't want to happen is we just come to the meeting and say, get a motion to support the budget as is, and then there's no process for us to, to, to deal with whatever we decide, so. So, I just need you all to think about it and get back, you know, let us know.
So, I would definitely say if you have some thoughts, to email them out, if you want to email them, but I don't know that, we're, we had a timeline of the fifteenth.
Right.
To vote on it.
Right. But the timeline that we discussed was for us to be able to talk about it today. We didn't do that, so that's what I'm saying. So, we, we skipped that meeting.
Right. The timeline had a work session to, a board work session on the budget for today. So, that's why when I emailed you, yeah, we, it was, it was always on the.
Speakers.
Um, today was the public hearing day.
No, we did public hearing at the last meeting.
We were going to have another one today. I was confused about trying to look at the timeline.
I'm not, I'm not talking about the original proposed timeline.
Okay.
February, whatever it was, when I was making the recommendations that, that no one objected to in terms of the public comment and having a meeting for the board to address the budget. That's why we did the public comment last meeting, I think it was.
Yeah, we did it last, last business meeting.
And so, we added an additional public comment for tonight, but we didn't deal with the, the budget piece. Anyway, I'm, I'll do it this way. I'm going, I have recommendations.
What are you, yes, please.
I have recommendations that I would like to be considered, and I will submit those recommendations in writing, and then I would like for an opportunity, for the board votes, for the board to consider those recommendations if the board decides to vote them up or down, discuss them. I think that's a process that the leadership team needs to figure out, but I do think is, my role as a board member and our responsibility around the budget to get submitted, that that's part of our board work.
Okay. We'll have this discussion on the fifteenth then, right?
So, what I'm hearing, Mr. Jordan, is that have recommendations, I guess, share them in the same format we did with the questions, okay? And give a deadline to have those recommendations to the board and Dr. Birdsong. I'm looking, shooting for the eighth.
I don't have my calendar.
By the eighth, which is next Wednesday. It needs to at least be a week ahead. That way, we'll have a chance to read them. Right. That's a week ahead of the fifteen, is the Wednesday prior to the fifteen, is what I'm hearing. In the same format, we did the questions, and I want to be specific about the time.
Five p.m.
So.
Close of business.
Five p.m. Same five p.m.
Five o'clock. Yeah, that's good.
Get written on.
We're eleven fifty-nine.
Well.
No, that's not fair.
No. I already know your, if you already have in your mind, you know, what your, your things that you want to bring up, how long you can have it ready tonight? I mean, if you already know.
I'm sorry.
I thought you, you all both had said that you already had a list of things. It, then, if you already have it, why would you need it to be any later than the eighth?
I didn't say, I didn't object to the eighth.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is. I'm sorry. I apologize.
The only concern, the only concern I had was, you know, so for the last time, I didn't know it was close of business. So, the, the, the one piece where the close of business is, I mean, I didn't know, because that's, that's not, that's not what we received.
Okay. So, what I hear.
Just moving forward.
Okay, so what I hear.
The reason, let me, let me, the reason why I'm, I would ask if it could be.
Rodney's not the only male on this group right now.
I was, I was asking if it could be after close of business because, or I'll do my best to submit them before the eighth, but my, my point is, is that, you know, we work too.
Endless.
Okay. I'm sorry?
I was coming to somebody that was asking me a question.
Oh.
I apologize.
Oh, okay.
Didn't mean to disturb what you were saying.
Oh, yeah. So, I'll just saying that, or, you know, we don't, I don't, it's not my job. So, being able to have some flexibility, but I will personally work to submit it before that.
Okay. So, I'm going to recap what I just heard, so we're all clear.
Thank you.
Recommendations to be submitted in the same format as we did the, the questions. I'll prepare that, that document for the, for the board. There, the recommendations are due by next Wednesday, March eighth, by five o'clock P.M. That gives the Minister, Dr. Birdsong Administration, a week prior to the fifteenth to have that feedback.
So, I have a question. So, I presented my proposal. Now, it's up to the board.
I agree.
So, this is, I believe at this point is, it's your work to figure out what y'all agree with.
That's why the board, that's why the work session would have been, I mean, because it's for us to kind of work through and, kind of work through and see if we want to move forward with that recommendation, because the recommendation, we might say, like, to add certain resources, then we got to talk about what we might want to take away, what the costs.
Well, that's what I was saying.
We might rely on the administration to understand what the costs of adding particular resources might be. So, that's the kind of information that we would rely on the administration for. So, there is.
Right. That's what, that's what I was hearing.
We do have to work collaboratively on that, but to make that decision is the board's decision to.
Could we.
The administration. So, it really, unfortunately, you know, that's, that's why I was expecting to have a discussion.
Unless we do a special meeting on the eighth.
Unless it is. So, could we also have a time period that we'll be using for this so that we're, because it's a business meeting, which means we'll have all the things that we show to our viewers that the kids are doing and all of that. It's a long process. Could we put a kind of lid on how long the discussion goes, which is what most boards We don't need to speak, we don't need to talk about for an hour, because we've already met twice on it.
I'm supportive of that. So, are, can you help me understand what, what you're recommending again? Can you go over that again, Lauren?
Well, my recommendation would be to just, never mind.
I know, I know, no, but what if we.
But, but if we're going to, if we're going to do a third, if we're going to do a third discussion of it, if we could cap it for a, like, thirty minutes or something, because we have a lot of things on, on a business thing. It's a business meeting, so it's going to have a lot of things that we'll be doing and so that we're not here till midnight.
So, you may want to consider a workshop again on the fifteenth.
Yeah.
You already have a scheduled meeting.
I'm trying to pull the agenda.
Yeah, maybe look at what's on the workshop. Yeah, maybe what's on the workshop now can be pushed down the road some so they can get this in.
On the fifteenth, like, you have another meeting scheduled for the fifteenth already.
Right. And that's a work schedule, when you were saying the work study part, the work part, then we could do it in there rather than during the main meeting.
Right. Like we did last, last month. We had a workshop at four.
So, they have a time to do what they want to do, but we don't mess up our business meeting.
Right. Sorry, I was having trouble, I was having trouble pulling up the agenda.
Is there a place that you could put it?
Is anyone opposed to a four o'clock work session on the fifteenth, or sorry, works, workshop on the fifteenth?
I think that's a good, a good idea.
Already scheduled a meeting.
Yeah. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that way they get the opportunity to share their thoughts and.
I mean, we'll already, I think we go ahead with the, with the Google Docs thing, so we all have a heads up on what's going to be discussed, what the questions are, and of course, two by twos can be arranged, right?
It's the board's.
And so, what's that?
It's not a.
I'm saying if you have any, any questions for the, you know, administration, just like normal.
Before the fifteenth, you could certainly do a.
So that we can be prepared.
Two by two.
To have all the information, we, as much information as we can so that we can have that discussion together without relying so much on, you know, the back and forth of the administration.
Not opposed. I think that's one of the dates that I'm going to be coming in at around five fifteen, five thirty, but not opposed to the discussion taking place.
All right. All right. So, we'll do that. All right. Thank you.
And Dr. Martin, I'm sorry for the interruption, but we did have Vicki Greco that was here to speak.
Is she here?
Yes, she's here in the back.
Was signed up.
Okay.
It was like simultaneous, so she's trying to sign in.
So, anything else on the workshop, we're settled on that for the fifteenth?
I think it's a good compromise.
Okay, good. All right. We'll go ahead, and Ms. Greco, do you want to come up and speak to us for three minutes? Thank you for your patience.
Good evening. My name is Vicki Manuga-Greco, and as you might know, I am volunteer on the gifted ed and special ed advisory committees to the board. I am not speaking on behalf of GAC or CAC at this time, but I will let you know that CAC is meeting tomorrow, and we were preparing to do our own work to get ready for the March fifteenth public hearing as we understood it, that there wouldn't be any public comments accepted during a work session, which is really atypical. So, we were kind of taken aback. But I will also mention that GAC is also, the gifted ed advisory committee is meeting March fourteenth, so we're going to be doing some work to prepare for that so that you all get a consolidated set of recommendations, because it's now in your court. I mean, we've, we've seen Dr. Birdsong's presentation, so we're, we're working to do our job of advising the board. So, we appreciate, I, we were just confused about why there were public comments being accepted during a work session, which we've understood that we should not talk during work session because that's out of order. So, I just wanted to make that comment, and also, I will end on, the public is most interested and most invested in how the monies are allocated. We all have ideas, but just because there weren't a lot of, there weren't any speakers at the December public hearing, didn't mean that we weren't interested. It just was at a time where we were, it was right before break and everyone was kind of just doing their holiday thing. And then I just want us to make sure that we get sufficient public notice, because the advisory committees really work hard for FOIA, to comply with FOIA, to know when public notices have to be posted. We don't even reply all to our emails, because then that, in effect, is a de facto public meeting without having told the public that we're meeting and talking about public business. So, I, I just wanted, and I'm not speaking on, on behalf of GAC or CAC, I just wanted to let you all know that as a long-time volunteer, we appreciate the, always appreciate the opportunity to provide our feedback in a responsible and informed way. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we've had a very long day, so we adjourn, and please be safe driving home.